Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this public hearing to order. My name is George Cabrera, I'm co-chair of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. Welcome you all today. Thank you for being here and looking forward to an amazing hearing and learning more. So with that, I'll kick it over for opening remarks from my co-chair, Senator Robert in Littlewood.
Thank you for being here, everyone. We appreciate your time on this really cold winter day, looking forward to learning more about these bills.
Thank you, Representative Wood. So that will begin with the first person on our list, Commissioner Gifford. Hi, Commissioner.
Welcome.
Thank you, Senator. Good morning. Representative Wood, Senator Cabrera, Senator Anwar, Representative Berry, Senator Huang, Representative Pavlock-Damato, and distinguished members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. My name is Deidre Gifford, and I'm the Commissioner of the Office of Health Strategy. Appreciate the opportunity to testify this morning on three of the Governor's health care affordability proposals. Senate Bill 1253, an act reducing insurance rate premium requests. House Bill 6870, an act addressing patients' prescription drug costs. And House Bill 6871, an act limiting out-of-network health care costs. I'm, as you know, will be joined by my colleagues and fellow commissioners and deputy commissioners to also testify on a number of these bills. So I'm going to just start first by setting some context for why the Governor has put forward these proposals. And some of them look familiar. But the reasons for the, these affordability proposals have not changed and have any, if anything, have gotten more intense over the last few years. We know that 10% of our residents in Connecticut are burdened by medical debt. One in 10 adults have medical debt. That's higher than the rest of the country. In 2023, an average family premium was up to $25,500, also higher than the rest of the country. And the average deductible, which doesn't include premiums, copays, coinsurance, et cetera, was $4,000 for a family. We know that one in four adults taking prescription drugs are struggling to afford the cost of their medication. As a result, in Connecticut, 46% of residents report delaying or avoiding care due to cost. One in four people taking prescription medicines are struggling to afford them. And almost half our residents are avoiding health care because they can't afford it. In addition to the impacts on families and individuals and their health, we also know that the high cost of health care is impacting our economy. Prices for medical care continue to grow faster than overall inflation. Last year, a study was published by, among others, researchers at Yale that showed that a 1% increase in health care prices reduces aggregate income in the county where those prices went up by about $8 million a year. So it's a direct reduction in income for individuals as a result of increasing health care prices. We also know that when prices go up, non-health care jobs go down because of the tie between employer-sponsored insurance and the ability of businesses to hire, promote, and otherwise invest in their businesses. So those, just a few of the facts and the context behind why the Governor has proposed this suite of bills that tackle this problem of high health care costs from multiple different angles. The three proposals address the high and rising cost of prescription drugs, tackle insurance premiums, and put downward pressure on overall prices by reducing out-of-network costs. First of all, on House Bill 6870, we know that in between 2022 and 2023, the average drug price increase among drugs that increased in price was 15%, which translated to $590 per drug product. We know that those with the greatest difficulty in affording their prescription drugs are those who take four or more medications, which is a large segment of the adult population in the U.S., those between 18 and 29, and those who make less than $40,000 a year. We know that the Inflation Reduction Act took concrete steps at the federal level to reduce drug prices, particularly for seniors. So to build off this progress, Governor Lamont has proposed a series of measures that would improve patients' access to affordable prescription drugs, including allowing patients to claim low-cost drug purchases, like Array RX, towards their deductibles for out-of-pocket and out-of-network prescription drugs. Governor's bill would limit price increases for generic and off-patent drugs to the annual rate of inflation. And the proposal would establish a pathway for safe Canadian prescription drug importation and allow the Department of Consumer Protection to assess the feasibility of establishing this program after reviewing quality, safety, and operational needs. In the preliminary analysis that OHS has done, looking at generic drug costs, we identified more than 400 generic drugs that might have been impacted by this proposal, had it been in place. And we estimated that on the brand name side for off-patent drugs, we might have saved as much as $9 million for consumers. With respect to House Bill 6871, an act limiting out-of-network health care costs, Governor Lamont proposes capping out-of-network costs at 240% of Medicare. That's 2.4 times what Medicare would pay for the same service in the same geographic area. This proposal would take place after January 1 of 2027. The premise of this out-of-network cap is that a fixed and reasonable out-of-network rate can accomplish three things. One, it can put downward pressure on in-network negotiated prices, encourage network participation by providers and thereby increase access for consumers, and reduce overall spending by limiting the value of the option of staying out-of-network by health care providers. Data collected by our Connecticut Insurance Department suggests that when consumers and insurers are required to pay out-of-network care, they can be charged as much as seven and a half times Medicare. That's 750% of Medicare for out-of-network care. Governor's bill would cap this amount at a more reasonable, roughly two and a half times Medicare. As I mentioned, it would save consumers who need to seek care from an out-of-network provider. It would remove the financial incentive for providers to stay out of network, thus providing better access, and it put overall downward pressure on prices. OHS is aware that we have both a federal and a state No Surprises Act, which touches on some of these out-of-network issues, and we will be working closely with members of the committee and others to ensure that the three proposals would align. In addition, the Governor's proposal requires that any savings realized due to these caps on out-of-network charges would go back to consumers in the form of reduced insurance premiums. And insurers would be required to report on how that those reductions were used to lower prices for consumers. So this suite of bills tackles this problem of health care affordability from multiple different angles. You are no doubt going to hear over the course of today's hearing about all kinds of reasons why health care prices are too high. And there will be fingers pointed undoubtedly towards PBMs, towards drug manufacturers, towards insurance companies, towards hospitals and health systems, and toward the government. The fact is, as the Governor has said, every party in the health care system needs to play a role in bringing down the price of health care for our residents. And also, as the Governor has said, if not these proposals, then which ones? The, these are straightforward, practical, clear strategies to bring down the cost of health care for our consumers. And if not these proposals, I would ask you, which ones? So with that, I would respectfully, respectfully ask the committee to support these three proposals. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Appreciate your time. I'll start off with one quick question I have. You're 100% correct. The affordability of health care across the board has beguiled me at least, and very difficult to figure out why. How did you, or the team come to land on these three particular proposals in light of all the different things? Oftentimes, I know I feel like it's a game of whack-a-mole with insurance. You know, you think you've begun to at least address a problem in one area, then years later, it turns out to be not the greatest solution. I would just wonder if you could take us a little bit into the thought process?
Thank you, Senator. I would say that a number of ways that these proposals were arrived at by the Governor. First of all, is looking around the country and seeing how health care affordability is being approached by other states. We are in regular contact with peer states about strategies for reducing health care costs, looking at the data on what is driving health care affordability. So we know that prescription drugs in particular, and when we look at our benchmarking data, continue to drive the year-over-year increases along with hospital, particularly hospital outpatient spending. And hearing the concerns of consumers about their difficulties, and employers about their difficulties in affording the ever-rising cost of health insurance premium. So that's the reason for this multi-pronged approach and sort of a bit of a description of the strategy that was used to arrive at them.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the committee? Representative Wood?
Hi, good morning. Thank you for being here. Can you tell us about these bills, who they apply to, in terms of those that are insured here in Connecticut?
The, the out-of-network cap would apply to those with commercial insurance.
So self-funded and the fully insured market?
That's correct. It's a limit on what could be charged. So that's the, the approach on that bill. On the prescription drug increases, again, it's a limit on what could be charged. Excuse me, a limit on the payment. So based on average wholesale cost, the, the increases could not exceed a particular amount. So it would apply to the sale of wholesale drugs, both generic and off-brand, off-patent brand drugs. And your, does that answer your question, Representative?
Yeah, I think my question is, I only thought that the jurisdiction of, you know, our committee and state government was on the fully insured market. So, which is about, you know, 400,000 people, those on the Affordable Care Act plans and some small group fully insured spaces. You're saying that we're able to regulate the self-funded plans by doing out-of-network caps?
The out-of-network cap is a limit on what could be charged by a provider. So it doesn't take the angle of regulating it directly through the insurance department, and I'm sure that the insurance department can speak more to that. But it does place a limit on what a provider could charge for an out-of-network service. So it's a limit on the provider rather than on the insurer.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. One of the things you said was that the high deductible plans are causing people not to go see the doc, see the doctor, but that these three bills are going to help lower premiums. They still don't deal with high deductibles. How, how are we going to fix that? If you still have a $5,000 or $7,000 deductible, but your premium may have gone down a few hundred dollars?
Yeah. So I, I did not intend to imply that it's a health plan design that's causing this affordability problem. It's price. And the, the data is consistent, both in Connecticut and across the country, that what's driving the higher out-of-pocket cost for consumers is the price of health care, the prices charged for health care. So the response to that by employers has been to shift costs to their employees. The response has been for some businesses to drop commercial coverage altogether for their employees. And to provide lower premium options, some insurance plan design has shifted to higher deductibles. Those make it more difficult, particularly for those with lower incomes, to afford their health care. But the underlying cause of what's leading to higher premiums, higher deductibles, is that the price of health care has continued to outpace inflation, household income in Connecticut. And so the, the burden has shifted more to employees and out-of-pocket costs because employers are just simply not able to afford the full cost of the premiums any longer.
Thank you for that. My last question really is just looking at some of the testimony that we got from specialized doctor groups that do things like breast reconstruction and plastic surgery and things like that. We're saying that, you know, it'd be impossible for them to work within these caps. What is your feedback on that?
Well, if, they were referring to what they charge their patients who, for whom they are not in-network. I would say is seven and a half times what Medicare finds to be a reasonable and appropriate payment actually fair to consumers, seven and a half times Medicare. Two and a half times Medicare seems like a fair and reasonable approach. Average, the, the average hospital system in Connecticut is paid approximately 240 to 250% of Medicare. So two and a half times Medicare is what commercial payers currently pay our hospital systems. So I guess I would ask specialists, all of those who object to this cap, why is it that seven and a half times Medicare is fair to charge to consumers in Connecticut?
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative, Representative Muskers.
Just two questions on, on the proposals. You're suggesting that we want to certify and review drug prices or drugs manufactured or just, I guess, distributed in Canada. Ultimately, my understanding is most of the manufacturing and compounding is done in India and/or China. The price reference you want to use, is it a price reference or a physical importation of drugs from Canada? And how does that play into, it confuses me. When I've looked at the reports, House Ways and Means Committee out of Washington, drug prices are somewhere about three or four times more expensive in the U.S. than in the OECD countries. So how do we, how does it play into the cap of inflation-adjusted versus the price in Canada? Because I'm assuming the price in Canada will be 50% of the price in the U.S. for those generic drugs. So are we setting a floor by putting a, putting a inflation index on price? Or are we going to try to use Canada as a reference price? Where, where are we going with this? I mean, frankly, you know, drug prices in the U.S., we're subsidizing the entire world with our pricing.
Representative, I'm going to, with your permission, I'm going to defer the response to your question to my colleagues from the Department of Consumer Protection, who would be overseeing, doing the feasibility, feasibility study and overseeing this process, and will probably give you a much more comprehensive answer than I'm able to give.
Okay. I hope they took notes, because I'd have to repeat that, it'll be difficult. And the, the second piece, and I probably will defer to the insurer, you would defer the insurance company. The, the medical loss ratio, which is 15%, right now puts everyone in the same boat that higher prices generate higher profits across the board. So I don't see anything in the legislation. I, I see the attempt to cap, capping costs, but I'm not sure how we increase the competitive environment to reduce costs as well. And I know, I don't know what thoughts you had on that. Because this is all more on the regulatory side to try to, and I'm not opposed, but I'm saying this walks back prices, but doesn't increase the competition.
Well, the, for the first time, the proposal around health insurance premiums would allow the Insurance, Department of Insurance Commissioner to actually look at whether premium increases were complying with the health care benchmark that you all have put into statute. This would allow another way of evaluating the premium increases that are put forward. And the idea, of course, as you know, around the benchmark is not only that it would provide transparency to what's happening with price increases in Connecticut, but that it would provide some incentive during the negotiation process between health systems and insurers to keep prices low. This proposal would add to that process by allowing the health care benchmark, meeting of the health care benchmark, to be something that's considered when looking at premium increases. So it adds a little bit more emphasis on the benchmark as a metric for price increases. And I think, to your point, would, the idea is that it would give more leverage for those negotiations to come within the benchmark that's been set.
Okay. Thank you very much. No further questions.
Thank you, Representative. Are there any other questions from the committee or online? I don't think so. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Senator. Representative.
Next up, we have Brian Caparelli from DCP. Commissioner, how are you?
Welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you. Let me, let me try that again. Good morning, Representative Wood, Senator Cabrera, Representative Pavlock-Damato, and Senator Huang, and all the distinguished members of the Insurance Committee. I really want to thank you for this opportunity to appear before you today and offer testimony in strong support of the Governor's proposal to reduce prescription drug costs, particularly House Bill 6870. I do also want to thank the Governor for bringing this important issue to the attention of the committee and the legislature. I'm here to testify in establishing a pathway for a safe Canadian drug importation proposal in the bill, which is sections 1 through 10. This bill would allow DCP to study the feasibility and potential benefits of a Canadian drug importation program in our state. And based on the outcome of that study, DCP would develop a viable supply chain with local and international partners, and then seek approval from the FDA to establish such a program in Connecticut. So the Department of Consumer Protection regulates and licenses pharmacies and pharmacists in the state. And we don't control drug pricing. But our pharmacists do see this, both on our drug control team and those that we license on the front line. And they're often the bearer of bad news when it comes to the cost of medication. So this issue is on the forefront of everyone's mind. Sections 1 through 10 of this legislation would allow our agency to study the feasibility and potential benefits of a Canadian drug importation program in our state. And based on the outcome, seek approval from the FDA to establish such a program. So why would we do this? So often, prescription medication is cheaper in Canada. Based on the system, the way their health care works, they're able to negotiate lower prices for certain medications. This means some drugs may not be available in Canada, and it means that others may be significantly cheaper in Canada for importation than in the U.S. So a drug importation program would allow us to import prescriptions that meet Canadian standards at prices negotiated by the Canadian health care system. So in basic terms, the legislation sets the groundwork for application to the FDA for DCP to develop a drug importation program. And to apply to the FDA, we need your authority, legislative approval. And so the timeline is from passage until October 1 of 2027, there would be a feasibility study. We would put together a report on what other states have done and determine the feasibility and potential benefits or potential safety concerns of a Canadian drug importation program. At that point, October 1, 2027, the results of a feasibility study would determine if we move forward, working with OPM to determine funding for a program and apply to the FDA for approval. Currently, only two states, Colorado and Florida, have done so. They've applied for approval from the FDA to establish such a drug importation program. We can learn from their experiences, and that will definitely be part of the feasibility. and that will definitely be part of the feasibility study. Florida was approved roughly a year ago, January of 2024, and it's working through the logistics with FDA and potential Canadian suppliers and wholesalers to implement that and actually start importing drugs. Colorado, the other one, the approval is in process. They applied in December of 2022, and they are going back and forth with the FDA. It's not a one and done process. We don't apply and then just wait to hear back. There's constant back and forth with the FDA in terms of follow-up questions and information that they need from the state that's seeking approval. So approval of this study would put Connecticut at the forefront of lowering prescription drug costs for our residents. It would kickstart the process of establishing an importation program here by first determining if it's feasible and would actually result in a cough savings for Connecticut consumers. Finding ways to lower the cost of prescription medications in Connecticut is critical to our mission of protecting public health and safety. It's critical to make sure that the drugs that come into our state for redistribution are safe. And a drug importation program could provide lower prescription costs and also allow us to know the origin of the drug and take measures to ensure the safety for the end user. I want to thank you again for allowing us the opportunity to discuss this proposal. We look forward to working with you throughout this process with our sister agencies that you've heard from and will hear from, with Governor Lamont and the administration, to do our part in addressing the burden of prescription drug costs so that Connecticut residents can access their medication at an affordable price. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions?
Representative Wood? Hi, Commissioner, thank you for being here. Would your agency have to hire more people to manage this?
Yes. We, in the budget, there is funded, provided for a consultant to help with the feasibility study and additional staff, I believe, one person after, in '27.
And how is that paid for? Is that through the general funds?
Yes.
And I just was reading some testimony in opposition of this. Health Canada has said that there's no way they would allow this proposal to happen. Florida and Colorado, you know, have obviously asked FDA for this. And, you know, really, nothing has moved forward. There would be, obviously, years of studying whether this would be possible. I'm just playing devil's advocate here. If the United States started importing drugs from Canada, what's the population of Canada versus the US?
I don't know the population of Canada off the top of my head. I mean, but I will tell you-
It's substantial. So the Canadian government has basically said they would never jeopardize, you know, their residence access to prescription drugs. You know, if all of a sudden everyone in the US was saying that we could go access, you know, drugs there, the numbers, I just don't know how the math works. I mean, I would love to see this happen. Obviously, I want cheaper drugs, but just the many testimony that has been put out here and the links to articles basically says the Canadian government is never going to allow this to happen. So how do we get around that?
Well, if I could offer a few things, Representative, and thank you for the question. One, a part of the application process, both Florida and Colorado did have to find participants, both on the Canadian supplier side and the wholesaler side, that were willing and showed interest to engage in this plan, to seek approval from the FDA. So that basic level did exist. I can't speak to what's happened in Washington, what happens today, and what will be happening in 2027. So I think that the thought plan here is that to lay the groundwork so that we are ready to take advantage of such savings from a safe drug supply that we believe could be feasible. And that really is part of the study. So we're asking that you approve that so we can move forward with the study to actually determine that for, you know, better, to clarify a lot of these questions that you and others will have along the way and make certain that it's worthwhile of submitting that application in October of 2027.
Thank you. Representative Pavlok Damada?
Thank you. Individuals can already buy drugs straight from Canada. So, and you're asking for two years for the feasibility study. How much, as far as safety, what exactly are you looking into there, considering people can already buy directly as individuals from Canada?
So, under this program, as outlined in the bill, there are a host of safety mechanisms, including the repackaging and labeling consistent with United States standards, and also the testing of the shipments of the drug that come into, both on the initial level and then the ongoing shipments that come into the United States to make sure that they are safe and actually what they claim to be. So in answer to your question about online pharmacies, I mean, we do caution as an agency against purchasing from online pharmacies where you do not know where they exist and where they are supplying their medication from. I mean, there was a stat that we read that there are a large number of online pharmacies that are operating in a space that would not be certified if it was in, had a physical presence in this state or others.
And then also, I did see the FDA approval for Florida took a bit of time. How long do you think that is going to take if we do submit a request to the FDA?
Well, I think, like anything else, we can, you know, learn from their experience, and hopefully the FDA does as well. Yeah, sure, the Florida submitted their application, I think, in November of 2020, and was approved in January of 2024. Colorado, again, I said, is submitted in December of 2023. And so they're hopefully going to shorten that timeframe and that we can learn from their application process and procedures and the FDA as well. I can't give you a certain timeframe, but again, I think by taking the time to be deliberate about this and study the feasibility of the program, learning from the other two states that have done this, that we can tighten up our application should it proceed, so that we can have the best foot forward and hopefully kind of get a quicker turnaround.
And interestingly enough, a lot of, right, a lot of Canadian individuals come to, I know, since I live down there, come to Florida for their medical care and to live for a part of the year. So I understand the opposition from government, but at the same time, it's, you know, when half their residents are coming to us for care, then it's an interesting argument. So thank you for coming to testify today.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you so much. Representative Muskers?
So, on the import of drugs from Canada, I understand the goal, you'll be basically looking at a study of the available drugs, the safety of the drugs, and the price of the drugs. If you're going to hire a consultant and do that, we've got, I think, on the order of 23 million people in Florida, I'm not sure where Colorado is in the population, and Connecticut. I think the next step is to look at the pricing of the drugs and see about the importation. And lastly, to see the feasibility of working with those states for a manufacturing formulary for the generics. So we could end up either importing low-cost drugs or manufacturing the drugs. Because I think the issue that we're going to hear is that there is a limitation on the supply in countries with lower prices, and that probably is due to the manufacturer's disposition to supply drugs at a lower price into Canada that get re-exported to the US. So I think that the last leg of a valuable study is the possibility of manufacturing formulary. So I encourage you to consider that. And I don't know whether we can look at that in the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you. Senator Wong?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome, Commissioner Caparelli. Great to see you. It's kind of interesting that DCP is involved in the prescription drug arena, but this may be a broad macro perspective. Obviously, the concern about national tariffs as it relates to Canada, should it go into effect? And if we were to institute this program, would that impact the cost savings that we were anticipating?
So, good to see you, Senator, and thank you for the question. I, you know, as I said earlier, there's a lot that can happen between now and October of 2027. So what we're asking this committee to consider in this bill, specifically Sections 1 through 10, is to allow DCP to first conduct a feasibility study, to see, you know, to answer all these questions that are raised by you, the members of this committee, and others outside this committee, that would help us hone that and make a determination as to whether or not this would be feasible and actually save money. And so I think that the tariffs, if they are, you know, imposed and seem like they have some staying power at that point, would come into the cost-saving analysis of it. But again, that is a ways down the road, but there's a lot of work that could be done to prepare for kind of the bright side of things and hopefully looking at a positive path forward to lower prescription drug costs in the state. I will, if I could just add too, in terms of the populations of, in Florida, they limited their program to participants in Medicaid and DOC. So it is a population that's smaller than the entire state. And Colorado is, you know, their population is more akin to the size of our state.
I'll follow the line where you regulate and license pharmacists and pharmacies, right?
Correct.
You do not control drug pricing. In administering this proposal in this bill, share with me and the committee the kind of working relationship with OHS as well as other entities of our administration and state agencies and the regulatory legislative areas of cognizance like this committee. But how important is benchmarking to be able to give you data points as you undertake this study, should this bill pass?
So I'm here to speak about the first portion of the bill, Sections 1 through 10, and it does not contemplate benchmarking, rather the importation of drugs that would save money. We do have a great relationship with our sister agencies, work often with Commissioner Gifford and other agencies where we intersect with DPH, Department of Insurance, and, you know, others that you have mentioned. But, you know, I can't really speak to the benchmarking aspect of that.
Thank you. I appreciate you stepping up and trying to help along this process as part of the administrative team. So there'll be more questions. But again, I think you've said it well, that it really is a collaborative effort between OHS, DPH, Department of Insurance, and many of the shareholders that are out there. It cannot be one entity, it cannot be one area. It needs to be a collaborative effort engaging of all shareholders. So I appreciate you stepping up and being part of the solution and working toward that. So thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. I think we have a question, Representative Nuccio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So sorry for coming in a little late. I was looking at this and wondering, you had mentioned something about a study, and you also mentioned that Florida and Colorado have something similar. Have they seen success? Because everything that I have seen is that Canada has very openly said they do not have the drug supply for this, and the pharmaceuticals have openly said, we are not going to give Canada more drugs to sell back to America. So I'm concerned with the overarching thought that we're somehow going to be successful in light of those things.
Well, it's good to see you, Representative Nuccio, and thank you. So, correct, there are two other states that have gone down this path. Florida, which has been approved by the FDA roughly a year ago, and Colorado, which is still working through that process coming on the second year, going back and forth with FDA for their approval. We're, we are asking again for you to allow us to conduct a feasibility study to see if this would make sense. And part of that would, let me just back up one second. The application process does require the state to identify partners that are willing to participate with them, both in terms of the Canadian supplier and the warehouse, the wholesaler. So that has been done both in the Florida and Colorado applications, despite things you may have read in the news or hearing today. So I can't, or we can't forecast what will the world look like in October of 2027, but we can understand the challenges and successes that both Colorado and Florida and others who may be considering this have had and will have during the study and come back to you with a report to say, hey, look, we looked at this, here's how it's going to work, here's how we know that we can keep it safe, and here's how we believe it could save money. Maybe not on all the drugs, but this set of drugs or list of drugs for re-importation to the state, that there are other things, other factors at play that have come into alignment so that this, a program like this could work. We do believe it's worth conducting the study and kind of beating down this, you know, following this thought process down to save, it could, if this works, it could realize a tremendous amount of savings for Connecticut citizens. So that's why we believe that this feasibility study is worthwhile.
Okay. And do you know if there's any, how are we doing this feasibility study? Is this going to be done with existing staff, or is there dollars built into the budget to account for this? Like, how do you see this happening?
So it will not be done with existing staff. There's, in the Governor's proposed budget, money in the general fund for a consultant to conduct the study.
I thought there was headcount, too. Is there no headcount?
In the following year.
In the following year. So it's consulting money the first year, $100,000, right?
I believe so.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Representative. Commissioner, I just have one quick question. I know you made it pretty clear about seeking permission to simply do the study, the feasibility study, and then you mentioned Florida and Colorado, and that Florida had limited it to specific populations. And I'm not asking you to get ahead of your skis here, but what, if anything, have you learned or have you seen from Florida's approval from the FDA that you may or may not decide to include in this, if we're to give you this permission in the feasibility study for Connecticut?
I can't really specify that. I think it's all on the table, and people much smarter than I am who will be hired to look at things that will ask the right questions, because there are kind of those unknowns, unknowns in my mind. So, but-
Gotcha. Quite well taken.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions, committee? Nope. So, you know, thank you very much, Commissioner, for coming today. Up next, up next is Commissioner Paul Lombardo. Morning, Commissioner. Still morning, right?
Yep. Good morning, everybody. Senator Cabrera, Representative Wood, Senator Wong, Representative Pavlok Damato, and distinguished members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. I'm Paul Lombardo, Assistant Deputy Commissioner and Director of Life and Health Division at the Insurance Department in Connecticut. And thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of Governor's Bills, House Bill 6870, House Bill 6871, and Senate Bill 1253. The core mission of the Connecticut Insurance Department is consumer protection. The department carries out its mission by enforcing state insurance laws to ensure that policyholders and claimants are treated fairly. In addition, the department closely monitors the financial condition and practices of insurance carriers to help ensure that a healthy industry is available to provide a wide range of insurance products to Connecticut residents and to pay covered claims arising under those products. First, I'll provide testimony on House Bill 6870, an act addressing patients' prescription drug costs, which creates multiple initiatives to improve access to affordable prescription drugs. Specifically, House Bill 6870 establishes the right of an individual to receive credit for out-of-pocket and out-of-network prescription drug expenses towards their annual deductible if they pay a lower price than they would have at an in-network pharmacy with insurance. This will allow individuals to access the best price, even if a cheaper price is available outside of their insurance plan, through a RAY RX or another drug discount program. Under the proposal, consumers can take advantage of discounts ranging from 80% on generic drugs to 20% on brand-name drugs through Connecticut's multi-state drug discount card, a RAY RX, and still claim credit for those drug expenses towards their insurance deductible. This initiative could allow Connecticut health plan members in the fully insured market to realize actual savings on their prescription drugs within a plan year. And for these reasons stated above, the Insurance Department in support of House Bill 6870. And for these reasons stated above, the Insurance Department in support of House Bill 6870. The next bill is House Bill 6871, an act limiting out-of-network healthcare costs. The proposed bill imposes a maximum reimbursement rate on out-of-network costs assessed by any healthcare provider for inpatient or outpatient hospital services based upon 240% of the rate payable under Medicare for the same service in a geographic area. The bill seeks to level the bargaining dynamic between hospital providers and insurance carriers, which should result in lower costs and increased patient access. Currently, out-of-network reimbursements can be significantly higher than 240%, which creates a perverse incentive for providers not to participate in a network. Under the proposal, however, providers are limited in how much they can charge for out-of-network services and therefore incentivized to remain in-network. This would reduce future out-of-network costs to health carriers and allow savings to directly flow through to the consumers in the form of lower future insurance premiums. The department offers its support of House Bill 6871 in the goal of driving down the underlying cost structure in the hope that it could potentially decrease future insurance premiums. And lastly, Senate Bill 1253, an act reducing insurance rate premium requests, creates a process whereby the Insurance Department would be permitted to consider the state's cost-growth benchmark, which reflects the ability of the average household to absorb rising costs of healthcare in conjunction with our existing statutory health insurance rate review process. The department would be granted the discretion to reduce rate filing requests by up to two percentage points in the event that the health carriers' approved rates for the previous two years exceeds the cost-growth benchmark over those previous two years. Approximately 200,000 Connecticut health plan members who obtain insurance from insurance companies and access health CT are protected. These are specifically in the individual and small group market. As required by law, the Insurance Department considers whether rates are excessive, inadequate, or unfairly discriminatory. The existing construct allows the Insurance Department to consider the cost-growth benchmark as we execute our actuarial review of health insurance rate filings. This proposed bill would allow additional consideration to be given to this benchmark. The department is in support of this proposal and its intent to lower premiums for Connecticut health plan members in the fully insured market. Thank you for your time today, and I can take any questions.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Any questions? Representative Wood?
Thank you, Commissioner Lombardo, for being here. My question revolves around SB 1253. It is my understanding that when insurance carriers go before the department for a rate review, there's an actuarial deep dive into utilization and prescription drug pricing and all the things that you've mentioned in your in your testimony. So there's no fluff in there. There's no, you know, hidden things being passed on to customers. You're giving a rate, you know, based on these numbers. To then say, if that rate is too high, we're going to reduce it, what is the message that we're sending to an industry here that, to me, has been leaving the state? I mean, what I'd like to see are more carriers coming to Connecticut, more competition. I want to see more than just two carriers on the exchange. Are we sending a message to the industry, you know, to come here and do business with this this kind of policy?
Yeah, I think the Insurance Department would agree with your sentiment about increasing competition, increasing offerings in our insurance in the individual and small group market. I think we need to differentiate between the actuarial review that currently takes place, to your point, and provides a rate that is not excessive, inadequate, or unfairly discriminatory. I think the real nature of the two percentage point leeway, first off, it's outside of the actuarial review. This is not an actuary that's going to be performing this. This is the Insurance Department working with the health carriers to ensure that the carriers are doing everything they can at the negotiating table with their partners, the providers, the hospitals, to get as close to our cost-growth benchmark, at least from a negotiation standpoint and a contract standpoint. This is a permissive, it's not a requirement. There's no requirement that the commissioner implement the two percentage point to whatever the actuaries come up with and 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 make a recommendation to the commissioner. This is strictly having the commissioner reach out to the carriers, having them provide information to our department that says, we have done everything that we can at the negotiating table. Or find out that one or two carriers are not negotiating and not ensuring that they're getting the best possible arrangement for their members. And that 2% leeway, from our perspective, is strictly to ensure that the carriers are doing everything possible. Now, we also understand that it takes two at a negotiation table. We understand that, but our authority is over the insurance carriers. And that's where the two percentage points and the leeway comes in. It's not a, another actuarial factor that we're going to use that would generate lower premiums than are necessary for a carrier. This is just to make sure that the carriers are doing everything they can to keep the cost, at least the contract cost, of healthcare delivery down as much as they can.
Thank you for that, and I really understand what what you're saying, and that's best case scenario. I believe that the way the market is working, that if you have a good product for a lower cost, you're going to get more customers. So I believe the industry is already doing that. What concerns me with your response is the fact that a commissioner may or may not choose to implement the 2%. And in some of our previous public hearings on long-term care insurance, we've heard of insurance commissioners in other states artificially holding down long-term care premium increases low just because they happen to be commissioner at that time. And as a result, you know, other things happen. So it does concern me that the commissioner has the final say on that 2%. But I hear, like, if it was a perfect world, what the intent of the bill is trying to do. And I appreciate your response for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Wong?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome, Commissioner Lombardo. Thank you for your work. Look, I know why this bill originated because every single year we come to your Insurance Department rate review, and we as legislators pound the table and say, the rate increases are too darn high. It's unaffordable, it's unsustainable. And I appreciate that the governor and Commissioner Mays and the entire collective is looking to address this issue. I think my question is, how cooperative are you anticipating our insurers and their challenge in getting hospitals and providers and pharmaceutical companies to be able to offer these important data points that you can use to measure? I read that the emphasis in the testimony is to give the Insurance Department some more tools instead of just the statutory actuarial analysis. And we're all frustrated by it because the actuarial analysis does not reflect the total cost of how a insurer makes their money. Because our struggle is you're only forced to look at actual numbers while record profits and record executive compensations are being put out and Wall Street results. Is that part of the rationale of being able to look at different tools to get greater accountability on healthcare cost measures and containment?
Yeah, I don't know specifically, Senator Wong, if it's related to a, an executive salary. We have loss ratio requirements in the ACA that says that in the individual and small group market, you have to spend a minimum of 80 cents of every dollar that you collect on benefits. We do perform a deep dive into their expenses. We make sure that what they're assuming for their retention or their expenses is related directly to their financial statements when we perform that review. So I really do think the 2% is really, as I think envisioned by the governor, is really to say, we have a cost-growth benchmark here. And it's supported by our Office of Health Strategy. It's supported by other state agencies, including the Insurance Department, that works on the cost-growth benchmark. We want everybody, everybody, all stakeholders, to take the cost-growth benchmark maybe a little bit more seriously than the parties and the stakeholders have been taking the cost-growth benchmark. It's tied to economic indicators of our specific state. We're not the first one. We're probably the sixth or seventh state, maybe, to develop cost-growth benchmarks. But clearly, we are looking at this in greater detail now. We have rate review authority. We have actuarial review analysis already built into the statute. Again, this is just another avenue for us to say, and frankly, I would envision this to be a comparative analysis with the carriers themselves. We can sit down with Carrier A, and they can identify seven or eight tools that they use to negotiate with the carriers. We can sit down with another carrier, and maybe that carrier only uses two tools. That gives us an indication of the severity or the intensity of potential negotiations with providers. And are the carriers doing everything possible? We are really looking at carriers as being representatives of their members. The members aren't sitting there at the negotiating table. The employers are not sitting there at the negotiating table. An individual who buys insurance off the exchange is not sitting there. The carrier is representing their members when they negotiate for the cost structure. And many times, it's for a two- or three-year period. So this is really, I think, the crux of that 2% leeway that is being discussed in 1253.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm going to pivot a little bit. That I know this is a proposal from the Insurance Department and the administration, but but I'm going to be devil's advocate. What would you answer to some of the criticism from my insurers that says the benchmarking doesn't truly reflect how our business is done? And that our incredible challenges occur in a real marketplace, not in a vacuum. We can provide you actuarial numbers that are fact. You're looking into other areas that is beyond our control or is not truly within our control of measuring data. And number two, as the good Chair, House Chair articulated, we can't create a more onerous environment where in the self-insured marketplace, the fully insured marketplace, there are less and less entities that want to do business in Connecticut. But to say that, I think, even though the 2% is permissive, it doesn't feel like that, and that is quite a dramatic offer off the bat. So I'd like to get your thoughts on some of the counterpoints we're going to hear and get feedback on. And the last point on that question is, do you know of any other state that is undertaking this kind of initiative?
Yeah, I am not aware of other states that are taking on this initiative, but I am aware of other commissioners across the country that have taken steps to decrease the rate increases beyond the actuarial analysis that was performed by their actuaries, whether they're in-house or consulting actuaries. Senator Wong, I think the overall perspective, and I would suspect that everyone in this room would agree. I would suspect the carriers would agree, the providers would agree. Our healthcare delivery system and our health insurance premiums in this state are unsustainable at the level that they're growing at. Okay, this is just one step. And I would argue that there's significantly multiple other steps that would be taken and should be taken by both the legislature, executive branch, governor's office, the carriers, the providers, all the stakeholders, the prescription pharmaceutical system. This is just one small step in trying to assure that we are benchmarking to something. Because if we don't have this benchmark, and if we don't attempt to try to get there, then we're just going to continue to see prescription drug costs increase at 11% or 12% a year. We're going to see hospital, inpatient, outpatient combined at 8%, 9%, 10% a year. I, that's the norm, unfortunately. That's the norm in our state, unfortunately. So I think benchmarking to something that is tied to people's income, our gross domestic product within our state, I don't necessarily think that that's a bad thing. You're not going to get a disagreement that the cost structure that we're looking at for our healthcare delivery system does not coincide with the benchmark. But maybe there should be some desire to try to get that cost structure system closer to the benchmark. And that's all we're attempting to do here. That's the desire of, I think it should really be the desire of everybody in the state to try to keep our healthcare delivery system and the cost structure and our health insurance premiums a bit more affordable and grow at a slower rate than it's been growing at.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo, for your information, and thank you to all your colleagues at the Insurance Department for the work that you do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Representative Nuccio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for listening to that, coming up with my questions. So I just want to make sure I have this correct. The 2% is outside the actuarial review, which is already scrutinized. You look at expenses, you look at utilization, you look at all of that. That's all, you look at that and you validate, yes, this is actual healthcare cost growth. So after looking at all of that, there's going to be this new optional, permissive or not required, but permissive 2% to say, we think the rates are too high. We're going to chop them by 2%. That's, is that my?
I wouldn't, we wouldn't interpret that that way, Rep. Nuccio. I think first, there's a trigger there, right? So if we've approved an average increase for a carrier in the individual market over the last two years, let's say the benchmark's been three and three, to make it easy. We've approved five and five over the last two years. This permissive factor of a 2% leeway now kicks in. We then evaluate whether that particular carrier is doing everything they can at the negotiation table. And only if, at that point, we believe that they're not doing everything they can is when the department would be able to implement some level, whether it's a half a percent, the two full percent. I would argue that decisions that are made by our commissioner at the Insurance Department cannot be arbitrary and capricious. I think that's a standard by most agencies. And we need to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row when we do make a decision to implement some level of that two percentage point. There has to be some process. There has to be some cognitive information that we've received that indicates that we believe that it's appropriate to lower the rate by this, some level of the 2%. So I don't think it's, the prices are too high. I think the actuarial function is to do that. I think that ties, to your point, it ties directly to the underlying costs of our delivery system. This is just another aspect to look at the cost-growth benchmark and to try to tie and link our healthcare delivery cost structure to the benchmark.
So in your example, in the prior two years, you would have had an actuarial review, and you would have granted the 5% increase based off of that actuarial review. So this is a, after that, go back and look, we gave five, benchmark was three. Now we're going to look at. Now we're going to look at, from what I'm hearing here, though, you're basically saying, now I'm going to look at it and say, did you do the best job that you could? And if I don't think you did, we have the opportunity to reduce your rate by up to 2%.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, here's my next question and problem with that, with the cost growth benchmark. It's looking at utilization, cost, it's looking at a bunch of different things. It, in and of itself, has said, we have higher cost here in the state of Connecticut than they're, what they want for the benchmark, right? It's not about utilization as much as it is about the cost of the care, right? They're saying, they've said that every single year that they've sat down with me. And you had said you want, you want people to take the cost benchmark, not you specifically, this bill, wants the, the, to take it more seriously, right? And that costs are unsustainable in the state of Connecticut. I agree with you on the, on the majority of that there. Here's my problem. You don't have to look very far in the news to see Johnson Hospital by me, your, you know, St. Francis Hospital. We're not going to take United Healthcare. We sent out a letter to all of our things because we're in negotiations and we're not getting what we want. So now there's this fight between the insurance company and the hospital providers, and they end up coming to a deal. I can tell you from personal fact and experience, that deal is never, they're going to take less, right? Okay, Florida, look up Broward County. Probably about 10, 15 years ago, Broward County literally held every insurance company in the nation hostage for a 250% increase in rates, right? And it wasn't long before all the insurance companies had to fold. Because when Broward says, I am no longer going to take any insurance from Aetna, from Cigna, from United, from Anthem, none of your people are going to have the opportunity to come to this hospital and get a network negotiated fee. Again, the negotiations are not going to be, I'm taking less, right? So I guess I don't understand how the Commissioner or anybody is going to be able to arbitrarily look at this and say, we think you did a good enough job with negotiation, right? Here in Connecticut, I've probably gotten five notices in the last three years about problems with negotiation, right? So what happens if these insurance companies sit down and they do these negotiations, comes back, they, they send out the letters to all their things, they get everybody mad, you're not going to be able to come to our hospital, blah, blah, blah. At the end, the rates are passed and it's higher than the cost growth benchmark. And on top of that, the Commissioner decides, well, we're going to, we're going to dock you for the 2%. How does that play out? Right? So where does that loss come from at that point? If, if the insurance companies are not able to recoup the cost of care with a rate increase based off the utilization and cost of the service, and you dock them down 2%, as the Chair said, I don't see even two carriers staying here in the state of Connecticut. How, how does that play out? I've done my best, I've tried, I've negotiated, they've sent out their letters. We're all in an uproar, we're giving them their increase. The Commissioner comes in, I don't think you did it hard enough, we're docking you for 2%. How does that play out?
I, we'll have to wait and see, Rep Nuccio. I don't, I don't have the crystal ball answer for that.
Yeah.
I, I, I do know the intent of this is not to penalize. It really is not to penalize. It is, from my perspective and our perspective, a deterrent from carriers rubber stacking, rubber stamping, contracting. All we're trying to do is create more focus and more energy from the carriers. I, I, I'll be honest with you, I don't know what goes on between the carriers. We don't. We don't get involved in those negotiations. We really don't. Those are things, and we understand the pressures. Larger systems can put on health carriers. We understand that. But again, our regulatory authority is strictly related to, and we'd like to keep it that way, to the insurance industry. We don't want to expand our regulatory authority to providers. That's not where our, our, that's not where we are. We regulate insurance. But again, this is just one tool. And, and I think we think this is the start of more tools for you to develop for all the stakeholders in this process. This is just one piece for the insurance carriers. And I don't, I, I honestly don't believe that Commissioners of Insurance will sit here and say, you know what, you didn't do a good job, we're docking you 2%. It's not going to be that easy. We have a responsibility, in my opening comments, to create a vibrant market. To your point and Rep Wood's point, we want more carriers here. We want more than two individual carriers. I don't know if you know this, but only having two individual carriers on the exchange puts a significant amount of pressure and has put significant amount of pressure on our agency for years because of the concern that if one of those two carriers walks, or both of those carriers walk, then we don't have an exchange, we don't have a carrier. So there's a significant amount of pressure that's put on this department. So for us to act willy nilly would be not in our best interest, interest as a regulatory body. We want to create more incentive for carriers to participate in the market.
So I think you just said a couple of things that were key there. First of all, you know, I hate to bring it up, but pass the bill and then we'll find out what's in it, right? So we don't have anything in here that's saying how this would happen. Right now, it is just subjective. It's subjective on when it can and can't happen, right? I'm never comfortable with something like that. I don't pass the bill and then try to figure out what's in it. I actually read them beforehand and I don't have a lot of meat in this one. So that's, that's a bit of a problem. But you said something else that was really important. You said, you know, the larger carriers and pressure. Well, thanks to the failed Certificate of Need program that we have here and the fact that we have allowed all the hospitals to become monopolies, they're all large carriers now. And we do not hold them to their promise of accessibility and affordability. We have failed. So the only 2% that I would like to see is, I have been saying since I got here, actually since the first year of NCOIL. If we are serious about this, if we are serious about the cost of healthcare, at some point, somebody in this building is going to listen and look to pass what Maryland did, which is the hospitals, the providers cannot increase their costs more than 2% in any given year. You pass that, then insurance can't increase their rates more than the cost of care. This is how it works. To, to get at the root of a weed, you got to go to the roots, right? Kill it, plucking the dandelion and blowing off, saying, you know, we're hoping that this is going to work, does nothing at the root. So at some point, hopefully, somebody in this area will listen to the fact that it needs to be 2% maximum increase on the cost of care from the hospitals and the providers, period. But nobody in this building really wants to take that on. So we're going to continue putting through bills that come at blowing the winds of the dandelion, hoping that it takes it. So, you know, I have problems with this because I think it's not actually getting to the cost of, of care. I understand it's a tool, but it's a tool too far in the process, you know? So whenever, whenever anybody wants to have that conversation, I'm ready, willing and able, right? I'll help you write the freaking legislation. That's what we need to be doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative, Representative Messers. Yep.
First, Commissioner, I want to thank you for your testimony. And I want to thank you for the testimony you've given us over the last couple of years in various assemblies. Your knowledge base, your help has been instrumental in formulating the way we think and the way we approach things. As, I think as an observation, I hear the criticism from my right honorable colleague. I think that might be part, and there, where you veered and I had a problem with it, and I understood that, you know, your role is regulation, the insurance industry. I'm, would hope that the intent of the bill and the potential for a 2% reduction, that the industry is listening closely because what I think I'm hearing from my colleague is we need to hear proposed legislation from the regulated entities about what would increase the competitive environment and help them control costs. Because right now, what I see with it, with an MLR, which I absolutely find atrocious, is that we have a, a coterie of incentives for higher prices across the board. And we don't seem to have the right level of accountability. The insurance, the insurance industry, the cap may work in putting them to think about what legislation they need to advocate for, for capping other costs, for reducing costs to provide us with the right product. So I'm more inclined to look favorably on the suggestion. But I think it would be important, when, when you look administratively, I think I would urge the people you regulate, tell them to come to us and give us their suggestions on the tools to reduce the overall costs of care. Because we would certainly listen to that very closely. You, you weren't wrong and prior speakers weren't wrong. And, you know, 24,000, 25,000, 30,000 compounded at 7% a year. 7% compounding is a doubling. At some point, health insurance is going to become a luxury. And that's just not acceptable. So anything you can do to help, I appreciate. So thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Representative Messers. I think we have a question online from Senator Dr. Anwar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner, for your testimony. Commissioner, I wanted to speak about the Bill 6871. Now, this is about the, the government and the policymakers trying to shift the power dynamics in favor of the insurance companies when two parties are going to have negotiations. Do you think that's our role to be able to do that?
I, I think it's a start, Senator Anwar. I think the Governor believes it's a start. I think all three of these proposals are a start. I think it's fair to say, and I think Dr. Gifford from Office of Health Strategy indicated, we have received information, the Insurance Department, from our carriers, that in certain instances, the reimbursement for out of network can be on average as high as 750% of Medicare. And when our in-network hospitals on average reimbursement is 240 to 250%. I do think that it creates a perverse incentive for carriers to say, what am I doing in network when I can get much higher reimbursement out of network? So I, I, I think if there's any way for us to try to lower the overall cost of our delivery system, and this is specifically aimed at out of network costs, which we will readily admit is not the highest proportion of a health carrier's medical expenses. Most of them are in-network. But if we can reduce that, that would be a direct reduction in claims, which would mean that it would be a reduction in potential future rate increase requests.
So let me brainstorm with you a little bit and then maybe clarify it from another perspective. Now, in, in, in one of your earlier conversations, Commissioner, you had suggested that in some of these situations, we will wait and see what happens. And, and I, I can share with you with the Medicaid rates, and then we are privy to the Medicaid rate study, that we are perhaps one of the lowest in the area. And, and about close to a million people in our state have Medicaid. And, and so that's being the lowest in this entire region, and the Medicare has not been going up. And as a result, we have right now, close to nine hospitals that are in pretty unstable condition. Some may be going through existential threat. So is there a threshold of how many hospitals would have to cease to exist or go bankrupt before we say that these policies are not working? Is there a threshold for the Commission, Insurance Commission?
Senator Anwar, I, I cannot speak to Medicaid reimbursement. I can't speak to Medicare reimbursement. What we're suggesting here is, is as a start for at least the commercial market to limit out of network charges. That's what we're specifically looking at. Many of these providers have the ability to join in-network with health carriers. They can participate in-network. All we're suggesting is, is that if we limit the out of network reimbursement, that would allow or for greater conversations, create more providers in-network, which increases accessibility for the consumers. So I, I really can't speak, and the department can't speak to reimbursement for Medicaid and reimbursement for Medicare. But we certainly know what directly impacts health insurance premiums for the commercial market. And out of network is a piece of that. And again, we have heard significant out of network reimbursement in, for multiple services. So I, I, that's the intent from the Governor's Bill HB 6871, is to attempt the actual lowering of the cost structure for out of network, which would hopefully induce more providers to participate in-network and create larger networks for our consumers.
Thank you, Commissioner, but I, I, I think it's worthy when we are working on policies and, and recommendations that we look at the broader picture, our smaller pieces of the puzzle when we intervene and try to change that, that may have a very significant effect on the entire structure of the healthcare system. So while you may look at it from the myopic view of the Insurance Department to help satisfy the needs of some insurance carriers, this is going to be a problem for the healthcare system in its current form in the state of Connecticut. I, I think, as you say, that this is the starting point. The starting point would be the ending point for a lot of healthcare systems in our state. So I'm really concerned about the myopic view to help satisfy the need of some of the insurance carriers at the cost of harming the healthcare systems that are already at a brink of existential threat. So this is, from a, from a public health lens, this is very concerning. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you so much for your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Anwar. I believe we have Senator Nuccio for a second time.
Thank you. And thank you. I forgot to ask questions about this bill. 6871, I actually like this bill. This bill does exactly what I just talked about. So looking at this bill, what it's going to do is cap the 200, to 240, any out of network costs. Because as you said, carriers who are out of network, typically, it's not unusual to see an out of network bill come in four, five, 600 times the rate of Medicare, right? And when they're out of network, when, when bills are paid in insurance company, they have to look at something called usual and customary and what percentage of, of, of Medicare that you will cover. And to be honest with you, this is, as what Representative Messers was saying, this is one of those areas that, this is a great way, if you cap the out of network cost at 240%, you're actually making healthcare more affordable. And this, I can tell you, this does nothing to help insurance companies at all because they're out of network costs. This is a patient centric bill, especially because the language that's in there dictates that the out of network carrier, a provider, cannot bill the patient for the difference between the reimbursed of the 240% and the actual billed cost. This is a patient centric bill, as far as I'm concerned. I do have a couple of questions, though, just to clarify in relation to what Senator Anwar was just saying for small hospitals. Subsection 5 says that it shall not apply to a hospital located in a rural town as designated by the State Office of Rural Health or federally qualified health centers as described in the general statutes. Can you give a little expansion on that? Like, what exactly does that mean? And, and how, how is that beneficial?
I'm going to have to defer your question to someone that is going to be able to answer that a lot better than me. We're the Insurance Department. We're focused on the insurance carriers part in this. The rural hospitals and the federal, I, I think the intent there is, if, if I may, some of those hospitals have to take patients in, right? And they, they don't have the ability to defer patients elsewhere. I, I also think that rural hospitals are in a little bit different setting than our more city-based hospitals. And so I think the ability for them to attract patients And so I think the ability for them to attract patients may be a little bit different than what our city hospitals have the ability to do. So that may be part of it, Rep. Nuccio, but I'm, I'm going to have to defer to other executive branch agencies for the, the, the answer on that.
Reading this, I'm kind of seeing it the way you are. In a rural, in a rural setting, you know, you don't, you may not have as many doctors who are in network. So to penalize them just because they're so far away would be, it would be punitive. The intent is to not penalize the people who are in rural areas and rural hospitals who may have to resort to out-of-network charges. So exempting them from the 240%, I think is a smart move. And then there's one section in here specifically, "The Office of Health Strategy may adopt regulations in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 54 to implement, alter, reduce, et cetera, et cetera, to impose civil penalties for noncompliance of the provisions in this section." That is new. I don't know if maybe OHS, if, or somebody can answer to what exactly does that mean to, for them to be able to impose civil penalties for noncompliance?
You're welcome to come, Commissioner, if you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Deidre Gifford, Office of Health Strategy. The previous iterations of this legislation, we spent a lot of time with probably members of this committee and other of your colleagues and other executive branch, trying to think about enforcement of this provision. It's complicated, but this civil penalty for violation was what we've eventually landed on as the probably most straightforward.
Go ahead. Sorry. She's like that, you know, she's on that shoulder, the good devil, the angel. I don't know which one she is yet, but she's there. Oh, God, I got two senators surrounding me. Something is wrong in the world right now.
In any case, it was just, in the previous versions of this proposal, it was a little bit unclear as to who and how the enforcement mechanism would occur. And so we added this provision to make it clear that there was a way for an entity that was not following the cap to, to incur a penalty.
Okay, I'd like to understand a little bit more of what that would look like. But again, from the perspective of this bill in capping out-of-network at 240%, I think this does a lot to drive those, those providers who are now charging very exorbitant rates in-network, because in-network is, is usually a lower negotiated rate. It's not always the case, but for the most part, it is a lower negotiated rate. And again, I, I see this as a very patient-centric bill, and it is something I think we should really look at and consider, especially with the language in here exempting the rural-town hospitals and the federally qualified health centers. So I think I've got all my answers on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative. Senator Wong for the second time.
Thank you for the second time. And as you can see, for our audience and for our committee, healthcare cost is absolutely critical. And it is an important role that this committee takes very seriously. So, so thank you for your insights. Now, we talked a little bit about benchmarking, and it ties into how you're able to do the, the various proposals that the governors offer. Through you, through the chair, Dr. Gifford, we talked about the enforcement mechanism of getting benchmark data. Could you provide this committee some of the challenges you've had in regards to entities' rationale and, and examples and the frustration that's been built of noncompliance with that based upon the language of our past benchmarking, that, that you're not able to get all the necessary data? I, I think it's important for people to understand that as much as you're trying, and as much as the agency may be criticized for the, the potential challenges of your data collection, that, that you're not getting the data. And without enforcement, it's hard for, for entities to, to comply. So can you give us an example of one of the frustrations that you've encountered? Maybe our pharmaceutical entities, our hospitals, or our insurers, through you?
Well, Senator, thank you for the question. We do have an agency proposal that addresses this specifically, and I hope we'll have more opportunity to talk about that. But I'm happy to, to briefly share if, if I could.
Sure, go ahead.
The, up until now, the benchmark data has been provided by our insurers without any challenges. We receive aggregate rolled up, not claims level, individual level, but aggregate rolled up costs broken out by about five different categories for year one of the benchmark and year two of the benchmark. And we've been doing that since about 2019. And all of our carriers in Connecticut have provided that data to us without complaint on the part of their clients, without any legal action against them. It's really been a very cooperative process. Recently, we were told by one insurer that they no longer intended to provide the data to us for their self-insured customers. So we have a proposal to, that hasn't impacted any of our benchmark data to date, but it will in the future. So we have a proposal to address that, that I believe will come before this committee in the future. Also, we have encountered, we have a statutory requirement in the benchmark statute that says we will hold a hearing by the end of June every year, to which we will invite individuals that have significantly contributed to the benchmark result to testify. And the legislation says, excuse me, the, the law says that they shall testify if called. For two years in a row, we have had pharmaceutical manufacturers decline to participate in that hearing, even though the law says that they shall participate if called. So that is also addressed in the legislation that we put forward as an agency and that will hopefully be before this committee to be heard in the near future.
Thank you for that information. And I, I think that's the crux, right? Maybe I used the phrase chicken or the egg. If we're using a lot of the benchmarking data points to deform the basis of, of our cost analysis and cost decision, either it'd be prescription drugs, either it'd be healthcare carriers. The challenge is, if we don't get full participation, even though it's statutorily required, without any penalty, then you don't have complete data to do your work. And what you're going to hear is that for you to do something like, like the 2% or to evaluate other data points, well, you don't have complete information. So the challenge is, you don't have completed information. You can't, you shouldn't make me do this. But then the reality is, you're not getting the information. So it's a circular blame game, and, and it's gone on far too long. So I, I appreciate the opportunity to, to kind of have that public analysis. But most importantly of all, I think we all agree, Democrat, Republican administration and the public agree that somehow, some way, we need to address cost containment in a real tangible way. And this may be a start of the conversation, may not be the endpoint. But nevertheless, I think we're just kind of peeling back the onion, greater transparency and finding out who are the underlying cost builders in this, and, and, and try to reduce it for the consumer and businesses. So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gifford. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Commissioner, also for jumping back in. Are there any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you so much for coming today.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Up next, we have Director Jody Terranova. Welcome, Director.
Good afternoon. Dr. Jody Terranova, I'm the Chief Medical Officer for the Medicaid Program at the Department of Social Services. I'm actually going to defer to our Medicaid Director, Bill Halsey, who's the next speaker on your list to speak on behalf of the department. Thanks.
We had a couple subs, just in case I didn't make it. I wasn't feeling that well this weekend, so I think the next one also is from DSS as well. So, good afternoon. Chairs Cabrera and Wood, Ranking Members Wong and Pavlock Demato, and distinguished members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. I'm William Halsey, Medicaid Director at the Department of Social Services. Commissioner Barton Reeves regrets that she is unavailable for today's hearing. I'm here to testify on House Bill 6870 and Act addressing patients' prescription drug costs. The Department is in support of the Governor's Healthcare Affordability Package, including HB 6870, which aims to reduce prescription drug costs. The Department of Social Services, DSS, as the state Medicaid agency, currently spends over $1 billion in gross expenditures in prescription medication on an annual basis. Even though the Department actively pursues and is successful in securing federal rebates and manufacturer supplemental rebates whenever possible, prescription medication costs are increasing and our overall rebate percentage is decreasing. DSS is aware that the Federal Food and Drug Administration has set forth a process under Section 804 of the Federal Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act that allows importation of certain prescription drugs from Canada to significantly reduce the cost of these drugs to the American consumer without imposing additional risk to the public health and safety. The prescription drug importation feasibility pathway contained in this bill to be conducted by the Department of Consumer Protection will help DSS understand the opportunities to reduce pharmaceutical costs. It will also help identify the operational and safety factors that should be considered for the future implementation, as well as best practices and lessons learned from other states that have explored prescription drug importation from Canada, including Florida, specifically for the Medicaid program. The Department is in support of this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions from the committee? Thank you very much for your testimony. Next up, we have Fatma Williams.
She's the backup as well, so thank you.
Next up, we have Kathy Holt from the Healthcare Advocate. Welcome, Kathy.
Thank you and good afternoon. Representative Wood, Senator Cabrera, Representative Pavlock Demato, Senator Wong, and members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. I am Kathy Holt, the Acting Healthcare Advocate for the state of Connecticut. The Office of the Healthcare Advocate supports all three healthcare affordability bills, but I appreciate the opportunity to comment specifically in support of House Bill 6871, an act limiting out-of-network healthcare costs. The proposed bill, as mentioned, would likely drive additional in-network participation, increase access to services for consumers, and provide a clear wake-up call to consumers about the unfair costly peril of out-of-network services. The National Academy for State Health Policy, NASHPE, describes such a model act to limit out-of-network provider rates. It contemplates an economic model using 125% to 200% of Medicare reimbursement rate for an out-of-network provider rate cap. Oregon, for example, has 185 out-of-network cap on hospital prices in their employee benefit plan and a 200% cap on in-network services. A 240% Medicare rate limit for the unfortunate individuals among us who are out of a hospital network at any particular given time is still too high. No one should be subjected to the out-of-network space on the healthcare roulette wheel. But this is a good start. I'd like to illustrate the impact of this bill. So let's say you have a Medicare allowable amount of $5,000 for the same non-emergency procedure for three different patients. Patient one is in-network. The patient pays only the cost sharing, so the deductibles, the coinsurance, the copayment. Patient two is out-of-network, and let's say they're in a health maintenance plan or an exclusive provider plan. So their reimbursement is likely zero because they're out of network. The hospital charges a patient their rack rates. Let's presume it's $15,000 for the same procedure. So the patient owes a full $15,000. Patient three is out of network, but they're in a PPO, Preferred Provider Organization, or a point of service plan. So the reimbursement may be 50% of what the reasonable rate is. We've already decided that reasonable rate is 5,000. So the insurer pays 50% of 5,000 or 2,500, and the patient owes 12,500. If House Bill 6871 is in effect, then the cap is 240% of 5,000, which is $12,000. Patient two now owes 12,000 instead of 15,000, and patient three now owes 12,000 instead of 12,500. According to the Annals of Health Law and Life Sciences, "The market power of hospitals, especially through mergers and consolidations with little demonstrated improvement in quality, has provided a justification for governmental intervention." By way of House Bill 6871, a modest relative out-of-network price cap of 240% of Medicare rates tries to head off the trajectory of significant Connecticut hospital expense growth noted between 2018 and 2022, and ultimately charged back to consumers and employers in the form of skyrocketing premiums. According to RAND, in 2018, out-of-network inpatient prices for Connecticut hospitals were 215% of the Medicare rate. In 2022, out-of-network inpatient prices jumped to 258% in Connecticut. And to Senator Anwar's point earlier, I'd like to, to note that if the proposed plan adopts the 240% rate cap, there is a risk that lower-priced hospitals will increase their rates up to the cap. We have hospitals in Connecticut, both in the 2018 and 2022 studies, that were charging 145, 141% of, at the low range. And so what would happen with this cap, it, it will produce more equitable rates, particularly for those hospitals that are really struggling. The overall potential for savings to be passed on to consumers in lower premiums and for those, again, who are unfortunate to have out-of-network costs would be helpful to them. As noted previously, the 240% is significantly higher than rates contemplated by the NASHPE out-of-pocket rate model range. So any insurance savings generated by this proposed bill are likely to be minimal at this point, given the impact from 240% to the current 258%. But there are four additional benefits to consumers that are equally significant. The first, there is a mild invitation to Connecticut hospitals to check their spending practices. Everyone involved in the delivery and payment of healthcare must throw off some ballast. If hospitals declare lack of access by patients or a decline in care quality for a more than reasonable 240% of Medicare rate cap, they are not participating in consumers' reality. And we all have a responsibility to participate in fixing the cost of our collective healthcare crisis. Second, the very act of curbing out-of-network costs typically results in driving more in-network participation between insurers and hospitals, increasing access generally, but more importantly, increasing access at reasonable prices that are not more than 240% of Medicare. Third, limiting excessive out-of-network costs has also been noted to lower in-network rates, resulting in widespread market-wide benefits and lower administrative costs. And fourth, studies have shown that cost transparency policies have yielded disappointing results due to low use of payer data by consumers. So we're always trying to get transparency into healthcare. Hearing that your hospital might charge you 240% more than your neighbor just because you may happen to work for a company that doesn't contract with your hospital at the time you need surgery is a shockingly clear enough message to motivate consumers to better understand their in-network and out-of-network options for services. Thank you very much for your consideration of this testimony on this very important topic. And thank you for And thank you for listening to the Consumers of Connecticut.
Thank you, Kathy, the Healthcare Advocate. We always love hearing from your office, and thanks for all the great work that you and your staff do. Questions? Representative Muskers.
You'll have to, pardon me, I'm not sure I understand how the price disclosure is going to work. On a pragmatic basis, I either go to Home Depot, I go to the restaurant, I go to the supermarket, the prices are on everything. I go to the hospital and it's the magical mystery tour. So will this show up on my annual renewal of my policy? What the maximum rate for out-of-network procedures should be? And will I get a list of procedures with the maximum out-of-network cost so that I can begin to price my medical procedures? Because right now, I have no way of pricing any medical procedure. You know, I end up with a push and a shove and a push and shove, and it's always a mystery where the price comes out. So I'm wondering what disclosure we'll see.
So I think what the first thing that this does by putting a percentage in front of consumers that say if you're in-network, they can charge what you have negotiated through your insurance company. If you go to a hospital for a non-emergency procedure, they can charge up to 240%. Just knowing the percent helps, even if you don't know the exact numbers. It's enough of an incentive to say, oh, maybe I should check around, as opposed to what we have now, which is really no basis. You know, as you said, it's like the ice is moving underneath us and we can't get a grip. But at least knowing that there is that. The other thing, you know, contemplating how this would work, it would be really helpful if consumers, and this is something that my office can produce to a certain extent with some help from our colleagues at the Insurance Department and the Office of Health Strategy, but asking insurers to be very clear about, at least on an annual basis, which are the in-network hospitals and which are the out-of-network hospitals. So there's a foothold in this. It certainly is not going to be something where you look at your phone and say, gosh, where do I get the best hammer? And, you know, the True Value or the Home Depot or something comes up. It's very different, but it does give us the opportunity to have this conversation, to certainly start the conversation.
I'm looking forward to studying the bill, but I guess that would be my caveat, is that it doesn't take me that much closer. I know I'm good on percentages, so I can do something with it. But, you know, until we get real price disclosure, we're not going to be able to get the sophisticated consumer to be able to shop and competitively look for the best place to get his procedure. So, you know, I'm certainly willing to consider the proposal here, but I'd love you to come back with other proposals for more disclosure.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Senator Anwar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your testimony. I wanted to ask you, you've referred to NASHP a few times. Tell me more about NASHP, if you could, please.
Sure. So NASHP, as I mentioned, is the National Academy for State Health Policy, and they have done a lot of work with other states to determine how to implement different processes. So they have a model act with regard to out-of-network hospital care.
And do you know the funding source of NASHP?
That's a great question. I do not know.
Well, have you heard of Arnold Ventures by any chance?
Yes.
So do you know that's a controversial group made of billionaires who have been working to strengthen insurance industry, and they are one of the biggest supporters of NASHP? And some of their data and research has been flawed, and it has been questioned multiple times. So I know NASHP has become sort of a think tank for easy access for people within the healthcare world to go and understand a narrative that has been suggested by NASHP-based legislation. And this is a legislation for this Bill 6471 or 6871 that is based on the NASHP recommendations. None of the other states are following it. I think before we follow the recommendation of an organization, it's worthy to do a little bit of a background check and the data that they are using to make those recommendations. It makes it more responsible, in my opinion. My next question to you is, do you think all hospitals are created equal? In other words, if you make a policy for every hospital in the state or every healthcare system or every physician office, does it make sense? Because the communities are quite diverse, and every zip code has a different pair mix. Can you speak to that, please?
Sure. I agree that not every hospital is the same. And certainly, we have large health systems, and we have very rural facilities. So I think from the standpoint of what this particular bill contemplates is the ability to provide, you know, a ceiling, a reasonable ceiling of 240% that would reduce the extreme charges that are otherwise being made.
No. As a consumer advocate, at least in that office, are you okay with the fact that in some situations in the hospitals, 20-plus percent, sometimes 30% of the people may not be able to pay for the services? But from a consumer point of view, that's a good thing, right?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
In other words, the hospitals are providing care irrespective of an individual's ability to pay? And then those number of patients who are unable to pay has been increasing?
Yes.
Do you think the insurance do the same thing? Do the insurance industry give insurance to people who are unable to pay?
No.
So as a consumer advocate, who would you like to support in a situation where one group of providers are providing care to individuals who are unable to pay and then continue to provide them the same level of care every single day, as opposed to another one who is only there, subject to providing care to the people who can pay? So it's from a consumer representative, I am... I found your testimony interesting. That's as far as I can say. But thank you so much for your testimony. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you, Healthcare Advocate Kathy Holt. Thank you, everyone in the audience, for giving us time to hear from agency and department heads. We're now going to the public testimony side. You have three minutes. Allie will be timing the testimony. First up, we have Barbara Monk, followed by Nora Duncan.
Hi. This will speed things up. I am speaking on behalf of Nora Duncan, who couldn't be here today. I'm Barbara Monk. I'm a volunteer with AARP from North Haven. Thank you, Senator Cabrera, Representative Wood, Senator Huang, Representative Pavloch, Demato, and members of the committee. I am here today to lend AARP support to House Bill 6870. AARP is a nonpartisan social mission organization with an age-50-plus membership of nearly 38 million nationwide and nearly 550 members right here in Connecticut. AARP supports livable communities for all ages, aging-in-place initiatives, and financial opportunity and resiliency for everyone as they work, age, and retire. We are before the General Assembly every year on a multitude of bills that support these issues and for individuals. Medications don't work if you cannot afford to take them. In my 13 years at AARP, we have slowly chipped away at the issue of prescription drug affordability, but it's not enough. Drug prices increases have dwarfed inflation increases in many cases. It has dwarfed inflation. The people of Connecticut have noticed. In the summer of 2023, AARP surveyed over 35,000 Connecticut adults aged 45 and older and found that three-quarters of them were taking at least one prescription drug regularly. Two-thirds of them are at least somewhat concerned about being able to afford their medications in the future. And a third of those folks were very concerned. And 95% support the state of Connecticut implementing policies to lower prescription drug costs. There is not much that gets a 94% agreement. That is how important this issue is to the people of Connecticut. I'm thrilled that we have made progress at the federal level with Medicare. For instance, insulin expenses are capped. Negotiations for the most expensive drugs take effect in 2026, and out-of-pocket prescription costs are being capped at $2,000 effective this year. But for many of the people we represent at AARP, age 50 to 64, and their families, they are still waiting for relief. Governor Lamont has put together legislation that attacks the issue of prescription drug affordability and from a few different directions. AARP appreciates the thoughtful and multi-pronged approach. The bill's language on Canadian importation is based on the National Academy for State Health Policy model for importation, empowers the state to move forward on Canadian importation if deemed feasible by the Department of Consumer Protection. It comports with all FDA standards and ensures drug safety.
Your three minutes are up. If you could please summarize.
The bill also limits price increases for genetic and off-patent drugs and a civil penalty on manufacturers that raise prices. The bill also gives patients the right to receive credit for out-of-pocket and out-of-network prescription costs that they paid a lower price for. We appreciate the efforts of the committee and governor on this issue. We are encouraged that a bicameral bipartisan task force has prioritized the issue of prescription drug affordability, and we are prepared to help get meaningful solutions that impact consumer directly over the finish line.
Thank you, Barbara. Is AARP working on the task force?
Yes, they are.
Okay, great. Are there any differing recommendations coming out of the task force?
I'll have to refer to AARP staff for that. We'll follow up.
I'm not privy to that at this point. Thank you so much. Any other questions? Great. Next up, we have Paul Pescatello, followed by Mark Schaefer.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak before you. I'm Paul Pescatello. I'm a senior counsel at the CBIA, executive director of its Bioscience Growth Council. I'm also chair of We Work for Health, Connecticut. All those entities are really about bioscience, the life sciences in Connecticut, growing the sector. And they include established biopharma companies, startup biotech companies, and research institutions. So bear with me. You might tell in my voice that I am suffering from winter something, and I'm going to access the healthcare system after I testify. I'm here today to respectfully speak in opposition to two provisions of HB 6870, an act addressing patients' prescription drug costs. The first, price controls of the form of tying medicine prices to the Consumer Price Index, the CPI, and to Canadian drug importation. Let me begin by stating that the essential goal of HB 6870 to lower patients' healthcare costs is laudable and something the Bioscience Growth Council and its members share. In order to achieve that goal, however, we must recognize that drugs represent only a small part of the healthcare cost equations. Medicines account for only about 15% of what we spend in the US on healthcare. That share of the healthcare dollar has been remarkably stable for 75 years. To bring meaningful change and cost savings to healthcare, it's critical to examine the other 85% of the equation: surgeries and hospital stays, MRIs and CAT scans, doctors' visits, home healthcare assistance, insurance plan design, to name only a few. It is also worth noting that in terms of meaningful healthcare reform, such reform is likely to be found at the federal, not the state level. Now, let me turn to the specifics of HB 6870. The Governor's healthcare bill would limit price increases drug manufacturers can charge for generic and off-patent drugs to the CPI. Nominally keeping generic and off-patent drug price increases in line with inflation as measured by the CPI may seem reasonable, but it ignores the fact that the CPI is an average of a broad spectrum of products. The CPI does not reflect the rate of inflation for any one specific product category. The overall January CPI, for example, was 3%, but for eggs, it was 15.2%. The components of the drug supply chain, including the supply chain for generic and off-patent drugs, are many and variable. They are sourced from around the world. This is especially the case for the complex manufacturing applicable to injectable and infused biologics. The price increases suppliers in the generic and off-patent drug supply chain charge for ingredients can often exceed the CPI. Since many parts of ingredients used in drug manufacturing are sourced from overseas, currency fluctuations can have a dramatic effect on prices significantly in excess of the CPI.
Your three minutes are up. If you could please summarize.
It's important to recognize that tethering medicine prices to a rigid formula like the CPI is a form of price controls. And you can see in my testimony that price controls never work wherever they're tried. They just cause misery and shortages and distort the system. If you, I don't know, do I have time to talk about Canadian importation?
Sure. I'll ask a question, Paul. Can you tell us about your views on Canadian importation?
Sure. So as I said in my testimony, it's sort of a vampire idea. It keeps coming up and being shot down for very good reasons, but people won't let it go. As has been said before, the Canadians are adamantly opposed. They've come down to Connecticut and expressed their opinion that they won't let drugs, they won't let an importation scheme work. The safety of the drugs from Canada can't be guaranteed. The bill has so many safety provisions, which is laudable, but in order to satisfy those safety provisions, I don't know that anybody in the supply chain, all the different actors, who would have to guarantee safety, I don't think they'd be willing to do that. The FDA has let Florida and Colorado proceed with devising an importation scheme, but no drugs have flowed from Canada to Florida or Colorado. I think it will flow to Connecticut. The opposition by the Canadians, the safety concerns, the risk all the parties would have to assume to make Canadian importation happen is simply too great. I would just say, too, that the Canadian healthcare system is a single-payer system with price controls on drugs. And so the price the Canadians allow manufacturer manufacturers to charge or that they're willing to buy the drug for is essentially the manufacturing cost plus a small profit. So it doesn't reflect the research and development that goes into the drugs at all. And so for that reason, the manufacturers keep the supply to the, what is it, 40 million Canadians, very tight. So there really is no excess capacity for Canada to export drugs to the US.
Thanks, Paul. I have one additional question. Can you share with us the local bioscience kind of economy here and their views on this? I mean, you kind of did a high level in your testimony.
Yeah.
If you can just kind of drill down a little bit to the local manufacturers or local innovators here in Connecticut.
Sure. Price controls are anathema to the industry. So we certainly don't want to be the state that institutes price controls. There's a very complicated, you know, process for developing a drug. You've heard people like me say it over and over again, but it's absolutely true. It's about $2.7 billion to bring a drug to market, and it takes about 10 years. The companies and the investors have to be confident that they will be able to recoup their investment. If price controls are grafted onto the system after the fact, it'll ruin that calculation on their part, and they simply won't do the R and D.
Great. Thank you. Senator Huang.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you for your work in the bioscience sector. Go back to Canada. I think you're right. It's been an idea that's been kind of regurgitated back to the beginning of the Trump administration. I think far more important, and maybe you can offer some insight, is not the question of Canadian drugs. The question is, why are the same drugs... cost differently between the United States and Canada? If they're indeed the same kind of manufacturers and the same kind of quality assurance standards, why is it that the United States is so considerably higher than Canada? Can you offer some context and the rationale behind that?
Great, great question and something, you know, I've been trying to uh, explain to people. Um, it is a very, uh, it's a relatively complicated answer, and it's really an international relations problem in the sense that, um, the other developed countries, the other, um, rich countries, they pay manufacturing costs plus a little bit of profit on the manufacturing, as I said before. It's it's not a negotiation because it's just a single payer saying to the drug company, this is the price we'll pay, or take it or leave it. No drug company has been willing to deny access to drug to their medicines uh, because of that. So they export their drug, they 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 sell their drugs to other, uh, developed countries, take that manufacturing cost plus a little bit of profit, and they make up all their R and D costs on the U.S. market. So it's it's really true. We are paying pretty much the world's R and D. And that's an international relations problem that so far, no federal administration has been willing to take on, but it's certainly, in my opinion. And certainly, you talk to, um, companies and investors, um, that that's the way to lower drug prices. I mean, that is the real solution. If, you know, the UK, Germany, Singapore, Japan, they pay more for R and D, we can pay less. And if we, if after you, after that, after that occurred, if drug prices didn't come down, then it would be very, it would be legitimate to say the drug companies are, um, you know, exploiting the system. But that that's that's really the thing. It's a, it's a, as I say, a very complicated argument. I mean, to say, too, I go to a lot of conferences for startup biotechs. There's a big conference out in California, the JP Morgan Healthcare Conference, which is really a a conference with biotech companies from around the world, the sort of the best biotech companies, uh, JP Morgan is on triage, on the best up and coming biotech companies. And it's, um, it's like an hour long presentation by each company. Half of it is the science, half of it is the business model. It's behind closed doors. And it's it's unbelievably telling how every foreign biotech companies, like companies around Cambridge, England, say, we've got this great new product, this great new drug. How are you going to make your, how are you going to make up the cost? How are you going to make money on this product? It's it's all the U.S. market. But again, that's the fault of not the other countries not paying their fair share.
You're right. You're citing international, and and it it does require resolve, and and a lot of our healthcare cost is predicated on some of the federal policies, but uh, this is a bill by the administration as well as various administrative agencies to to try to contain prescription drug cost. Um, and and we're trying to take a lead on this, and 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 you're going to hear objections. So why is this not a leadership initiative in the absence of a international and a national effort to bring parity and fairness into the prescription drug business?
Because unfortunately, I think it would be counterproductive, the tying, uh, price increases to inflation would be counterproductive. Um, and the Canadian importation, I just think it will not work. It'll be a lot of effort spent studying it, and if the Canadians are opposed to it and the safety concerns can't be overcome, um, then it's just not going to happen. So.
I'm I'm going to jump a little bit, and and you talk about the lack of initiatives. So so one of the biggest issues that I I think the industry uh, struggles with is the three forty B, uh, prescription drug cost to our, um, uh, needy communities and challenges. Uh, we've been looking to expand that program, but obviously there's objections, very strong objections from the industry against that. So again, it's 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 a legislative initiative as well as a a policy and a federal policy to say, three forty B, let's contain the cost and and lower the cost so access uh, can be available to those most in need. Why would that be a bad policy that the industry has opposed? Now, now, get me wrong. I am a strong believer in in the bioscience. I I co-chair the bipartisan basis, but we're addressing cost issues that continue to rise in double digits, and we talk in a circular debate. And and I I think just as we talked about the Canadian solution, and you say it's an international issue. Well, we're trying to do something on three forty B. Uh, why is that not a plan that that the industry could support?
Yeah, just I I know you're like a huge supporter of the life sciences, and you, I applaud you for all the work you've done over the years on it. So three forty B is not part of this legislation unless I missed something. But, you know, the the three forty B is something that the pharmaceutical companies are very much behind in the sense of making their drugs available to the underinsured and uninsured, um, populations at a, you know, very discounted rate. I think the issue there and is is tying the discounted drugs to a three forty B patient. In other words, is the patient that the hospital is claiming is a three forty B patient really uninsured and or underinsured, and are they gaming the system in some way so that they're billing the insurance company for uh, a higher price than the three forty B price and, uh, taking the difference?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, for the indulgence of a a a side, but it is part of the cost issues, and 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 I know there are many discussions a a foot about three forty B as well as uh, pharmacy benefit managers and relates that, not related to this bill, but nevertheless, I think these are all critical factors in which something needs to be addressed. And and I welcome the input of our important industry that exists in Connecticut to be part of the solution. And and I think the latest budget by the governor in regards to supporting the increase in in research and development credits is critical. But but I am concerned that, uh, the United States and and our U.S.-based companies, based upon your testimony, are are providing the research and development dollars uh, at a cost to Connecticut and U.S. consumers to the benefit of the rest of the world. So I I think some policy needs to be addressed afoot, uh, to bring some fairness and 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 parity to this issue. And it's a work in progress, but I hope that our pharmaceutical companies will be part of the solution moving forward. So thank you, Madam Chair, for the indulgence.
Thank you. Great, Paul. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you so much.
Mark Schaefer, followed by Reggie Stankitis.
Good afternoon, Representative Wood, Senator Wong, and distinguished members of the committee. Uh, my name is Mark Schaefer, Vice President of System Innovation and Financing at the Connecticut Hospital Association. I appreciate the opportunity to testify concerning House Bill sixty eight seventy one, an act limiting out of network uh, healthcare cost. CHA opposes this bill. House Bill sixty six sixty eight seventy one would cap out of network payment for hospital inpatient outpatient services at two hundred and forty percent of Medicare. The real intent of this bill is not to protect patients from surprise out of network bills. Uh, state and federal law already does that. Instead, the intent is to favor national health insurance companies over Connecticut's hospitals in commercial contract negotiations. If insurers have no incentive to avoid a hospital going out of network, they are empowered to strong arm hospitals further into limiting reimbursements for in-network rates. This is not a patient-focused policy. It is an insurer-focused policy. The consequences of the out-of-network price cap would be damaging to many Connecticut hospitals and health systems and would jeopardize their financial recovery by pushing rates closer to Medicare and costing hospitals hundreds of millions in commercial revenue. In twenty twenty three, statewide operating margins remain negative, and Connecticut hospitals overall lost seventy six million dollars. Improvement in revenue continues to be outweighed by staggering cost increases and operating costs like drugs, supplies, and workforce, which grew by, uh, a billion dollars in only a single year. The proposed policy would undermine hospitals and health systems' ongoing efforts to rebuild and throw into question their ability to maintain current levels of access to services for low-income populations. It also remains unclear whether savings will find their way back to consumers. Although the bill requires these companies to pass on to consumers the savings generated by the price caps, it will be difficult to quantify such savings. Even if it can be demonstrated that savings get back to employers, there's simply no mechanism to ensure savings are passed on to consumers. We believe that affordability cannot be addressed without recognizing the role that Medicaid underpayment plays in the commercial and the cost of commercial insurance. In the past several years, Medicaid underpayment in Connecticut has increased sharply, rising to one point four billion dollars in twenty twenty three. In fact, Connecticut's Medicaid shortfall is higher than most states and among the highest in the nation. According to the Office of Health Strategies' most recent community benefit report, Connecticut's Medicaid shortfall as a percent of expenses is seventy nine percent higher than the national average. Because of the role commercial insurance plays in cross-subsidizing the Medicaid shortfall, these losses put significant pressure on negotiations with commercial payers. We strongly recommend that efforts to address hospitals' contribution to commercial costs begins by addressing the Medicaid shortfall. We believe there are innovative solutions for doing so that would benefit the commercially insured hospitals and other Medicaid providers and the health of the communities they serve. Thank you for considering our position.
Thanks, Mark. I think you'll find, um, a lot of us in support of increasing the Medicaid reimbursement rates because we realize the pressure on the commercial market. Um, a lot of the, uh, you know, data we're getting in terms of increases is tied to the benchmark. And I was wondering if you can share, uh, your experience working with the benchmark since it's been implemented.
Well, we have, um, uh, I think we've otherwise testified that we're in support of the cost growth benchmark, but we've had serious concerns about the, uh, validity of the data analyses that are supposed, that are, uh, that are used to support the cost growth benchmark. And we believe many of the conclusions that are drawn from the data analyses that are undertaken are are inaccurate and, uh, without good, uh, solid data, that makes it difficult to administer the program in a way that uh, provides the insights that are needed to come up with collective solutions to address the issues.
And have you expressed the inaccuracies in finding ways for solutions with, uh, the the benchmarking team? And is that moving forward in a way that is satisfactory?
Uh, we've certainly raised these concerns, actually going back some time on, uh, the data integrity issues and and the analytic validity issues. And I would say that, um, we're not at a position now where we can say that, uh, we do believe Office of Health Strategy has been listening, paying paying attention and engaged, um, and it's too soon to tell at this point whether the issues have been resolved.
Keep us posted on that.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Next up, we have Reggie Stankitis, followed by Deremius Williams.
Good afternoon. My name is Reggie Stankitis, and I'm a AARP volunteer, and I live in Cromwell. Hang on, let me get my glasses here. Okay. I am here today to testify and to express my support for House Bill sixty eight seventy and act addressing patients' prescription drug costs. I'd like to share my experience with you with the high cost of prescription drugs. I have Parkinson's disease, a neurological degenerative disease affecting both motor and non-motor skills, systems. While there is no cure for Parkinson's, medications do play an important role in alleviating symptoms. I currently take sixteen different medications to help me maintain the highest quality of life possible. My current combination of medications has been carefully selected by my team of doctors, with each medication playing an important role in the management of my Parkinson's disease and other medical issues that I have. But those medications come at no small cost. One of my medications is Norions, which costs an astounding two thousand three hundred and ninety dollars for just a thirty day supply, and it is not covered by insurance. I end up paying up this for this medication out of my own pocket. This medication is an important part of my treatment plan, helping me to reduce my off time and problems with movement and speech. Parkinson's presents itself differently from one patient to another. In my case, without this medication, my tremors and balance are off, and I fall more frequently. Norions is not the only expensive medication I take. I take Ongentis. It's another Parkinson's medication which costs six hundred dollars for a thirty day supply. In my hand, I have these two medications. They cost three thousand dollars a month. Three thousand dollars a month for me to take them. Okay, if I took those two medications alone for the entire year, the cost would have been thirty six thousand dollars. Last year, I spent close to twenty one thousand on all of my prescription medications. If you do the math, you know that I didn't take all my medications as prescribed. Because of the high cost of my medications, I had to reevaluate my plans for retirement. Paying for my medications using my 401Ks and pensions put me in a higher income tax bracket, which prevented me from qualifying for any assistance programs. I saved and had to put money aside for my retirement. Instead of trying to think about what I would do to enjoy my retirement, I now wonder if I have enough money to survive that my, in my retirement. I urge you to pass House Bill sixty eight seventy so that Connecticut residents like myself and your constituents don't have to continue to put their financial stability at risk just to afford the medications they need.
Reggie, thank you for being here and sharing your personal story with us. It really means a lot. Any questions? Great, thank you. Next up, we have Deremius Williams, followed by Liz Dupont Deal.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of the committee. My name is Deremius Williams. I am Senior Vice President of Payor Strategy and Innovation for Yale New Haven Health System. This includes oversight of payer relations and contracting for our Connecticut affiliated hospitals, Bridgeport, Lawrence and Memorial, Greenwich, and Yale New Haven Hospitals. I'm here to offer testimony on House Bill sixty eight seventy one, an act limiting out of network healthcare costs. Yale New Haven Health respectfully requests that the Insurance and Real Estate Committee reject House Bill sixty eight seventy one as it seeks to establish through legislation pricing caps for out of network services that commercially insured patients access. These patients have commercial health insurance with benefit plans defined by their employers and payers, which include established participating networks of providers that patients can access for in-network services. The networks generally must meet minimum network adequacy requirements, and the benefit plans are clear about patient cost shares for in-network services versus out of network services. Generally, in Connecticut, in my experience, there's typically maximum participation or certainly majority participation of hospitals across the major payers' networks. It is not appropriate for the state to enact legislation that would disregard the complexity of payer network development, the comprehensiveness of the analytics that support payer-established out of network fee schedules, and the choice of employers to select benefit plan options without, with consideration of those out of network fee schedules. House Bill sixty eight seventy one seeks to cap out of network healthcare costs for inpatient and outpatient services at a single Medicare-indexed rate for the same service in the same geographic area. We are concerned with the state attempting to legislate required levels of out of network reimbursement. Reimbursement indices vary, for good reason, across services. There is typically not one index relative to Medicare for in-network or out of network pricing as underlying factors that impact impact costs and economics are complex and varied. For example, Medicare pricing in and of itself does not sufficiently contemplate the variation in costs across services. It is unreasonable to establish one geographically indicated straight price index to Medicare across all services without considering the many factors that contribute to the complexity of reimbursement models. Payers generally take this into account in their development of out of network fee schedules. Payers and providers negotiate in-network reimbursement using comprehensive, complex, and objective factors. The approach outlined in the bill would place significant undue strain on negotiations and relationships between payers and providers. Any perceived savings from the bill would be overshadowed by potential network disruption, as providers would likely have to narrow the payer populations they would continue to serve. In other words, it would be counter to the intent of the bill. The reporting requirements contained in the bill are problematic, as there are no limits on what information could be requested. Providers do not establish out of network rates or commercial patient costs associated with such rates.
Your three minutes are up. If you could please summarize.
Sure, thank you. The amounts are determined in accordance with established insurance benefit plans. Therefore, providers should not be subject to monitoring or penalty relative to costs associated with out of network commercial rates for which they have no role in determining. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Hi, uh, thank you for being with us. Hi, thank you for being with us today. Can you tell us for your hospital system why your customers would go out of network? I mean, I figure with your hospital system, you might have a much broader, you know, umbrella than others. But why would some, you know, go out of network?
Sure. Well, what I would say is our hospitals are in-network with all of the major payers. All of our hospitals are, and our providers. And so the patients that have the opportunity to use our facilities and providers for services would be able to get our services using their in-network benefits for all of the major payers.
Great, thank you. And can I ask you the same question that I asked Mark Schaefer? You know, a lot of our drive for trying to cap costs is related to the data we're collecting through the cost growth benchmark. We were very happy to put that into place right at the height of COVID. Finally, you know, coming to the table with data, you know, at our fingertips and looking at our healthcare spend and coming up with ways that we could potentially cap it or form, you know, goals going forward based on, you know, the spend there. How has Yale's interaction with a cost growth benchmark been?
Sure, thank you. I would say that we understand the intent of the cost growth benchmark, and I think we are aligned with the goals in terms of advancing affordability, enhancing quality, enhancing access and outcomes, et cetera. What we have found, however, is that the data that is currently available is insufficient to conduct a complete analysis that contemplates our full experience. Additionally, there's still lacking transparency, I believe, in the data that is analyzed and submitted through the process that's currently in place. And so what we find is that when we evaluate our own information and compare it to what is reported to us, there are significant discrepancies. And oftentimes, the discrepancies that we find indicate information that OHS is reporting to us that is higher or more negative trends, if you will, than what our own experience demonstrates.
When you define those discrepancies or share those discrepancies with OHS, what is the process for resolution?
Sure. So generally, we receive the reports, and we do an analysis internally, and we'll provide communication back either verbally or in writing. I think we've been able to have some reasonable conversations around the discrepancies. I think unfortunately, the process as it is does continue. And so, for example, we in the past have presented at a hearing based on the information that was reported. If it was based on the information that we analyzed ourselves based on our own experience, we would not have been called to the hearing. So I think the issue that we have is, as it is currently defined and as it's currently moving, our feedback is just not able to be sufficiently contemplated on how it's facilitated forward. That said, I do still think we are starting to have conversations. And I think, as Mark said earlier, I think there's more for us to see in terms of how it ultimately gets resolved.
Did you express to OHS that you felt that you should not have been called to the hearing based on discrepancy in the data?
At that time, we did, but I think this was the first year of reporting. And so I can understand why they proceeded at the time.
Well, thank you for participating.
Thank you.
And I look forward to working with you going forward. Any other questions? Great.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Liz Dupont Deal, followed by Mike Violette. Next, we have Mike Violette, followed by Boris Goldman.
Hey. Good afternoon, Chairman Wood, Chairman Cabrera, Ranking Members Pavlak, Damato, and Wong, and other honorable members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. My name is Michael Violette. I am the Chief Financial Officer of Stanford Health, an independent nonprofit system serving lower Fairfield County. I am here to testify in opposition to House Bill 6871. This bill would cap out-of-network payments for hospitals at 240% of Medicare, as has already been shared by others. No one is arguing that commercial payments are greater than what Medicare pays as Medicare payments are significantly lower than hospital costs. However, the proposal to cap commercial rates suggests a failure to understand the complexities and fragility of hospital financing. With no ability to negotiate Medicaid and Medicare rates and shortfalls in hospital payments for these programs, hospitals have no choice but to shift costs to commercial insurance. The Connecticut Hospital Association, as noted earlier, calculates that $1.4 billion in annual Medicaid shortfalls are absorbed by Connecticut's hospitals. Artificially capping commercial rates without a corresponding increase in government health program reimbursement would severely constrain hospitals' ability to provide services needed by their communities and could lead to service closures, hospital failures, and consolidation. You have my full testimony, so I'll highlight our other concerns. First, the bill severely undercuts hospitals. In terms of the out-of-network caps, it would hamper our ability to negotiate appropriate rates with the national insurance companies. CHA estimates that this bill could result in the loss of hundreds of millions of dollars, estimated somewhere between $400 to $500 million. Secondly, when viewed with other bills proposed by the administration and potential federal cuts, this bill creates unsound policy. The governor's budget proposes to increase the amount each hospital owes in revenue tax by a collective $140 million with a corresponding increase in hospital supplemental payments. This $140 million will draw down $94 million for the state to use to offset non-hospital Medicaid costs through the federal match. This is on top of the $500 million the state already receives to offset its share of such Medicaid costs. The budget bill also requires the control of the lower payments to hospitals for services provided to state employees by at least $100 million on a permanent basis in offsetting a $110 million payment is for one year only. There is an omission.
Three minutes are up. If you could please summarize.
Sure, thank you. There is an omission of an annual Medicaid rate increase on a go-forward basis. We went through many years of no increase prior to this settlement, which provided a 2% annual increase. Having no rate increase means there's no offset to counter inflation. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mike, thank you very much for coming forward to testify. Can you please elaborate on your fear for additional consolidations?
So what I think has been the norm in healthcare is many, many struggling systems have had to turn to become part of larger systems. I do not think that when these happen, these acquisitions happen, that it typically leads to a better outcome in terms of rates and prices for the consumer. Typically, the larger hospitals do carry more leverage at the bargaining table when their negotiating rate increases. So that's what that comment pertained to.
And are you involved in the cost growth benchmark discussions with your hospital? Can I ask you to elaborate on that?
Sure. So I am, and our CEO, Kathy Solard, is on a committee staffed to that committee that works with OHS. So, you know, I'll just share that we will echo the same things we've heard from Mr. Schaefer, from CHA, and from a colleague, Doremias Williams from Yale, that we've found the same issues that they have already noted. And just something that I did add when we had an opportunity a little less than a year ago, and voiced concern that although we understand the intent of the cost growth benchmark and the timing of it was unfortunately coming around the time of COVID, I still feel, and many do, that it hasn't really fully contemplated the impact of really sort of unprecedented inflation since then that we've all been struggling to manage through. And the rate increases that I think they expect that we should be negotiating are really not appropriate in order for us to be able to continue to provide the access that we feel the community needs and deserves.
Great, thank you. Would love to work with you on making sure that process gets better. Representative Messgers.
I want to thank you for your testimony. Could you be more specific or be helpful in terms of the Connecticut healthcare system? How many independent hospitals are still operating in the state?
Representative Messger, I believe we're talking about a handful. It might be five at this point. I mean, Stanford Health is one of those. Bristol, De Kimball, Griffin, and maybe I'm probably missing one.
Okay, perfect. I think in terms of testimony, or what would be helpful is a positioning competitively of yourself versus the other larger chains and what the issues in operating are. Because it would be helpful for us to understand if it's a generic complaint about the governor's proposal or if it's a concern about one size fits all. So it'd be, you know, interesting to know if there's specifics to it that apply to you and the Stanford Hospital. So we can understand when we're looking at the bill, your particular concerns versus, you know, the larger chains.
Sure. Thank you for the question. I would say that I think that much of what we struggle with and have issue with is no different than what the other hospitals, whether they be large or small. I think some of the policy, or, you know, I'll kind of put a circle around the fact that as long as we continue to only receive a 2% increase as it pertains to Medicaid, when every year we continue to see the gap on our costs versus that reimbursement grow. And then you get Medicare. Medicare is not that far behind, right? So, you know, Medicare is reimbursing us at less than, you know, 70 cents on the dollar. I think we're around 65 cents on the dollar for Medicare. I mean, those are systemic issues that are not just a Stanford issue. So when we're looking at, you know, trying to negotiate prices with the payer community, it is really, it is really very difficult for us to sort of be fully compliant with what I think the intent is of the cost growth benchmark to kind of come in at these, you know, what's been mentioned, I heard earlier, oh, we should do what Maryland has done. And I understand what Maryland has done. But in this, in this current situation, a 2% increase with the unprecedented inflation is not sustainable. I mean, without actually bringing forth policy around Medicaid reimbursement that can be a counterbalance to negotiating lower rates with the payers, you'd have to have them both handed. You can't comply with something or agree to something, a proposal such as 240% of Medicare, which again, I get that 240% of anything sounds like a lot, but when you, when you look at what it is that you're comparing it to, I think looking at it in that context, I think most people might understand why it is that, you know, we are going to have some challenges. I would say performing well versus the cost growth benchmark until there's a full appreciation for what inflation has been. And Mr. Schaefer articulated those costs, you know, and I heard earlier that, well, we should be doing a better job on belt tightening. I can tell you that we're probably not alone in terms of always looking to be able to manage our costs as best that we can. But, you know, what happened with the pandemic and thereafter with the rampant increase as it relates to travelers and agency costs certainly put a lot of pressure on us and the rest of the industry in terms of, well, we certainly don't want to be paying 200 and 300% on those labor costs as compared to in-house. And that certainly led to us having to all readdress our overall labor market structure. And utilities, we've all seen what's going on with utility costs and insurance costs, whether it be related to property insurance or cyber insurance, right? That's been another challenge we're all potentially vulnerable to. And then just the overall supplier disruption, you know, we can negotiate. We try to negotiate prices as aggressively as we can, but you never know when your primary distributor is all of a sudden going to become a problem, and now you're turning to a secondary or even a third supplier. We do not have a favorable pricing in those cases. So these are, these are not just Stanford Health issues. I think all of my Connecticut, our Connecticut colleagues would say that these are things that they're all grappling with as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mike, thanks for joining us today. We have Dr. Boris Goldman, followed by Bing Pei. I'm sorry. Is Mike still on? Mike, are you, are you still there?
I'm back, I'm back.
We have another question for you from Senator Honig.
Okay. Hey, Mike. Thanks for your testimony. On this bill, I've read a number of pieces of testimony that talk about the difficulty that the cap on out-of-network charges would have on negotiations for in-network pricing with insurance companies. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Senator. So, and I, I'm thinking back to some of the earlier testimony that we heard this morning and this afternoon. And I was, I was struck by one of the pieces of testimony that talked about how we would be just happy, right, to take out of network or continue to be out of network or end up in a situation where we're out of network. And I can tell you that that is 180 degrees from the truth. As we've just gone through, what I would describe as one of the more difficult negotiations I've ever been personally through in my career. And the greatest threat to us is to be on it, I feel. And I know that's shared by our CEO and our physicians here at Stanford Health. We do not want to be out of network. We don't, we don't view that as a... This is a great opportunity for us to gouge patients and, you know, get paid 750% of Medicare. I tell you, the greater threat there is that we're going to see a lot of flight to other systems because we have systems that are not that far. I mean, that are within 10 miles of Stanford Health. A patient has to be advised, Mark Schaefer from CHA talked about it. A patient has to be advised if they're going to be out of network, if that is indeed the case. And then we have to advise them of what that's going to cost them. And I'm pretty sure in most cases, the patient's going to say, I'm going to take my business somewhere else. And so we're not going to be able to capitalize on a payment at 750% of Medicare. We're going to lose a potential patient. And that's our viewpoint. So we've always, we've always felt that we don't have the hammer there at all. We really feel that that is really still, it's just the opposite. The payer has the advantage there, and we have to be able to stick to our conviction and then in the negotiation. But if all of a sudden you apply a cap, and that cap happens to be less than what we already have in their in-network rates, then that's going to be got a cascading situation for us in terms of reimbursement going forward. So...
And there would be a considerable number of charges where the 240% cap is less than what you've negotiated for in-network?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you for the question.
Mike, thanks for joining us. Next up, we have Dr. Boris Goldman, followed by Bing Pei. And we're going to move on to Bing Pei.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Powell.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Thank you.
That's fine. I'm going to merge these.
That's fine. I'm an emergency physician and the director of provider relations for Vituity. Vituity is a multi-specialty physician-owned democratic partnership without any private equity ownership. Honorable members of the Connecticut Insurance and Real Estate Committee, thank you for the opportunity to present my testimony regarding HB 6871. I am here to express my opposition to the bill and provide reasons why it may have unintended negative consequences for both patients and healthcare providers. First, I want to talk about the impact that it would have on the insurance market dynamics. It certainly will create havoc in that insurance companies will be incentivized to terminate contracts with physicians and reduce the number of in-network physicians. We've seen this happen in other states. This will lead to closure or consolidation of physician practices. Multiple studies have shown that consolidation drives up the cost of healthcare. The impact of providers is that many physician groups won't be able to negotiate fair market rates and will be forced to reduce staff or consolidate. Emergency physicians are particularly vulnerable since federal mandates require emergency physicians to care for patients, even if the health plan does not compensate fairly. Emergency physicians can't rely on downstream revenues such as hospital missions or inpatient surgeries to cover costs. Emergent physicians have to have fair compensation to cover the cost providing care for the uninsured and underinsured such as Medicaid. In addition, fewer physicians will be able, will be willing to take call for emergency departments and that will impact access to the care. Physician groups won't be able to recruit and retain physicians in areas that don't provide competitive compensation. With regards to patients, I think this bears mentioning again, patients are already protected from out of network patient cost shares due to bans on surprise billing. Under the No Surprises Act, patients pay the same in-network cost share for out-of-network services. Living out-of-network healthcare costs will reduce the quality of care available to patients. By capping the cost, physician groups will be forced to reduce staffing, leading to reduced quality of care, longer wait times, and ultimately poor health outcomes. In conclusion, the implementation of HB 6871 could lead to unintended consequences that ultimately harm patients. I urge members of the committee to consider the broader implications of this bill and explore alternative solutions that ensure access to high-quality care for all Connecticut residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Can you just tell us what your company does again? I didn't hear you when you first came on.
We are a physician partnership, so we are a physician-owned partnership of physicians and other healthcare providers. We have over 5,000 providers nationwide.
Great. Thank you very much for your time today. Next up, we have Rachel Cottle-Latham, followed by Simon Allentuck.
And good afternoon, members of the Insurance Committee. Thank you so much for your time today. My name is Rachel Cottle-Latham. I'm Senior Director for State Policy with the Pharmaceutical Research and Manufacturers of America, representing our nation's leading innovative biopharmaceutical companies. And I'm here today on behalf of our members to respectfully oppose proposals in House Bill 6870 that would both institute a problematic price control on prescription medicine tied to CPI and take steps to establish a drug importation program. And I have submitted detailed written testimony, so I will focus my comments today on the price control provision. The claim that prescription drug prices are rising sharply or significantly driving overall spending is misleading. At national scale, prescription medicine costs account for approximately 14% of total healthcare spending, which is a stable figure for several years and is expected to remain stable. Net prices have increased below the rate of inflation for a fifth year in a row. And looking ahead, IQVIA predicts that net prices will decline over the next five years between negative 1% and negative 4% through 2028. But despite this, patient out-of-pocket spending for medicines increased by 5.8% in 2023. The use of deductibles and coinsurance and commercial health insurance has increased significantly in recent years, with the share of patient out-of-pocket drug spending attributable to coinsurance more than doubling over the past 10 years and the share attributable to deductibles tripling. This has left patients struggling to afford their out-of-pocket costs. Rebates, discounts, and other price concessions offered by manufacturers on brand medicines reached $344 billion in 2023. And yet, when patients face deductibles or coinsurance, their health plan often bases the patient's cost sharing on a medicine's list price. This means those discounts lower the cost of medicines for insurers and PBMs while patients must pay based on the full undiscounted price. The price control proposed by Governor Lamont in House Bill 6870 does nothing to directly address this issue. Instead, the proposal assumes incorrectly that the price of a drug is determined solely by pharmaceutical manufacturers and fails to take a meaningful view across the supply chain. The bill would penalize manufacturers for increases in list price even where there may be no corresponding increase in net price. And this is alarming when manufacturers are giving larger discounts to insurance companies, middlemen, and hospitals each year. On average, more than half of all spending on brand prescription medicines went to someone other than the manufacturer who researched and developed the medicine. But importantly, this bill could also impact patients' access to medicines. Price setting diminishes the incentive for manufacturers to invest in the research and development of new medicines. Conversations about affordability are extremely important, and there are better policies that meaningfully address the problem of affordability without risking patient access and future innovation. Connecticut could focus on patient-centric solutions such as ensuring that rebates and discounts are shared with patients at the pharmacy counter to lower their out-of-pocket burden. House Bill 6870 is more likely to have negative unintended consequences than it is likely to benefit Connecticut patients, and I urge the committee's opposition. Thank you very much for receiving my testimony.
Thank you. Have you seen this type of policy enacted in any other state?
No, we have not. In fact, Massachusetts, for three years, former Governor Baker put forward a similar proposal that was rejected each time by the legislature.
Okay, and the notion that all of the United States customers are paying for research and development and yet the world gets a lot of our pharmaceutical drugs at a lower costing rate, what is your response to that?
We feel strongly that comparing prices here in the United States to prices in other countries is really an apples and oranges comparison. For example, in other countries, the concept of a pharmacy benefit manager does not exist and influence the price of prescription medicine so that price comparisons are failing to account for the significant rebates and discounts manufacturers are offering here in the United States.
So PBMs only exist in the US?
I, I would say that PBMs are not exerting the same influence as in the US as they are in other countries.
So they operate differently in the US than in other countries? Okay, and you know, we, we heard a lot about the Canadian importation. If you could just make a comment on that.
Certainly. We do not feel that the concept of Canadian importation is a viable solution to the struggles that American patients here are facing. For one, we heard testimony several times that we agree is accurate, that the Canadian government has vehemently opposed the concept of importation and has taken actions through regulatory measures and otherwise to assure that their prescription drug supply cannot be compromised by American demand. And moreover, we have significant concerns around patient safety. The FDA is really the gold standard of safety in the United States, and we have serious concerns that the breaking this closed supply chain could put patients in the United States at risk. Moreover, we have heard several times that Colorado and Florida have taken steps to submit proposals to the FDA. Florida did receive approval in January 2024 to create a Canadian importation program. And to date, Florida has spent $60 million on its program without a single imported drug from Canada.
Thank you very much for that. Representative Messgers.
I appreciate the testimony and your concerns about the drugs and the safety of the drug chain. But the fact of the matter is we're paying 2.7 times the price of drugs that the OECD countries are, are paying, which means we're subsidizing the entire industry. The model is broken. I think this is an attempt to address the model. The logical solution for, at the federal level is a 20 or 30% premium for research and development and manufacturing in our country versus the OECD countries. It's not to allow Americans to bear the unfair burden of supporting the entire research and development. So absent another solution, this is not an optimal solution, but I think it's, it's the optimal solution in the short term. So I, I would have to respectfully disagree. I, I don't see a way out of putting a dent in the cost, the, the costs of drugs. I would also mention in the commentary, while drugs are growing, the cost of medications are represent the same share of the wallet as they did 10 years ago, the wallet is growing by 7 to 10% a year, which is what our discussions were. So we need to figure out a way to control some of the costs. So frankly, I, I'm in favor of the legislation the governor's putting forward, but I do thank you for your testimony. You know, there are concerns importing drugs from Canada. I agree that we have to look at the controls. But frankly, it's the same manufacturer in the US and Canada, and it's a supply issue of drugs at a certain price available in Canada and those same drugs at a higher price available in the US. I'm not sure how we resolve that by importing, but I'm certainly willing to give it a try. But thank you.
Appreciate your comments, Representative.
Great. No more questions. Thank you so much for joining us today, Rachel. Next up, we have Simon Allentuck followed by Kelly Memphis.
Good afternoon, Representative Wood and distinguished members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. My name is Simon Allentuck. I am the General Counsel for NEMS, a Connecticut Emergency Medicine Group. I'm here today to explain how HB 6871 will cause chaos in emergency departments and why you should vote against it. My remarks focus on emergency medicine. There is no need for HB 6871. The price of emergency medicine care is already highly regulated. The federal No Surprises Act sets a price for out-of-network emergency care. Connecticut has its own surprise billing law. These statutes effectively set in and out-of-network pricing. No insurer is going to pay more for in-network care than for out-of-network care. Prices for most hospital-based care are already fixed by these laws. This fact was not discussed by Commissioners Gifford and Lombardo's testimony or the healthcare advocate for that matter. Hospitals and medical groups calibrate their labor expenses based on revenue. Labor is our biggest cost. NEMS also competes for emergency physicians on a national basis, so that also affects costs. When rates are set by statute, like the NSA and Connecticut Surprise Billing Law, and then the legislature changes the rates, it creates real problems. MTA requires emergency physicians to treat everyone regardless of the patient's ability to pay. 40% of our patients have Medicaid, and we receive very little for their care. About 5% of no insurance have essentially paid nothing. Commercial insurance balances these underpayments. Even with commercial insurance, NEMS only collects a portion of what we bill. 240% of Medicare billed isn't close to 240% of Medicare in the door. The current plan in Congress is to cut Medicaid substantially to fund tax cuts. The federal government pays approximately 70% of the cost of Medicaid. Cutting emergency medicine reimbursement in the face of these federal cuts will render NEMS insolvent. HB 6871 is the wrong solution to address rising healthcare costs. Pharmaceuticals, as we've discussed today, are driving premium increases. In response to Representative Wood's comment earlier, insurance themselves are also driving increases. Anthem and other Blues just settled an antitrust lawsuit by hospitals and providers for $4.8 billion. Some of the physicians I work with are here today to explain how HB 6871 will hurt our patients. HB 6871 will also hurt our communities. The biggest employer in nearly every Connecticut city is a hospital. By lowering payments, this bill will severely damage hospitals and raise unemployment. Finally, at least eight Connecticut hospitals have filed for bankruptcy or on the verge of insolvency. It is hard to square this reality with Commissioner Gifford and Lombardo's testimony, particularly in the face of massive Medicaid cuts. HB 6871 adds tremendous financial and healthcare risk for patients and communities. The healthcare system needs reform. A 240% cap isn't reform, it's a self-inflicted wound. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. Can you tell us what hospitals that you're working in in Connecticut?
Sure. We, we staff seven emergency departments in Connecticut, Midstate Medical Center, H OCC Bradley, Waterbury Hospital, Manchester Memorial Hospital, Rockville General Hospital, and De Kimball Hospital.
And so if a hospital that you're at is in-network and they go to the ER, are they in-network or out-of-network?
Are, are, they would, well, it would depend on the, on the payer, but let's say they're, let's say we're out of network. The patient, patient would be out of network. But this, the, the Surprises Act sets the, the rate as the Connecticut Surprise Billing Law. You have, you have actually legislated what we can charge. And if-
You think that's a federal law, correct?
Well, there's also the Connecticut Surprise Billing Law, the 38A477AA. So you've told us exactly what we can charge and, and insurers are not going to pay us more than what the NSA or the surprise billing law has set. So we are, we are already, you know, our increases are mandated by the legislature and the Congress.
Okay. So you're a separate entity than a hospital system?
We are a democratic, private group of physicians. We're, we're a, we, we have 21 partners that are all emergency medicine physicians.
Okay. And as you said earlier, just to reiterate, anyone that comes in, you're serving, whether they can pay or not?
Yes, because of MTA, we, 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 we treat everyone. And I, I really can't, you know, looking at what's going on in Congress right now, you know, if, if Medicaid is cut dramatically, 70% of, approximately 70% of Connecticut's Medicaid dollars come from the federal government. If you enact this legislation at the same time that's happening, I, I just, I'm not sure that we can continue with business. The, my colleagues, who are all physicians who are sitting over there, are going to explain to you specifically how this will affect our patients. And, and you understand exactly what's going to happen in the emergency department if you pass this law. And so I, I'm concerned. I have a family of, and, and three children, and I rely on this as a consumer. And I'm concerned what will happen if you pass the statute.
Yep, understandable. We are just here to learn. At this point, these are, you know, bills that have come up, you know, often, and we're always here to, you know, hear all different sides and try to make things better or, or, you know, whether or not we move things forward. So we haven't heard your, you know, perspective. That's why I'm trying to ask, like, you know, where it is you work and that thing. So it's really great to hear your perspective, and I look forward to hearing more from our colleagues. Representative Pavlov Tomato.
Can you tell me a little bit more? Isn't Connecticut's, is it Medicaid reimbursement lower than other states?
You know, I, I have to admit this is beyond my purview. I, 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 I don't really know the comparison between Connecticut Medicaid rates. I do know that they represent a tiny fraction of our costs. And so because 40% of our patients have Medicaid, we rely on commercial insurance in order to pay our doctors and, and middle-level providers.
Yeah. I was just speaking with the chair. I, I think I would, as a patient, I'd be a little concerned. I don't know if, if I'm looking for a hospital or, or a doctor and I want the best surgeon, I want the, the, really the best provider, they're going to perform surgery on me, and I don't know if I really want to go to a place, a hospital where every avenue is capped. I just have concerns of the level of care there and are they getting the best and brightest? I, I see, or at least I hear increases in incidents and, or maybe, maybe I hear about the near-close incidents from a different perspective through a friend of mine, and that's always a concern. So I'm just saying from a patient perspective, I don't know if I'd want to go to an institution where there was every avenue was capped. I just don't see doctors going flocking to that, to that hospital to work. Why would they? So that's my perspective. But do you see anything similar?
Yeah, I mean, look, again, I would, my colleagues in the ED are going to give you a lot of detail about exactly the question you're asking, but I think what, what's particularly problematic here is that if Connecticut, as a single state, makes this decision- But I think what's particularly problematic here is that if Connecticut, as a single state makes this decision, doctors will go to Massachusetts, Rhode Island, New York, and the 49 other states where they can earn a more reasonable living. And so, you know, it's one thing if you do this as national legislation, which in fairness, we have the No Surprises Act, the national statute. But, you know, you set a cap only here in Connecticut, right? You create this tremendous incentive for people to leave the state, for physicians to leave the state, and create an inability for us to hire quality doctors. Very few of our doctors come from residencies in Connecticut. You know, there, if you look at Connecticut residencies, only a few people in each of them are from Connecticut, I'm talking again about emergency physicians. So we have doctors who come from around the country. When they get out of residency, they come here, and they can go somewhere else. They can go to the sunny beaches of Florida. They can go to the mountains of Colorado. They can go to New York City and all its, right? And so if you, if we are, if our compensation is dramatically lower than everyone else because of this cap, we will not be able to pay doctors a competitive rate. We won't be able to attract them. There's a whole cascade series of problems that this cap will cause. And I should mention that three of the hospitals we're in are currently in bankruptcy right now. So it is, it is not a system with a tremendous surplus of money.
Yeah, and along that same point, I, doctors can afford to move, right? They can afford to just pick up and leave. And in addition, I guess if in this state we had lower costs than other states, maybe that would be something attractive. But we don't even have lower costs. Never mind just regular costs of everything, but when you add on electricity, which for most people now, my constituents, that cost alone is more than their mortgage. I just saw a $1,600 electricity charge for one month for a constituent in a small, small house. So now you're adding on, again, I feel like a lot of times up here, we look at things in these silos, and that's just not the way life works. So when you look at the totality of the circumstances and here, the costs of living, in addition to regulation and everything else, what's, I don't see what's attractive about living or staying here from certain perspectives. So, and we are, many of us love it, but when you add everything together, it doesn't add up. So that's something to think about.
I completely understand. I'm a transplant and a Connecticut evangelist. I love New Haven. It is, you know, I wouldn't want to live anywhere else. But as you recognize, we, because we are trying to pull people into the state, you know, every recruiting season, to staff our EDs from residencies around the country, we have to be able to make the case. And if we, you know, if we are, if our pay is just dramatically lower than everyone else, we are just not going to be able to do that. And you will have a hospital system that is staffed with APPs and APRNs that will have non-board certified emergency physicians. Again, my colleagues are going to go into more detail about that, our physicians, and I would encourage you to, you know, ask some of these questions. Because they will put granular detail, you know, provide that for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Simon.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Kelly, Kelly Memphis, followed by Amanda Gunthel.
Thank you, Chair. Distinguished members of the committee, my name is Kelly Memphis. I am with, speaking today on behalf of the Healthcare Distribution Alliance, HDA, to share several concerns with HB 6870. Thank you for the chance to speak today virtually. HDA is the National Trade Association representing pharmaceutical wholesale distributors. The vital link between 1,200 manufacturers and over 330,000 sites of care nationwide, including over 3,200 sites of care in Connecticut, such as pharmacies and hospitals. As you may know, wholesale pharmaceutical distributors operate a unique role in the supply chain. They do not set list prices, determine reimbursements, or play a role in determining the amount that patients pay at counters. Rather, wholesale distributors are the logistical experts in the supply chain who ensure around 95% of all pharmaceutical products are physically on shelves when and where patients need them. HDA's first concern with HB 6870 is that the bill does contain two different definitions for wholesalers, and they are conflicting. The first definition found in Section 1 of the bill reflects Connecticut enacted code and reflects the industry. But the second definition found in Section 11 is a different definition. It's very broad, and it captures separate entities in it that serve different functions in the supply chain. Because of this broad definition, wholesale distributors are then inaccurately captured in the subsequent pricing measures, which we can find in Sections 11 through 14 of the bill. For example, in their role as wholesale distributors, as I mentioned earlier, wholesale distributors do not set the list price, also known as the wholesale acquisition cost. They do not change the list price. They also do not bring products to market or withdraw them. So therefore, the inclusion of wholesale distributors in these sections would cause them to be held responsible for decisions that they don't control, and then to be captured in those subsequent penalties in those sections. And this would be very detrimental to the wholesale distribution industry, which does operate at a net profit margin of under 1%. So we are concerned about those sections. Further, we would like to, we are concerned with the overall structure of these pricing measures as well. We are concerned that there could be unintended consequences of limiting patient access to critical medicines. And then finally, we do appreciate that the wholesale importation section of the bill begins with a feasibility study. But we do wish to share our concerns and oppositions to wholesale importation overall. Wholesale importation is just not compatible with the way that the US supply chain operates in today's environment. For example, it specifically conflicts with the Federal Drug Supply Chain Security Act, DSCSA, which is in its final stages of a more than 10-year implementation across the wholesale supply chain up and down, all designed to further secure the nation's drug supply chain. So for these reasons, we do respectfully ask that the committee consider not advancing HB 6870 or just look closer at these concerns, and really appreciate the time today to share them. Thank you much.
Thanks, Kelly. Representative Maskers.
That was overwhelming.
I was trying to stick with the three-minute limit, but I apologize.
I know, I can tell. I'm trying to understand the business model and your concern. So you are in the wholesale business, and your profit margin's 1%. And the cap on the costs are 2%. So you're concerned that you fall within the regulatory framework from wholesale to retail. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the question. Our concern is that that section says that it's manufacturers and wholesale distributors cannot raise the price more than that 2% or withdraw the products to avoid that stipulation. So our concern is just being included in language for actions that are not within our purview, and then being held accountable for those penalties when that's not part of the function of a wholesale distributor acting in that role.
So it would be helpful to get suggested wording that you think would resolve the issue.
That would be great. We would really appreciate that chance to work with you on that.
I see that we're going to include it, but as a legislator, I'm trying to understand your concern, and I think I understand it now. You're a very low-margin business, and so you've got a 1% to 2% margin, which I'm surprised is a distributor. That would seem to be very low versus other industries that I've seen.
It's my understanding we're the lowest in the healthcare supply chain. Yes, sir. Thank you.
So that should be part of that comparison. That should be the commentary. It should be a concern of if we're going to regulate the profit margin, which I'm not sure if that's where we want to go, it would be good to get comparatives on the distributors.
We'd be happy to provide any resources you find helpful. And again, our concern really is focused on the fact that wholesale distributors do not set or change the wholesale acquisition cost, which is, you know, part of that language. So it's also not just an issue of the net profit margin. It's an issue of misrepresenting the role of wholesale distributors, if that's helpful to hear.
I think I understand that. So if you would send your commentary in terms of, or the countervailing, I'll make the request for some suggestions and wording, and ask you to send it to the clerk, and they can circulate it to us. We can take a look at it.
Thank you so much. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for joining us. Next up, we have Amanda Gunthel, or Gunthel, and followed by Stanley Stutz.
Hi, it's Gunthel. I'm sorry that my camera isn't working. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, super. I just lost power at my house, so I am dialed in from my phone. So at any time, if you need me to speak up, please let me know. So good afternoon, members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. My name is Amanda Gunthel. I currently serve as the President of the Connecticut Association of Ambulatory Surgery Centers, representing the state's 61 freestanding ambulatory surgery centers. We oppose the provisions in HB 6871 that would limit out-of-network reimbursement to 240% of Medicare. It is critically important to understand the effect policy decisions like this have on Connecticut's providers and patients. Ambulatory surgery centers are Connecticut's high-quality, lower-cost option for same-day surgical care that is less expensive for patients and insurance carriers, and can reduce long-term healthcare costs as well. We save patients millions of dollars each year through lower copayment and co-insurance responsibilities. According to the American Surgery Center Association, in one year, Connecticut residents saved over $6.4 million just by having colonoscopies performed at an ASC. Probably the most powerful tool a provider has in negotiating a fair commercial insurance contract is the ability to decline participation, requiring insurance providers to then presumably pay a higher out-of-network rate. This legislation, as drafted, allows large insurance companies to set payment rates and eliminates the economic incentive for an insurer to negotiate a contract with a provider. We must not allow insurance companies to unilaterally determine the value of healthcare services, and certainly not those of our lower-cost providers. Medicare, which is often a provider's lowest-paying insurance carrier, was never meant to be a model for reimbursement and does not cover many services that are provided in ASCs. Most commercial contracts are set up as a multiple of Medicare, meaning a percentage of well over 100%. This legislation would essentially eliminate any ability of providers to negotiate with insurers by limiting the insurer's responsibility. What incentive does an insurance commercial carrier have to negotiate with a provider and bring them in their network if an out-of-network rate is limited? The financial impact of this legislation on our ASC community and healthcare in Connecticut would be devastating. Like hospitals and hospital outpatient departments, ASCs are highly regulated via state licensure, federal certification with CMS, and accreditation through third-party national accrediting bodies. We have an unwavering commitment to patient safety and continuous quality improvement. All of our Connecticut ASCs participate in a patient safety organization and in nationally required reporting programs. We represent an important part of our healthcare community in the state. Throughout the pandemic, our ASCs supported the state's COVID-19 response by suspending elective cases, sharing staff, critical PPE with hospitals and nursing homes, and providing much-needed equipment like ventilators while standing ready to assist in providing cares. When Connecticut's patients needed to resume outpatient care, ASCs opened with even more rigorous infection control protocols in place and provided them with safe outpatient care in a non-COVID care facility. I'm just, I don't want to run out of time here. So I want to call out the point that a reduced number of surgery centers, things that affect our finance, our viability as facilities, a reduced number of ASCs or ASCs. Yes, yes. Or ASCs that are not financially stable will also negatively impact Connecticut's ability to recruit and retain top-quality physicians in specialties that are driven by outpatient procedures and surgery. Many of these physicians are looking to establish an ASC relationship early on in their careers and will seek employment in states where ASCs and healthcare providers are better supported and their patients can benefit from their care. This legislation is a short-sighted attempt to benefit insurers in their negotiations with Connecticut's hospitals, and once again penalizes the low-cost, high-quality outpatient provider. If we have learned anything, okay.
Thank you, Amanda.
Does anyone have any questions? Yes.
Amanda, thank you so much for joining us today. Next up, we have Stanley Stutz, followed by Brian Steiner.
Thank you. Senator Cabrera, Representative Wood, Representative Wood, and the distinguished members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. I am a board-certified emergency medicine physician, and I'm also CFO of NEMS that Simon talked about earlier. We are a democratic emergency medicine staffing group, and we are responsible for nearly 17% of the patient visits in Connecticut, patients who come through the ED. I'm writing in staunch opposition to HB 6871 that proposes out-of-network services, both inpatient and outpatient, are paid at 240% of the Medicare rate. This would severely impact the quality of care in Connecticut. This bill threatens the financial stability of emergency departments. Under MTALA, which is an unfunded mandate, emergency care is cost-shifted. 75% of our business is either self-pay Medicaid or Medicare, and we lose money on those patients. This is how Congress structured the healthcare system. If HB 6871 passes, reimbursement for commercial insurance will be insufficient to cover the actual cost of care. Mandating 240% of Medicare rates also ignores commercial insurers' poor behavior, and this is key, and no one's talked about. While the bill mandates 240%, insurers don't often pay that amount. Pay rates are frequently, our pay rates that we see are well below 85% for commercial insurers. Some insurers are at 60%. So even when claims are adjudicated, they are often downcoded or not paid at all. Insurers are not following the law. They're making it difficult for small businesses like ours to thrive. In addition, payers continue to raise deductibles, as we've talked about, which makes the provider the patient's debt collector, putting us at odds with the people that we care for. This bill would degrade emergency care quality, particularly at safety net hospitals, and lead to a provider exodus from the state. It would worsen staffing shortages, increase wait times, and drastically reduce revenue, putting hospitals at risk. Three hospitals are already in bankruptcy proceedings, with more on the verge. Emergency physicians were the front line during COVID-19 pandemic, risking our lives to care for patients in a terrifying, uncertain time. Despite these sacrifices, this bill would further undermine our ability to provide care, but more strain on an already fragile healthcare system. While HB 6871 attempts to address facility costs, it does so at the expense of providers by weakening our negotiating power and forcing us to accept rates that will worsen access to care. Medicare and Medicaid provider fees have been flat or down for 20 years. The bill adds pressure without truly addressing pharmaceutical and facility costs in a meaningful way. It will lead to fewer choices and poorer care. Patients are already protected by both state and federal law, which multiple people have fortunately talked about. In conclusion, HB 6871 would undermine emergency care quality. By directly addressing pharmaceutical costs and ensuring fair facility cost solutions, we could achieve meaningful reform without harming communities or providers. Thank you.
Thank you, Stanley. What kind of meaningful reform would you suggest?
I don't know that if I have all the answers. I'm not, you know, I don't specialize in reform. I specialize in, well, in emergency medicine and do the finances for our group. I don't know that I have all the answers, but I do know mandating something that's attached to a number that is, has not been adjusted for inflation, and has been shown to erode over the last 20 years is going to put a lot of strain on us. And basically, it just destroys a market, and you're going to make access worse, even though the intent of the bill is to do the opposite.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Great. Next up, we have Brian Steiner, followed by Jim Paris.
Good afternoon, Representative Wood and the distinguished members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. My name is Brian Steiner, and I'm a board-certified Connecticut emergency physician. I treat patients in the emergency departments at multiple Connecticut hospitals, including the hospitals staffed by NEMS, which were referred to before. And I'm here to testify in opposition to HB 6871. My emergency departments are challenging. Waterbury Hospital in particular has very high acuity, a poor payer mix, and over 100% emergency department boarding at times. The emergency department is experiencing further cuts in nursing staffing as the hospital progresses through bankruptcy. Absent a substantial investment in the return of high-paying elective surgeries covered by uncapped commercial insurance, Waterbury Hospital may not survive. The people of Waterbury deserve reasonable medical care, but the 240% cap in HB 6871 will further undermine its precarious finances. Most younger emergency physicians have a large amount of student debt to repay and are their family's primary breadwinner. Some of my colleagues graduated from residency with more than $500,000 in educational loans. Many of us are concerned that our compensation will be materially cut if HB sixty-eight seventy-one passes. This may prompt an exodus from Connecticut as emergency physicians look for out-of-state employment. Because emergency physicians are in demand, I can obtain an out-of-state position very quickly. I am committed to my community, but I also need to support my family. I'm also concerned that the cap in HB sixty-eight seventy-one will affect my ability to treat patients. This legislation caps the compensation for the hospital and other service lines. If it takes hours to get a CT scan report because there are fewer radiologists, patients will die. If there are no techs to perform EKGs, heart attacks will be missed and patients will die. If there are fewer nurses to administer lifesaving medications, patients will die. At some Connecticut hospitals, there are times when the system is on the verge of breaking. The cap in sixty-eight seventy-one will rob hospitals of the financial resources they have and dramatically worsen the situation. It is extremely frustrating to go to work and try to do my job only to struggle to get the resources necessary to do it. Treating patients in the waiting room is bad medicine. Waiting hours for a blood test result is bad medicine. If the legislature makes that worse through HB sixty-eight seventy-one's cap and causes a material decline in salaries, physicians will leave the state. The hospitals I work at are under enough strain without the destructive effect of sixty-eight seventy-one's cap. We need more help and not less, and I respectfully urge you to vote against this proposal.
Thank you for being with us, Dr. Steiner, and sharing your boots-on-the-ground perspective. Any questions? Thank you. Next up, we have Jim Paris, followed by Dr. James Carden.
Everyone see me?
Yep, we can see you.
Great. Now for an entirely different subject. Good afternoon, Chairpersons Wood and Cabrera, Ranking Members Pavlov, Tomato, and Senator Wong, and distinguished members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. Again, my name is Jim Paris, and I'm here on behalf of the Home Builders and Remodelers Association of Connecticut. We represent nearly nine-hundred businesses that employ tens of thousands of workers across the state. Connecticut's housing stock is aging. Homeowners and communities rely on registered professional remodelers to maintain and improve their homes. Work that keeps properties safe supports local businesses and ensures long-term value. Unfortunately, House Bill sixty-nine sixty-seven would have unintended consequences that disrupt the remodeling market, making it more difficult for homeowners to secure timely, reliable repairs, especially after a disaster. We oppose Section One of this bill, which limits how contractors can receive direct insurance payments. This restriction would discourage reputable contractors from taking on emergency repairs, leaving homeowners in a crisis situation scrambling for help. Reducing immediate work payments to just three thousand or one percent of a policy's coverage is unrealistic, given the wide variation in property sizes and damage levels. If homeowners must delay repairs while navigating insurance claims, the risk of additional property damage and financial hardship only increases. We strongly oppose Section Six, which bans contractors from assisting homeowners with insurance claims. Insurance company adjusters don't always assess damage at the same level of detail and expertise as contractors who actually perform the repairs. Without contractor input, many homeowners may receive low-ball settlements, only to later discover that their repair costs far exceed their insurance payout. Restricting contractor involvement tips the balance further in favor of insurance companies, leaving homeowners with fewer options and less protection. Similarly, Section Seven would introduce new contract cancellation provisions that could discourage contractors from taking on remodeling projects, particularly small businesses that can't afford last-minute cancellations. Homeowners could see longer wait times and higher costs as contractors adjust their pricing to account for increased financial risk. While this bill's well-intentioned, it will not stop bad actors. It will only make it harder for honest, registered contractors to do business while pushing more homeowners towards the underground cash market, where they'll have little to no consumer protection. Instead of broad, overly restrictive policies, we urge the committee to focus on enforcement of existing contractor regulations and consumer education, proven strategies that target fraudulent actors without punishing reputable remodelers and their customers. In summary, House Bill sixty-nine sixty-seven will slow emergency repairs, discourage home improvement investments, and push more work into the unregulated market, all at a time when Connecticut homeowners desperately need more access to skilled professional remodelers. We urge you to reject House Bill sixty-nine sixty-seven and instead support solutions that improve enforcement and consumer awareness. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions.
Jim, I just wanted to say that we appreciate your perspective on this bill, and clearly, we have a lot more work to do on it. This really was about going after the bad actors and addressing some of the stories that we have been, that really came to us over the summer regarding roofing contractors and other things. So what I can say is I don't have any questions, but I do want to work with you to make sure we get this right if we do move it forward. Any other questions? Great. Thank you for joining us, Jim.
Thank you. Happy to work with you as well. Take care.
Next up, we have Dr. Jim Carden, followed by Christopher Souverns. Dr. Carden, you're on. Should we come back?
You may be muted.
Okay. We can go to Christopher Souverns, and we'll come back to Dr. Carden.
Thank you. I'm disconnected there. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, distinguished members of the committee. I owe my testimony regarding property insurance and House Bill sixty-nine sixty-seven will come as a brief and welcome break regarding the healthcare insurance discussion we've been having today. My name is Christopher Souvers, and I am the founder and president of Rising Star Roofing. For over eighteen years, my company has built our reputation on putting the needs of our customers first. We are a proud master relief roofing company. We offer the longest warranties in the industry, ensuring our clients can trust that their homes are guaranteed to be fixed properly. What sets us apart is not just our expertise in roofing, but also our dedication to helping our clients through a challenging time when their homes are damaged after a storm. We are regularly met with gratitude for the role we play in that process. This is why we do what we do, and we are proud to play the role that we do in restoring Connecticut homeowners. With that in mind, I would like to draw your attention to HB sixty-nine sixty-seven. We appreciate the stated effort behind this bill to regulate insurance claim assignments in order to protect Connecticut consumers. However, after thorough review, the bill in its current form does not achieve its goal of benefiting consumers. We oppose this bill in its current form. This legislation risks undermining consumer choice by creating a long list of regulations behind property claim assignments. This list of regulations is mostly untenable, and so the effect will not be to make assignments transparent, nor will it achieve protecting consumers. Instead, the effect will be that consumers will lose one of their options that they previously had, the option to hire a restoration contractor through assignment. To be clear, Rising Star and other restoration contractors are an extremely important part of the restoration process. We are often at homeowners' first call when damage occurs. They often look to us to help them understand the severity of their loss and what their next step should be. As damaged restoration professionals, we often are met with homeowners, we often meet with homeowners early after a loss when it is not clear how they want to navigate their claim. Many times, we arrive even before an insurance adjuster visits their home. We treat this first visit as an opportunity to educate our potential client in what the process can look like from a contractor's perspective. When a property owner speaks with someone who understands how to properly repair their home and also understands the claim process from start to finish, it can put their minds at ease. Ultimately, some property owners will navigate their claims themselves. Others will hire a public adjuster to navigate it for them, and still others will attempt to walk the claims process through themselves only to end up needing an attorney to help get them back on track. Rising Star is one option for these Connecticut homeowners, and we believe we are a critically important one. So I am writing this to be crystal clear. If this bill is passed as written, it will not allow our business model to work, and we will not be able to do the good work that we do. Assignments are a great tool in the property claim process. They allow a contractor to partially step into the shoes of a property owner after a loss. They allow us to assess damages and present findings to insurance adjusters. They allow us to discuss what the proper scope of repair should be. They allow us to advocate for doing the work the right way, so our client can get quickly and effectively back on their feet. And best of all, we get the repairs done fast because they allow us to build directly for the services that are covered. For Connecticut property owners who just want their homes and businesses restored fast, this is a great option. In conclusion, the core objective of this legislation should be to benefit consumers, ensure transparency, and maintain a system that works in their favor. The bill raised sixty-nine sixty-seven, as currently drafted, does not accomplish this. Instead, it places undue restrictions on the assignment of benefits. It would ultimately leave homeowners with fewer options in handling their claims. And so we urge you to recognize these many issues within the bill as written. We welcome a future version of this bill that successfully allows the assignment of benefits process to function effectively for both the contractor and consumer. Thank you, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Thanks so much, Christopher. As I said in the previous comment, we do have some work to do, it sounds like, on this bill. So we'll be working with your team to make sure that there's not so much that we're leaving out with this and make sure that we cross our Ts and dot our Is. So appreciate your comments. Any questions? Great. We'll go back to Dr. Jim Carden.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Representative Wood and Senator Cabrera and distinguished members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. I'm Dr. James Carden, Senior Advisor, Harvard Healthcare, and are speaking today and welcome the opportunity to testify in opposition to House Bill sixty-eight seventy-one. The proposed cap on out-of-network negotiated rates is a misguided attempt to control healthcare spending. And I want to be thoughtful about our language here. There is a significant difference between when we talk about price and payments. The cost-growth benchmark is predominantly looking at increase year-over-year in payments. Price is just one component of those payments. Both utilization, disease burden, complexity of care, service mix, payer mix, site of service all contribute to the payments that are being measured. This act inserts the state in a good-faith negotiation that are required by insurers and providers and will further impede those critical discussions. Insurers would now have the ability to never pay providers more than what the government sets as the out-of-network rate. There is no meaningful benefit for a provider to be out of network. The disruption of care to patients to providers far outweighs the profound negative impact to those constituencies. I want to call out that healthcare providers in Connecticut have significantly advanced the quality and safety of care. Connecticut now ranks third in the country, and all residents have access to care regardless of their ability to pay. We agree with the governor that we have to make care more accessible, affordable, equitable, and even safer than we're providing today. However, the drivers of medical spending extend well beyond the negotiated commercial rates. As discussed, we talked about the disease burden, rising demand and the need for more complex care, an increasingly complex aging population, site of service, and payer mix, which I just want to spend a moment on, which is really the interdependency of the various payer segments, government, commercial, as well as those who have no payer source or providers. Those are the three components which make up overall payments to hospitals. Medicare and Medicaid, our government payers, do not cover the costs of us to provide that care. And therefore, commercial negotiations, we rely on the rate increases there to cover the government underpayments and allow us a path to financial sustainability. As our expenses on staffing, supplies, pharmacy continue to rise well above inflation rates, there are significant challenges to meet the needs of our community and maintain financially viable. We need to work together to develop and implement mitigating strategies for affordability, and out-of-network cap will not address the significant drivers of healthcare spending or achieve the goals of creating affordability. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Dr. Carden. I wanted to just ask a question that I've asked the three previous hospitals and CHA on the experience HHC has with the cost-growth benchmark. We're really, you know, that's kind of guiding where a lot of this legislation is coming from, is looking at the increase in overall healthcare spend. So can you tell us how your interaction with the cost-growth benchmark has been positive or negative or areas for improvement?
Sure. So the aspirations is admirable, and I think we agree with it. We need to continue to work on how do we reduce the overall expenditures that are happening in healthcare. My biggest struggle with the data is that it is not getting us to the drivers of healthcare spend. It is merely giving us the buckets of where spend is occurring. In other words, we get reports about the spend at hospitals, always going to be the largest proponent of spend because it's the most expensive place to give care or hospital outpatient or providers or pharmacy. And it's all well and good to know where that spend is occurring, but it's not saying why. And what we're struggling with is we don't get the detail or what are those drivers? Because unless you know what's actually causing people to go to a hospital and get admitted and get care, it's very hard to come up with mitigating strategies because not all things are avoidable. So the level of detail and the level of analysis is not leading us to any insights in terms of what is driving the overall increase in payments. You know, we recognize that it's more complicated, people are sicker, and there are mitigating strategies to be able to figure out how best to shift things around. But it has, it requires additional relationship to really bring those things to bear and actually make it work. So that's my biggest challenge with most of the cost-growth benchmarks. It's held very much in isolation from what's actually happening in terms of within the provider and the way we're trying to manage both quality and cost.
I'm not sure if you get down to this level of detail, but Commissioner Gifford was here earlier saying that the carriers submit kind of a rolled-up data based on, I think it was six different buckets. How could we, how could we improve the benchmark from your perspective?
Sure. So there's a couple of things that could happen with the data they have, and then there's other things that probably are going to require more data. You know, one of the things that we've not done is risk-adjust the payments that are going on. So by that, I mean, the cost-growth benchmark looks at it on an age and sex distribution in terms of trying to normalize data between populations. But the reality of it is, as I've used example, a sixty-two-year-old with hypertension, diabetes, heart failure, previous coronary disease, and dialysis is going to cost very different than an individual sixty-two years old who's healthy. And there's no analysis of the disease burden of the populations that we're looking at the spend for. So if you happen to be a provider who is caring for very expensive, highly-complex patients, your spend is going to look very, very different than if you have a healthy group of patients. Simply putting in, which they have the ability to do, to do traditional disease burden risk adjustment would help normalize some of the noise we see. Ms. Williams earlier suggested in the first year, the look at when, and I was a co-presenter at that committee meeting, when they looked at the hospital as being a significant contributor, when you normalized it for the disease burden adjusted, we both fell below the benchmark. And yet, there was no acknowledging to that. So there's really two components, better data, more transparency around it, and doing some pretty straightforward typical healthcare analytics to help normalize the data across what are very different populations when you're looking to care for them. Does that help?
Yeah, it helps a lot. I mean, we've obviously all talked about this in other settings, but these caps are being put into place because of the benchmark data. And the scenario that you just gave, when adjusted and when the full picture is given to those two different sixty-two-year-olds, you know, we're able to understand that. But the benchmark data is still giving us a distorted view, which is then causing us to look at out-of-network caps and look at prescription drug cost caps and importation from Canada and capping insurance, blah, blah, blah. So I just want to say- So I, I just want to say we, we need to work on the benchmark data.
And, and I think it really isn't.
Let us know.
I think it's also really important to factor in that you can't look at commercial, as been stated multiple times. You can't look commercial and isolated from Medicare and Medicaid. Uh, there, there is no, there's no way to understand what, uh, uh, a, a provider needs in terms of the commercial rate without understanding how much of the work they're doing is Medicare and Medicaid, which is underfunding them. If I have a large share of Medicare and Medicaid, I need more on the commercial side than if I have very little Medicare and Medicaid. That also isn't taken into account at all. So that there's just some level setting that we need to do to understand from a payer, I mean, a provider's perspective. We have to look at all payer sources, not just the commercial segment, so to speak. Thank you.
Really appreciate your insight. Any questions? Great. Thank you, Dr. Carden. Uh, sorry, we have Senator Anwar.
Thank you so much. Sometimes, uh, so, uh, thank you, uh, uh, Dr. Carden for your testimony. I, I, help me clarify a few things and, and demystify some issues that I, I feel it's worthy to talk about. Can you help me understand that two years ago, three years ago, the healthcare systems were healthcare heroes? And now if you look at the bills, if you look at the conversations and, and this, it's like you are the source of all healthcare problems, according to some people, if you listen to some conversations. What happened?
Uh, if I had that answer, I'd, I'd be a lot smarter than, than I am, Senator Anwar. I think that a couple of things. Um, uh, there is no, uh, denying the fact that, uh, healthcare spending is a burden. Uh, and, and we have to continue to challenge ourselves to how to make it more affordable. Uh, and, and those steps are just not straightforward, though. It's not so simply limit the price increases that, or negotiated price increases that we need to see. Uh, it is a much more complicated, uh, work to, uh, look at where care is, is, is occurring and why. And how do we move care that we can out of the expensive places to less expensive places? How do we care for people better? Uh, and, and enable providers to be more successful in trying to control the risk factors that lead to end-stage disease that lead to complicated care? All those things we need to partner together. The social determinants of health that drive overall spending needs to be addressed. And, and we as providers can't fix all that stuff by ourselves, but we certainly can help as we move forward. So I think it's a general frustration and is since healthcare, we deliver it. You kind of look past everybody in the, in the, in the, in the chain of command until you hit the providers yourself. And we are no question struggling with access, making, pushing very hard to continue to push our quality of care and, and, and that means hiring the staffs and the physicians and the resources we need to kind of deliver the, uh, you know, the kind of cardiac care Connecticut is now getting known for.
And, um, thank you for that. Uh, the other part, if you can help me also demystify, there's this mindset that the smaller hospitals are less expensive, the larger hospitals and the big groups are far more expensive. And there's a difference. It's, it's, uh, uh, help me understand because I, I think the payer mix may be the same for a hospital where its location is, and it may not necessarily change that. Uh, but, but can we, help me understand why is the cost different in a larger institution versus a smaller one?
And, and it's not always, you know, the, the, the challenge that we have is twofold. Uh, Dr. Senator Anwar, one, this isn't a line-by-line-by-service thing. Not every, everything we do has a profit marked into it. Uh, it, 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 it is cross-subsidy. We have complex hospitals like our tertiary care hospital, Hartford Hospital, which we extend about every care you would need in, to you can imagine, is delivered at Hartford Hospital. Uh, everything from trauma, transplant, complex cancer care, um, all of that needs to be paid for. And not all of it is adequately compensated by the payers that we have. A smaller community hospital may not have to have all those resources, uh, because, uh, they're not delivering that level of care. So when you look at all these different pieces, it's very hard to just sort of say there's an average cost that a hospital gets here or there. Um, and, and so that it, it is complicated. Um, we often, um, at times, uh, you know, as we've moved into some of our community hospitals, for example, uh, that were not thriving, ha- have you, you've seen payments to those hospitals go up, but that's not necessarily a price. It's also, we brought specialty care and resources and other things to allow the patients to get more complicated care in the expensive community hospital than they could before because we could bring those resources. Therefore, patients don't have to travel all the way into downtown Hartford. All of that needs to be factored in for you to really understand what's going on with the finances of any of these places and whether, what things actually cost and what they cost us to deliver that care. All has to factor into the math.
Thank you so much. Madam Chair, just one more question, if you would allow me. Um, uh, Dr. Carden, uh, there is a mindset at times that all healthcare systems are monolithic. Healthcare is monolithic. It, it's, it's the same care everywhere. And, and I, I think you, you've spoken about in one of the cost growth benchmark meeting about, uh, going for shopping at a grocery store and, and, and first, this is not a manufacturing plant. Healthcare is not a manufacturing that you have to have an assembly line and everybody does the same thing and then same outcomes in every single case. Help clarify for the people who are listening, myself included.
Sure. I, I, I think this got back to a little bit of the payments thing, Dr. Anwar. And, and what I, what I, uh, tried to call out is, is that, uh, uh, there was a desire to look at the increase in payments over, uh, seven, you know, two years. And they noticed there was a, I'll make it up, a ten percent increase. Uh, and, and the idea was that was an average cost per patient who was in the hospital that had increased ten percent. But I said, if you don't understand what comprised that services mix, you won't know. So the analogy was, I go to get, buy ten things at the grocery store in twenty twenty-three, uh, and I spent a hundred, a hundred dollars on it. Uh, the next year I go back and I buy ten things and I spent two hundred dollars on it. So that was ten dollars per thing and now twenty dollars per thing. But the first thing you say is, well, that went up, that went up a hundred percent. I said, well, no, what's in the bag? Did I buy, you know, some mix of fruit and vegetables and a little meat and a gla- you know, a gallon of milk?
I think it's the eggs.
The first year. But in this year, I just bought meat because I'm buying my vegetables someplace else. I didn't charge it. It wasn't a penny more. It was just the stuff that was received. So when we do complicated cardiac care, if we see much more increase in the amount of coronary bypass surgeries, valve surgeries, and other things we're doing, as opposed to less and less appendectomies and lower-cost things, that payment is going to look very different, but it's not going to necessarily reflect any price changes.
Thank you so much. This is very helpful. Thank you. I think it's the eggs and the grocery that's.
Yeah, exactly. Somebody used before. I like that, I know.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you, Doc.
Senator Anwar, you won't, uh, debate the price of eggs in this committee. So, um, next up, unless there's any questions? No? Run good? Okay. Next up is Olivia Rinkus, remotely. Olivia, you there? Gotcha. Olivia is not here, so. We have, uh, Mitchell Campbell, Campbell Mitchell, sorry. Now?
Hi, Campbell Mitchell.
Hi, how are you?
I'm, I'm all right. Glad to be here. So, uh, good afternoon, uh, honorable co-chairs and members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. My name is Campbell Mitchell and I'm from Mitchell, Connecticut. I'm a graduate researcher at Yale School of Public Health. I serve with the Urban Affordability and Accessibility Subcommittee of Controller's Council's Healthcare Cabinet. Uh, the Patient Protection, Rare Diseases, and Innovation and Importation, Shorges, and Pharmacy Subcommittee of the prescription drug task force here at Shell Assembly. And as policy lead for the Connecticut Chapter of Insulin Control, through its last capacity, I am testifying today in favor of House Bill six eight seven zero with some recommended improvements. Our organization represents people in Connecticut who use insulin, their caregivers, families, neighbors, and communities. We hear from and work with people from all over the state, from all backgrounds, all political parties. And the thing we hear most consistently is how insulin and other drug prices are leading people dry and drawing families' opportunities to invest in our communities and our future. So we support any good faith effort to bring down prices for Canadian families, including this bill. Now, in the interest of constructive feedback, it bears highlighting that this bill does lean to address insulin directly. Insulin as an injected biologic would be excluded from consideration for importation as described. Pertaining to reference pricing, all of the current generation synthetic analog insulins, which are considered by the American Diabetes Association to be the most safe and effective at keeping patients alive and preventing costly long-term complications remain under patents, even though some have been on the market for close to thirty years. And so will not fall under reference pricing under this scheme. While there are reasons for discretion when regulating true breakthrough drugs, as I outline greater detail in our written testimony, we believe that the blanket exceptions for patents of drugs and drugs under shortage from any kind of reference pricing or accountability is time to hand of the government to help those who need it most. We would advocate instead for reference pricing to apply to all drugs and biologics by default, with an exception process informed by evidence on a case-by-case basis. I wonder for briefly to earlier comments made about the importance of supporting research for biosciences. As a researcher myself, I feel very strongly about keeping these pipelines innovation open. I think it's important that we remember during these conversations that most of the development cost is already borne by the taxpayer through research and education funding. And I agree strongly with Senator Huang that we should not be subsidizing corporate profits on both ends. With smart regulations that provide a level playing field, we can reduce prices pharmacy counter while still supporting innovation and healthcare excellence in our state. So we look forward to continuing to work together on this important issue and urge the advancement of House Bill six eight seven zero with the strongest possible protections for Canadian families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the committee? No? Thank you so much for coming today. Appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Iva Lee Scors Brown. You're good. How are you?
That's how you do it.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me. All right. Okay. Um, thank you to the committee for allowing me to speak today. My name is Iva Lee Scoria, and I'll be very short. Um, SB twelve fifty-three and the Act Reducing Rate, Insurance Rate Requests. I support this bill but feel it does not go far enough. We should also be addressing stock buybacks and CEO bonuses. The recent rate insurance requests were outrageous and tone deaf. My testimony against their increases included those numbers, but just like ever source, they did get a rubber stamp of approval for rate hikes. As for HB six eight seven zero, while I applaud the legislation importing Canadian drugs, can we remind everyone that their healthcare system allows for that import at a lower cost? Can we please address the cost of pre-authorizations and pharmacy benefit managers on the price of prescription drugs? We must also be sensitive to the current federal administration and the repeal of certain price reforms. So I do believe that this is a step in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the committee? Seeing none. Thank you very much for coming today to testify.
Right, thank you.
Have a good day. Up next, we have, uh, Daniel Fries. I think I'm saying that last name right? Is he not here?
Hello.
Hi, Daniel, how are you?
Good, how are you? Um, I'm Daniel Fries. I am an emergency physician in Hartford and the past president and current legislative chair of the Connecticut College of Emergency Physicians. Um, you have been honored to hear from a couple of, uh, our members earlier. I know Dr. Steiner and Dr. Stutz, uh, both spoke to you. Uh, and I definitely stand by all of their testimony, uh, which was very informative, uh, and reflects a lot of what I was going to say. Um, I will try not to repeat too much, but I did want to highlight a couple of concepts in opposition to, uh, HB sixty-eight seventy-one. Um, I think we've sort of lost a little perspective on sort of in-network versus out-of-network. This is not a decision. It's a negotiation. And a very tough decision when that is made. As Dr. Carden had said, no, no physician desires to be out of network. That's not like a strategic plan. Um, the better terminology is not a physician lea- going out of network, but rather a physician being forced out of network by an insurance company, uh, not willing to pay a reasonable rate. Um, it's almost always better a physician to be in-network in terms of a slightly more guaranteed payment, though I'll get to that in a second. Um, and it's just an easier system that people prefer to be in-network. No one's going out of the network for financial profit, uh, only when forced. Um, again, you can't take this out of the context of Medicare, Medicaid, and private insurers. I know some of the earlier, uh, insurance commissioners mentioned that like they can't really comment on Medicare and Medicaid. They can only comment on this, but it can't be taken out of context. Medicaid rates in Connecticut haven't increased in seventeen years. I mean, think of that, about that for a moment. Like, imagine running a restaurant and not being able to increase your menu costs for fif- seventeen years. Or running a grocery store and saying, well, we haven't been able to increase produce costs in seventeen years. Like, that's almost unmanageable. Medicaid, Medicare similarly doesn't cover costs in most cases. When we say two hundred and forty percent of Medicare, that may sound great. Uh, but I would like to completely end the delusion that two hundred and forty percent of Medicare rates means that that's what physicians in hospitals are receiving. Um, insurance companies consistently downcode, um, a practice that has been found illegal in many way, in many lawsuits, though often it takes a lawsuit to expose. And more importantly, with high deductible health plans, physicians in hospitals are only seeing about sixty percent of negotiated rates when it comes to physician contribution. So two hundred and forty percent is not two hundred and forty percent. It's maybe a hundred and eighty percent. Uh, and when you're talking about, as someone mentioned, twenty-five percent of your patients covering the losses of seventy-five percent, that just doesn't work financially. Um, this bill would basically just be a gift to insurance. Um, that's really all it is, and it would hurt patient care. Uh, if anyone's been to an emergency department recently, you'll notice it's kind of busy. We might be boarding, say, a hundred and fifty patients in an a hundred-person department. That's a lot of it due to staff, a lot of it due to hospital resources. The hospitals can't build a new tower to house the extra patients we have because hospitals are running at such a tight margin. Uh, this will definitely hurt healthcare and definitely hurt patients in our state. Uh, finally, I just wanted to conclude. Um, I don't know that Dr. Carden actually answered the question, so I'd like to answer it. Uh, and that's Dr. Um, Anwar's question of why we were healthcare heroes to what I call societal zeros over three years. Uh, and I think it's because we've been, hospitals and physicians, while taking care of patients, have been scapegoated by the government and insurance companies uh, as the enemy to cover their malfeasance and lack of a, so holes in our American healthcare system. Uh, we're sort of easy targets because we're just taking care of the patients. Uh, and we are, I mean, medicine is a high-cost thing. Um, but we definitely see it as physicians. Physicians are burned out, uh, just cutting costs and kind of tying our hands in terms of negotiations with insurance, uh, companies. It's not good for hospitals. It's not good for physicians. It's not good for patients. It's not good for the state. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I thank you for hearing my testimony.
Thank you for testifying today. Any questions? Nope, seeing none. Thank you very. Oh, Senator Anwar, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Dr. Fries, for your testimony. Um, I wanted to help, uh, clarify. You spoke about the emergency room. We are trying to have a better understanding, and I think there's a throughput issue. But, um, part of the challenge is that the emergency room are providing care to everybody. You do not say no to anyone. Uh, and, uh, could you help elaborate on, on that a little bit? And then could you, do you have any insight how many of the patients are non-paying? Um, and, and how many are Medicaid in a, in an average emergency room or at least yours, if you, if you have the information?
I, I, I don't actually. I think there's a couple of physicians from, uh, NEMs, which has already spoken, um, that sort of, I'd say, are a little more familiar with their billing than I am working. I, I work at a, a hospital system that does our billing. So, uh, I don't know those exact numbers, but if I had to ballpark, uh, from what I've heard and learned, uh, you're probably looking at about five percent self-pay, uh, probably about twenty-five. It depends on where you are. I mean, inner-city is very different than community in terms of insurance status. But you're probably looking, say, in a big city hospital of five percent self-pay, maybe about twenty-five percent Medicaid, uh, twenty-five to thirty percent Medicare, maybe you'd switch those a little bit. But really, you're looking about probably sixty to seventy-five percent falling into self-pay Medicare and Medicaid. And then you're looking at anywhere from twenty-five to forty percent private insurance, depending on the hospital.
And, and, um, another issue that comes up is for, for cold days and nights like we are experiencing right now, um, we see a P, a lot of people who are home insecure or with. we see a P, a lot of people who are home insecure or without shelter. They would actually be in a situation that they would go to the emergency room or go to prison because there's no place for them to stay. They'll come in and say they are having chest pain. Could you explain that phenomena a little bit to us as well?
Yeah, I don't want to exaggerate that as that's a minor minority of patients and fits into a lot of other social issues that hopefully the government will face, and I think all, all citizens need to be aware of, but that does happen. We have warming shelters. We certainly have underfunded resources for the homeless and for the indigent across the country and in our state, unfortunately. But there are a certain amount, some sometimes come with alternative complaints, but most of the time are honest and just saying, hey, I, I, I'm outside. I, I, I need help. I can't be outside. I went to the warming shelter. It was full. But those are certainly a small percentage of patients that do show up during the winter to emergency departments, and we do our best to accommodate them. But again, that just adds to boarding and, and more patients. And admittedly, we often don't have amazing resources for them. Sometimes we're able to stay overnight. Sometimes they're not, but we don't always have a perfect answer for them.
Thank you for that. And I, what I was trying to get to is basically that, that the hospitals, unfortunately, are at times are the safety net for individuals who are being affected for everything that is not working out in our society. And, and that's unfortunate reality, and to try and take some of the resources away from that safety net is going to cause such a huge damage to the existing system that's not working. So I appreciate your testimony on, on this aspect as well. So, thank you.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, you can look at that indirectly and say, hey, if, if emergency medicine and hospitals are underfunded, I mean, yes, the ideal is for us to take those patients that don't have anywhere else to go and hold on to them a bit and get them back on their feet or get something organized for them. But if things are under-resourced and there's too much boarding and there isn't enough staff and aren't enough resources, then then that option's off the table. We, we often can't help those people as much as we would otherwise.
And I'll just add one more thing. Sorry, Mr. Chair. I, I think the, the hospitals do not say no to anybody in the emergency room, but the insurance industry, if you don't pay a premiums, they are, you're gone. So, and then there, there's a uneven component, and then we're trying to compare the two and, and with at least the bill that you're talking about, we are, we're shifting the power dynamics in the hands of the insurance industry at the cost of everybody who's providing healthcare. So thank you for your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Anwar. Are there any other questions from the committee? Yep, seeing none. Thank you very much for coming today. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Up next is Rachel Khan.
Good afternoon, Senator Cabrera, Representative Wood, Senator Anwar, Representative Berry, Senator Huang, and Representative Pablo D'Amato, and esteemed members of the Insurance Committee. My name is Rachel Khan, and I had the honor of serving as the State Representative for the one hundred and forty-ninth District. It's a pleasure to see you all today. I'm here today to urge you to support House Bill sixty-eight seventy, an act addressing patients' prescription drug costs. According to the U.S. Department of Health, from January twenty-two to January twenty-three, more than four thousand two hundred drug products had price increases, and the average drug price increase was fifteen point two percent, which, as you know, is significantly greater than the rate of inflation. Here in Connecticut, the number one driver of healthcare spending is retail pharmacy costs, which forces people to make impossible choices by either not filling a prescription, cutting pills in half, or even skipping doses altogether. We've made great progress with the introduction of the ArrayRx Prescription Drug Card, but it's really not enough. The governor's recommendations to allow patients to count low-cost drug purchases toward deductibles or peg annual generic drug pricing increases to inflation and study a pathway to import safe, lower-cost Canadian prescription drugs are all measures that will go a long way to helping families in Connecticut afford healthcare. People shouldn't have to choose between their healthcare and their ability to pay for it. Thank you all for your time and consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Representative. I apologize I misspoke, but thank you so much for taking the time to be here.
Thank you.
Senator Huang.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Khan, or should I say Representative Khan. Thank you for raising the issue. Can, can you articulate a little bit more of any other additional suggestions that you might have?
No, I think the bill covers all the recommendations that I think are important. And, you know, when, when I served as representative, this, this is an issue that came up very frequently in my conversations with constituents. And like I said, I think the recommendations are very comprehensive and are going to go a long way to helping families and residents in Connecticut.
Thank you. I just want to also take a moment. Thank you for your service. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chair.
Senator. Representative Messers.
And I'm sorry, I stepped out when you started your testimony, but again, I think your advocacy and your willingness to come, just to stand by for the whole day and testify is testimony to your service. So thank you again.
Thank you, Representative Messers.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Representative, for coming today.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Arden Parrish.
Good afternoon, honorable co-chairs and distinguished members of the committee. My name is Arden Parrish, and I live in New Haven. I'm grateful for the opportunity to testify remotely today as I'm spending my day in my lab at the Yale School of Medicine. When I am at the Capitol, I serve on the Children's Committee of the Comptroller's Healthcare Cabinet, as well as the PBM Oversight and Pricing and Three Forty B Subcommittee of the Prescription Drug Task Force. I'm also the leader of the Connecticut Chapter of Insulin For All, representing the tens of thousands of Connecticut residents who depend on insulin to survive. Since being diagnosed with type one diabetes at age seven, I've seen the issue of prescription drug access up close and personal. As a teenager, I learned not only to calculate the correct dosage of insulin for every meal, but also how much money that dose costs. I began skipping my high school lunches when I realized I could save five dollars worth of insulin per day by going hungry. Before I'd ever gotten my driver's license or applied to college, I'd already experienced the terror of leaving my pharmacy empty-handed and the painful consequences of insulin rationing. As chapter lead of Connecticut Insulin For All, I've learned that my experiences are all too common. I've heard from patients who have had to ration their insulin after unexpectedly losing their private insurance, parents who have sacrificed dreams of starting a business or buying a home because they couldn't take the risk of being unable to afford their child's insulin. Just in the past year, many patients, including myself, had to make life-or-death choices as the result of a nationwide shortage of fast-acting insulin. I was fortunate to survive. Next time, I might not be so lucky. We are so grateful that many of the members of this very committee have been champions in insulin access in our state. We're thrilled to have seen the passage of bills that have expanded protections for insulin and other life-saving drugs, and equally happy that this committee recognizes the importance of continuing to push for further progress. Even in Connecticut, where we've made huge strides in prescription drug access and affordability, patients are still at the mercy of corporations that prioritize their own bottom line over our survival and our most vulnerable populations, especially those who are uninsured, continue to be left behind. HB sixty-eight seventy is a crucial step in the right direction. The implementation of reference pricing will improve the lives of countless Connecticut residents, and penalties for evading regulations will ensure that manufacturers cannot continue to abuse the system and take advantage of patients as we've seen them do for so long. We're eager to see these measures passed. However, we want to emphasize that this bill represents a step rather than a solution. My policy lead's written testimony outlines some specific proposals that we believe would substantially strengthen the efforts of the governor's bill to protect patients' access to the medications they need. Our chapter stands firm in our belief that this is the time for bold and urgent action. As the federal government continues to broadcast its disregard for vulnerable and marginalized patients, we look to our state leaders to redouble your efforts to keep us safe. I and my chapter urge the passage of HB sixty-eight seventy and look forward to continuing our collaboration with you in the fight to protect patients. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming today. Any questions? Representative Donicki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Arden, for coming forward here today. You made mention of a couple of proposals that you had in your written testimony. Could you just take a moment and just recap a couple of them?
Absolutely, yes. I, I will try to, off the top of my head, without taking too much of your time, I would encourage you to look at the written testimony that my policy lead Campbell submitted because it has references to the specific sections. We have some concerns with sections of the governor's bill that we feel don't go far enough specifically for things like insulin. So just as an example, with the topic of reference pricing, we're concerned because the reference pricing would only apply to drugs that are not currently in patent. And every, as, as Campbell mentioned during his testimony, every type of insulin that is currently approved by the American Diabetes Association as being the most safe and effective for patients like myself is under patent and has been in, in many cases for the last few decades, but because of things like evergreening and other strategies that insulin manufacturers use to keep their drugs under patents, something like the, the reference pricing provision in the current bill would not apply. And so we would encourage that, that that provision be expanded to apply more universally. Another example is that there's a mention in the bill of this provision not applying to drugs that are in shortage. And we are concerned that removing that provision for drugs that are in shortage would, would allow companies to implement the sort of price gouging that we saw with insulin when there was a shortage last year, where companies are able to charge more with no penalty and make it even harder for patients to access those medications. So we would encourage a case-by-case review system rather than those blanket exceptions.
Do you see the spread of some of these, like Ozempic and Govee, et cetera, as actually being dilatorious to the production of insulin?
So I, I have chapter members that use GLP-ones and SGLT-twos and, and kind of some of these drugs that you mentioned, either in addition to insulin or instead of it, and, and we certainly don't want access to one drug to come at the expense of another. There, there is no reason why patients shouldn't be able to have affordable and easy access to all of these medications. I think what we are seeing is these companies, and particularly for something like insulin, we have the big three manufacturers. So it's Eli Lilly, Novo Nordisk, and Sanofi. And they have a, a virtual monopoly on the insulin market. And what we are seeing is as they are getting a lot of profit from Ozempic and similar drugs, they are following the money where it goes and are abandoning their patients who are insulin-dependent as a result of that. So the, the emergence of weight loss drugs is not in and of itself a problem. The problem is that these companies are allowed to run unchecked in their greed and in their pursuit of profit, and patients are hurt at the end of the day.
Well, I thank you for coming forward. I thank you for your testimony, and I, I give your organization high marks for being advocates to try to ensure that people that just plain need insulin have an opportunity to buy it and to use it at a reasonable cost. So keep up the good work and thank you for your testimony, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Senator Huang.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Arden, thank you for your testimony, and even more importantly, thank you for your leadership on the, the type one and, and diabetes and, and the insulin impact. I, I was reading through a little bit and, and talk to and educate me on, on the challenges of diabetes care in, in college campuses. I know you've been a leader in that arena. It's, it's not an issue that we hear a lot about. And with the indulgence of the chair, I know bypasses a little bit of the bill issues, but, but I, I would love to hear some of the challenges you've experienced and, and, and your end result after coming into Yale with, with type one diabetes and how that's been managed, because it's got to be difficult.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on that. So I have had type one since I was seven, and for, for folks who are, you know, less familiar with the condition, in a nutshell, it is a twenty-four-seven job and we get no break. So my, my pancreas does not produce any insulin as a result of this autoimmune condition, and that will be the case as far as I know for the rest of my life. So starting college definitely presented, as any life change does, a lot of its own challenges. So I, I'm fortunate I wear an insulin pump and a continuous glucose monitor that gives me updates every five minutes on what my blood sugar is, and if it goes either high or low, I have to treat it. I'm fortunate to have accommodations through my school that allow me things like flexibility in taking exams. If my blood sugar goes out of range, obviously I can't focus on an exam, so that sort of thing. The biggest benefit, I think, of, of being diabetic in college has been finding a community on my campus of people who share that common struggle because a lot of folks, especially with type one, since only five percent of diabetes cases in the United States are type one, a lot of us end up feeling very isolated in sort of dealing with the, the mental burden of constantly being responsible for our own survival. And particularly as we're coming to the point of aging out of our parents' insurance, so like, I'm fortunate I'm still on my parents' health insurance, but when I turn twenty-six, obviously that won't be the case. And so there are a lot of challenges with, you know, am I going to get on my school's plan? Am I going to get on a state plan? What, what do those different possibilities look like? And there's not always a lot of guidance for people like myself who have, you know, an urgent and pressing and continuous need for something like insulin. I can't go twenty-four hours without insulin. I will end up in the hospital and I very well may die. So how do we fill in those gaps and, and, you know, ensure that everyone kind of in my network who is approaching that, that age where they have to make that decision has the resources and the confidence that they will be able to focus on their schoolwork, focus on what they need to do, and not have to worry about staying alive day to day. So, so that's been a really big thing, and I'm, I'm fortunate that, you know, this is my last semester at Yale. I recently was accepted to a few medical schools, so I will be starting that in the fall and inevitably encounter some new challenges as a result of that, as with any new chapter, but I'm, I'm hopeful that that with the, the emergence of technologies like, like my closed-loop insulin pump system, that, that I will be able to focus on my career and my future and not have to spend so much of my time just trying to keep myself alive.
Well, you deserve tremendous credit and congratulations on medical school. I think your personal experience is, is kind of fortified your commitment to that mission, and when we talk about the, the, the low number of type one, but also in regards to juvenile diabetes, it, it's such an unusual case, and you don't see a lot of that, as you mentioned, trying to find a peer network on the college campus. But we do have a national epidemic of, of diabetes and, and type two in, in our, in our society. The work that you're doing, Insulin For All, i- is also beyond education, right? It's not just insulin dependency, but, but also the, the perils and the danger and, and the care and hopefully prevention of, of diabetes, type one and two. Would that be correct?
That would be, yeah. So there, there is certainly in terms of type one, not a way that we know of to prevent it. We, we have seen actually just in the past couple of years, the emergence of drugs like Diplyzumab, which was, was created by some folks at Yale who I had the pleasure of working with that can delay the onset of type one. But the, the bigger thing certainly for type one is just awareness of it, of what the symptoms are, particularly when it's diagnosed in childhood, you know? When I was diagnosed at age seven, with no one in my family having had it before, my parents didn't know what was wrong with me. And so a, a lot of these awareness campaigns and, and just making sure that people are informed about both what the condition is when, when they spot it and also what their options are, even for things like access to insulin, access to prescription drugs. We've seen through some of the measures that Connecticut has been able to implement, some of the gaps are just a lack of knowledge where patients who are dependent on insulin don't know the resources that are available to them, and just continuing to bring these conversations into the mainstream and emphasizing like, you know, the, the insulin crisis certainly has not been solved, and you know, you, you, you hear it certainly as like a, a political punchline at this point where insulin is the poster child of overpriced prescription drugs, and you have folks from both parties saying we've solved it or talking about the progress that's been made and emphasizing the work that we still have to do in bringing the public's awareness to it and recognizing that it, it is hard enough for someone like me to survive a day when my blood sugar is going high and low and I'm having to fight against my own body to stay alive, but when I also have to fight against insurance companies and manufacturers on top of that, it's a burden that, that I and people like me should not have to carry.
Well, again, compliments to you and, and tremendous luck to you and your future endeavors. It's, it, it, you deserve tremendous credit. But I think it's also another example, what we're looking to address is, is prescription drug cost, and if we can, as we've done with insulin costs, be able to have a unified front to address that cost concern, because the bottom line is being able to get the necessary drugs and, and needed medication to the people to maintain their health and save lives. So I think it's a noble goal for us to try to aspire to do that, and, and it can be done. We point to the insulin price management that occurred, but it's also because of people like you that raise it from the standpoint of life preservation type of medicine. It's critical. So again, thank you for your input. You're a tremendous inspiration. Bless you. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for the indulgence of Bless you, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for the indulgence of trying to recognize tremendous people that that we have in our in our state and in our communities.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the committee? Arden, thank you for joining us today and echo Senator Juan's sentiments. Congratulations on getting sent to medical school, and thank you so much for being a great advocate. Have a great day. Up next, we have Mr. Kurt Barwess.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we got you. There you go.
Very good. And a special thank you to the the co-chairs of this committee, Representative Wood and Senator Shapiro. And also a special shout out to Senator Anwar for shining a bright light on the conflict that the real conflict that Nashbe has with their funding by Arnold Ventures. Senator Anwar, thank you. That was that was very enlightening for everyone, I think. I'm here to testify in opposition to House Bill 6871, an act limiting out of network costs in healthcare. As you're probably well aware, Bristol Health has been struggling. Bristol Hospital has been struggling for for many years. Coming out of the pandemic was particularly difficult for us. And as a small system, you know, one of seven independent or small systems in the state of Connecticut, it's a really difficult environment to be in, especially when you have bills like this that would, in a sense, just push the leverage in contract negotiations to the to the commercial insurers. As I've said in the past many, many times, the the insurance abuse on the Medicare Advantage side is just horrific. You know, it's it's just actually one of the most difficult things to overcome. This hospital has a 73% commercial, I'm sorry, governmental payer mix, and almost 60% of our Medicare book of business is Medicare Advantage. So we suffer the consequence of that, the the significant underpayment. We struggle every day. And so I wrote, I did my written testimony. I think Mark Schaper from the hospital says she did a great job. So I'm just going to highlight some things that I think are are very, very important to understand. I serve on the Board of the American Hospital Association. I'm actually the chair for all of New England, so I get exposure to states that have critical access hospitals that are suffering incredibly. And there's many critical access hospitals that are closing due to poor reimbursement rates across this country, hundreds of them. And once they close, there you can't unring that bell and recreate them. So so specifically, I think for us as a state, the underfunding of state Medicaid is an absolute critical problem that needs to be addressed. And I and I want to just again reiterate that passing a bill like this would make my situation a situation worse for so many others across the state. The 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 problem, and it's about $1.4 million, I guess, in the last reported on fiscal stability report, is that that every day we take care of the Medicaid patients, which requires, so as a hospital, I'm required to have cardiologists, ER docs, anesthesiologists, all of the above. And so to actually do the take care of those patients in my emergency room, which is about 36% of my population in my emergency room is state Medicaid, I have to subsidize my independent ER docs significantly every year, half a million dollars, so that they can actually afford to exist and have a business model that works as independent physicians in our state. In addition, when you you step back and think about that, well, what happens to the patients that move through my emergency room and now may need surgery, or patients that come through my medical practices and need surgery? Well, surely my anesthesiologist, who also happen to be independent providers, I have to subsidize them. It's about $2.2 million a year that I subsidize them to take care of the state Medicaid patients.
Your three minutes are up. If you could please summarize, thank you.
Yeah, so none of those costs are captured in the fiscal responsibility report. And I just just want to really highlight the challenges of this kind of bill, how hard it makes it for us to actually survive. So thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much. Representative Paul Blackamato has a question for you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for testifying, Mr. Barwess. You mentioned in here the Medicaid shortfall in the annual report from OHS from 2022. Can you highlight some of the portions of that that you think are most relevant?
I think the cost to reimbursement ratio in the prior periods, that they've actually changed the ratio at this point to make it seem like there's a lot more reimbursement by the state for the state Medicaid program. And and but the point is, when you go back to the prior calculation, the underfunding is so significant. And it only captures, you know, my my was trying to make the point, it only captures the hospital side of the business. So so, you know, when when you're at 60, 63% of cost, your actual, you know, cost, you're losing all that money on every patient that you take care of. But what's not included in those reports, although this year, the first time they they demonstrated, they they included the the loss on our physician practices somewhere around $303 million a year. It doesn't include the fact that we subsidize those physician practices so that we can actually take care of the patients in our hospital. And so so the underfunding is, and and you now have two reports on the underfunding of physicians within our state. And 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 I think, you know, I heard earlier there was a comment about it's not, it's it's really not fair that a specialist would charge, you know, 800% of Medicare fee schedule. But some of those rates are 20% of Medicare. And what I think the committee really needs to understand is that we compete for physicians from other states where they get higher rates of reimbursement. And so so in order for us to maintain the balance and the system of care, you know, we need to have those rates increased. And 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 the impact of the physician profies on on the hospitals is so significant. If I don't have cardiologists, you know, taking care of patients in the hospital, I can't open my doors. If I don't have orthopedic surgeons that I subsidize to take care of those patients in the physician entity, the cost not attributed to the hospital, I can't open my doors or I have to transfer patients, which increases the cost to everyone. So I I appreciate and thank you for that question. I just, I really think that we need to pay a lot of attention to the underfunding. We are very, very low in comparison to other states, you know, beyond low. And 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 it is a a future that has to change in order for us to maintain the access to care in the communities that serve the Connecticut population.
Now, in the bill, it does carve out, there's a few parts that I I think I probably have questions for the for the governor's staff about. But one of it does on page four, line 77, it carves out hospitals in rural areas. The subsections don't apply to hospitals located in a rural town as designated by the State Office of Rural Health or FHQs, which that's another issue. But I don't, I'm not sure why we're carving out. But it also then goes into taking into account different payment methods as far as if they're, instead of a a fee for payment service or fee for service payment, if it's based on, let's say, value-based payments or other methods. And I'm not, I I I know we had implemented or discussed, I think there's certain, right? Certain facilities that are doing that. But how would, what do you think of some of those provisions or some of those carve outs as they're written in the in the bill?
So so first of all, just reiterate my objection to the bill, the total bill in the first place. So and I, but I thank you for the question. We have very limited rural, I think there's maybe one hospital that's designated as a rural hospital. We have no critical access hospitals, so that carve out would only benefit, you know, a very small population. And and the value-based payments, you know, I I assume that that has to do with, you know, global payments or global budgets, or a point at which you're paid a global amount of money to take care of the population, and you're not, you're not charging. So you're getting a PMPM or per member per month payment, and you're not charging specifically fee for service for a service. You know, so so legitimate things. But again, I go back to the opposition to the overall bill, because I think what you're doing as a state is you are preemptively interjecting yourself into the rate negotiations we have with commercial payers.
Okay, and was there anything in your in your oral testimony that you didn't get a chance to say or you wanted to add in? I did review your written testimony, and it's pretty comprehensive. One one more thing, I, some of the other doctors discussed what you mentioned. But when it came to surprise billing, in my discussion with a fellow committee member, she said that that is completely different and is a different subject area treated differently. And what are your thoughts on what she says about the Surprise Billing Act? And that it's not, this is different, and it's not covered by the Surprise Billing Act?
So so I didn't hear that testimony, Representative, but, you know, I I think that the bills that are already in place are comprehensive, and they do, in fact, cover, you know, the fact that we have to, we have to actually provide estimates. We have to be transparent about, you know, upfront what we're going to charge. And and we can't use individuals that are are, you know, so out of network and not disclose that to the patient before they have the service, we have to be totally transparent. So I actually do think they actually, the laws and rules, as I understand them, do apply and cover what is in my testimony and related to this proposed bill.
Was there anything else that you didn't get a chance to say that you'd like to add?
No, I I, well, I appreciate the the question. The 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 thing that that I find very complicated, you know, very difficult is the volume of changes and requirements and legislation related to our revenue cycle. And that literally daily, we're getting new policies and and changes in the way we have to actually present a bill. It's it's becoming almost impossible to keep up with it all. And as a consequence, you know, we often get denials because we didn't do something exactly right. This just adds one more pile of stuff on top of what we have to do. The administrative burden, the ability to actually keep up with this stuff is becoming almost impossible. And and, you know, if you think about what's happening to the physician practices in the office, the administrative burden, burden, burden is burning out physicians and causing them to leave the field altogether. So it's no different in the hospital, just trying to keep up with this stuff. So my point is, you know, this just adds one more thing onto the pile of stuff that we are trying to do to take care of patients. What we should be doing is taking care of patients.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions from the committee?
Mr. Chair.
Anwar, please proceed, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Barwess, for your testimony. I I just wanted you to speak a little bit about the Medicare Advantage and how that harms the healthcare system's survival, because you're a national speaker on this topic, and I, you didn't touch on this aspect. And I think it's worthy to know that there are so many struggles that are making the viability of healthcare systems be affected by some of these policies.
Yeah, so, I mean, the the thing that, thank you very much for that, Senator Anwar, and and thank you for that credit. I I'm not sure that it's really good. It's a valid credit to me. But, you know, you, the, I've been talking about the abuse in in this committee and in the Public Health Committee for years. And in fact, we've had a bunch of prior auth bills, and thank you very much. Last year, we passed one. Medicare Advantage abuse is extremely well documented. In fact, Senator Blumenthal published a report. He chairs the Senate Permanent Committee on Investigations, and in October, he did a deep dive on Medicare Advantage. And I would encourage anyone to read that report. In fact, we gave Senator Blumenthal a Healthcare Heroes Award this year for that work. The damage is unbelievable. This morning, I oriented new members to my Regional Policy Board for the American Hospital Association, so hospital leaders and board members from New England. And I heard from a variety of hospitals in Maine and one in Nantucket at how all of a sudden, these critical access hospitals that are supposed to be being reimbursed at cost at 102%, so they can survive, are now being overrun by Medicare Advantage and literally getting as little as 90% of cost. And that's the reason that many are closing. The other thing that's really quite interesting is we had a whole bunch of new regulations that were published by CMS in on January 1 of this year, January 2024, that were put brought forward by Chakita Brooks-Lashore, the administrator for CMS. The compliance with those new regs is really quite curious to me. So, you know, and you would understand this as a physician, a practicing physician. Medicare has a two midnight rule, that if somebody is in your hospital for more than two midnights, that they are automatically considered an inpatient. I looked at my observation numbers just this week, about 1,500 patients roughly that were coded as observation patients. And often, we are forced to actually code them as observation. And remember, the price for an inpatient is, as you well know, is probably twice as much as you're going to get for that observation patient. What's interesting is, of that population, almost 600 of them were patients that were Medicare Advantage that stayed more than two midnights. And so, so again, the abuse is ignoring the rules, literally underpaying us, underreimbursing us. And and then there's the harm to the patients, and I think that's probably the most significant thing. I actually was part of a a program in Washington DC where an oncologist from the Mayo Clinic talked about the requirement for approval, the prior authorizations required to actually be able to treat a newly diagnosed cancer patient, and the horrors of not being able to get all of the tests and things, the procedures necessary. And as you well know, the medical oncologist or radiation oncologist isn't going to administer the first dose until they get the complete picture, all of the studies done. And it used to be, and I think that the average used to be like 12 days from the point at which you identify a a tumor or a cancer to getting to a treatment plan, you know, one that's that's that fits the requirements of National Cancer Institute standards. It's now well over 30 days. And in that 30-day period, what I heard her say was how much literally real harm occurs to those patients, admissions to the emergency room, admissions to the hospital, because the prior auth process is so complicated and so convoluted and intended to reduce the costs of, you know, what the plan has to pay, while they then get the PMPM payments from the the Medicare program. You know, I asked this question, I asked a simple question to the audience. I was supposed to react to it, and I and I sat there and I said, I'm just going to change this up. And I asked a simple question. In our world, in a hospital, when we commit or some harm occurs to a patient, there's a process that we follow. We immediately stop the line, we do a root cause analysis, we report harm, serious harm, to the Department of Public Health, and we go through the rigors of inspections, having to do action plans to completely address and avoid future harm based on whatever the scenario is. And I asked a simple question to the audience. There was probably about 600 people, 700 people in the audience, all healthcare hospital leaders. I said, how many of you report the harm that happens in your cancer centers related to a delayed prior authorization? Not one hand went out, not one. And when, in the state of Connecticut, I asked if if we're going to start reporting this harm to the Department of Public Health like we would any other harm, the answer was, don't report it to me. Report it to consumer protection. And the fact is, consumer protection for Medicare Advantage in the state of Connecticut has nothing to do with it. It has to go to CMS. There's literally no program that's focused on the harm that's being done by delayed prior authorizations. There's nothing, there's no reporting system. It's almost like there's this complete lapse of focus. CMS, if you look at it, their quality initiative is to prevent harm. We all commit to high reliability, yet there's this whole system of care that is not capturing that. I I had a conversation with John Perlin, who happens to be the president and CEO. He's a physician of the Joint Commission, and I asked a question. You know, how come we're not focused on this as a as a country? And how come there's not this whole system like we have in in throughout our healthcare system? How come all of a sudden Medicare Advantage gets a pass? And his answer was, you're not wrong, because he still treats patients. You're not wrong at all, Kurt. We need the malpractice cases to start to come. But people don't understand they can actually go after the insurance companies for that. So I gave you a long answer to your question, but it is um, I gave you a long answer to your question, but it is a, it is a complex question.
Th- this is helpful. This is actually just draining the healthcare systems. The healthcare systems are the ones that have closed amongst the various reasons why they have closed. They've named this as one of the top two, three reasons. So, thanks for this aspect. And that's why a bill like what you have right now at six eight, seven one removes the possibility of survival with all the things that are going wrong in healthcare right now. So I just wanted to add that, um, that, that, the, the challenges that you have to deal with. If you can, in, in three sentences, talk about, why is every administrator in many of the states going to Nashpee and all Nashpee bills are showing up in our legislative branch? It's, it's a, it's almost, uh, the, the, the nail in the death coffin of healthcare systems from Nashpee's perspective or actions.
Yeah, I, 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 it's interesting because they're, as you pointed out, they're well funded by Arnold Ventures. They have an agenda. That agenda is, um, you know, they do attack ads against hospitals, they do all kinds of things. And, um, because they have embedded themselves in, in the variety of states in different ways. I mean, you have, you have people that work for the states and that work for them. They have a, an incredible business model. Um, and look, I, I'm not going to say that everything they do is conflicted. I, I sat on the three forty B committee and I thought the presentation they did was, was actually very accurate and objective. But, but, but when it comes to other things, I think we, in the healthcare environment, you know, you're supposed to publish your conflicts. I mean, if you speak at a national conference, you have to disclose them and you have to really talk about them. Um, so I, that's why I appreciate you shining a bright light on it.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Any other questions from the committee? Seeing none. Thank you so much for coming today.
Thank you very much.
Up next, we have, um, Mark. And I'm going to let you pronounce your own last name.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Senator Cabrera, Representative Wood, and the distinguished members of the Insurance and State Committee. My name is Dr. Mark Didsick, or Jedjits in Polish. I have been a practicing Connecticut emergency physician for over sixteen years. I did my training here and I've lived here since. I've served as the Emergency Department Director of three different hospitals in the state and currently the Director at Waterbury Hospital. I've also served on multiple peer review and quality committees. I'm here to explain today how HR six eight seventy one will affect patient care and harm patients. I am in opposition of this bill. Uh, we've heard other testimony about the difficulty in recruiting and how hospitals are going to be affected by the two forty cap in terms of being able to, um, absorb the cost of care of uninsured patients, but I want to focus on how hospitals work and how this money will reach the patients. Uh, three Connecticut hospitals currently in bankruptcy proceedings. As I mentioned, I work at one of them. Uh, there are other hospitals that are in financial trouble. We've heard from some of them today. Uh, the two forty percent cap will expand that list, I believe, and limit the viability of the troubled emergency departments and hospitals in the state. Um, an emergency department is a complex process as are all hospitals. They're like living organisms. The only function as well is their weakest parts. Uh, the two hundred and forty percent cap in this bill will reduce compensation to not just physicians or emergency depart- apartment physicians, but all physicians and providers in the hospital. Uh, they will limit the hospital's ability to generate revenue, which will limit their ability to hire other staff or appropriately staff their hospitals. Nurses, techs, PCA's, this care that we provide in hospitals is on the backs of numbers of people, all of whom will be affected by decreased revenues. Um, and all are necessary to provide care. If we don't have enough radiology techs and radiologists, it'll take longer to get CAT scan results and diagnose patients and treat their illness. We don't have enough resources, we won't have techs to do EKGs and we'll have delayed recognition and care of heart attacks, which could lead to horrible outcomes. I myself uh, perform CPR on a patient in a waiting room because of a lack of resources. Uh, fewer, uh, nurses and techs, oh, sorry. Uh, in, in emergency care, time is of the essence and we need all the resources we can to provide timely care. HR six eight seventy one degrades services and lengthens the time to get care. Uh, wait times currently are higher than I think any of us as emergency physicians would like and they're only going to get longer. We already suffer from boarding in our emergency departments of admitted patients and behavioral health patients due to hospitals difficulties to appropriately staff the floors and all of that ties back to revenue. Some days I come in and not one hundred percent of my emergency department is filled with boarded patients, behavioral health and admitted patients. Longer length of stay will be deadly for patients. Patients will sit in the waiting room for hours without care and they'll be suffering more because of these choices. A vote for the cap is a vote to increase morbidity and mortality for patients in the state of Connecticut and I urge you to vote against Bill six eight seven one.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the committee? Seeing none. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Up next is Don Holcomb.
Greetings, uh, to the co-chairs and the esteemed members of the uh, Connecticut Insurance and Real Estate Committee. My name is John Holcomb. I live in South Windsor. And, uh, along with many national and state roles, I serve as the Executive Director for the Connecticut Oncology Association. I'm also honored to serve on the Connecticut Prescription Drug Task Force and I participate in all four of its subcommittees. I appreciate the chance to share perspectives with many others in the state as we look at these policy issues. Um, and with that, in the vein of support and looking at a number of different things, I would like to offer my opinions and my thoughts about the Governor's Bill number six eight seven zero. I understand there's a passion and an interest in looking for solutions, but unfortunately, this bill will not accomplish a single one of those aims. And I'm happy to provide further information if needed. Uh, let's look at some of the individual sections. Um, drug importation from Canada, sections one through ten. We do not need to throw money at this. It will be a complete waste. We know that Canada has already made a health, Canada's very patently clear that they will not allow the United States to import drugs from Canada at the expense of Canadian citizens. Not one of the states that has started down the path with the FDA towards looking at drug importation has imported a single drug. Florida has received permission to proceed, but now they have to proceed asking separate permission for each individual drug that they wish to import. They are no, not near doing that. They're not even close. Colorado is way behind Florida. We cannot look at that. Those two states are the multitude of other states that are starting to say, hey, we want to get on the drug importation bandwagon. It's anything but lemmings that are following in a, a process that is not going to go anywhere. Um, to further reinforce this impossibility, the Canadian Health Policy Institute published research on October thirtieth of twenty twenty four. And their analysis was that even if, and we've already talked about the small number of the limitations, Florida and Colorado successfully managed to get permission to import that the utilization of those drugs alone, twenty seven drugs in those proposals would deplete the Canadian supply of those drugs in just fifty seven days on average. This is why Canada, Canada will not allow us to import. We should not spend a penny on looking at the feasibility. It is a non-starter, please. Um, for reference drug pricing, and I have more details in my written testimony, and I know I'm running close on time. The problem with the reference drug pricing is it's looking at the price that is paid or charged by the manufacturer or the wholesale drug distributor, the acquisition cost of the drug. It has nothing to do with the price that the patient pays. That price that the patient pays has been virtually doubled by the middlemen fees from PBMs, rebates, et cetera. And so you're looking at apples and grapefruit. And the grapefruit is what you're trying to deal with, but you're not going to get it because you're only looking at apples. The reference pricing just does not hit the target that you're trying to hit. Um, the last piece about the, um, credit for patients with, uh, copavents and assistance, it's almost like the copay accumulator bill that we have. I'd like to look at the details of how close that is, but I will say that this would only apply to those patients that are, uh, fully funded employers of our third-party administrators. I will venture to say, and I've had discussions in, in the committee, that people were very proud that we had passed a copay accumulator ban in Connecticut. But a huge percentage of our employers are self-funded employers, self-insured employers, as is the state of Connecticut. And I just want to make the point that when you read the State of Connecticut Employees' Health Benefits Guide, Prudential RX, which is a mandated enrollment project, a, a vendor for state employees, is a co-pay accumulator. So one thing to think about when we're looking at all this.
Please summarize.
Okay, thank you. One thing to look at is, are we already putting our own state employees under the, uh, aegis of programs that have been blocked and banned by legislation for other members of the state of Connecticut? Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I will just summarize. I am completely opposed to every element of Bill sixty eight seventy.
Okay. Representative Donicki has a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Dawn, it's great to see you.
Hello.
Could, could you tell everybody what Connecticut Oncology Association is?
The Connecticut Oncology Association is the only organization in the state of Connecticut that is dedicated to the professional support of every single physician and staff member that provides care to cancer patients in the state of Connecticut, whether you work in a, in a hospital system or a private practice. Uh, if you care for cancer patients, we are here to support you. We look at issues of advocacy on the national level and on the state level. We're usually ahead of the curve and looking at a number of different issues. Um, actually, artificial intelligence, algorithms and abuse for patients in the uh, health management, the health, the player payer issue is one that we're coming up with. So pretty much any of these that you're looking at, we've already been ahead of the curve. We're looking at it and I'm happy to become part of anybody, any team that's, uh, trying to understand these issues. We are a nonprofit.
A- and just one, one other final question. So basically, from your viewpoint, there's a lot of downfalls or there's a lot of more than likely, we would not be able to import, uh, Canadian drugs. Is that, uh, is that a correct assumption just to boil it down?
The, the short answer is no, there will be no path that is in any way, shape or form, in my opinion, going to allow us to access Canadian drugs. There are details uh, and there are significant risks with drug importation in general. But I'll give you one example, even if Canada will want to allow us to import drugs, we cannot guarantee the safety and the quality of those drugs that come in. Every single drug in the United States needs to have on its label and a national drug code number, an NDC number. It's ten or eleven digits. And we cannot bill for a drug that has been acquired for a patient unless we have that NDC number on it. This is a, a condition only in United States drugs. So drugs that are made for other markets do not have that NDC code on their label. So one of the first things that has to happen, besides testing quality and batches and all that, is every single vial that comes into the United States would have to be relabeled or added a label with the NDC number just to allow it to go through our billing process. The risk of failure and error and mishandling for trying to put a specific label uh, with the manufacturer and the source and all that on every single vial is just, it, it's mind boggling. So we're not going to be able to accomplish that, let alone any of the other infrastructure that you're looking at, let alone the fact that Canada's not going to allow us to have it anyway. It's just not a good use of our resources. There's so much more we can do. And, oh, someone had asked what a solution would be. One of my solutions I would love to talk about is a patient choice for prescription drug fulfillment. If we put back the ability for our patients to choose where they're going to get their drug from, not that they're going to get mandated to get it from a specific specialty pharmacy, from a specific insurer, uh, if they can go look on the market. There are a number of site of care, different options for acquiring drug that would be far more effective in looking at addressing the prescription cost of drug for patients without causing a boondoggle in other ways.
Well, I appreciate you, uh, testifying. And, uh, I can attest to the fact that having attended some of their meetings, that, uh, they're well informed and quite frankly straightforward expressing exactly what the concerns are and the, uh, the problems. And I appreciate that. Because sometimes it seems very
Thank you.
Do something only to find out that it becomes very complicated.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Donicki. Any other questions from the committee? Seeing none. Thank you so much for testifying today.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Dr. Greg Schengold. Welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon, Senator Cabrera, Representative Wood, and distinguished members of the committee. On behalf of the physicians of the Connecticut State Medical Society and the physicians in training here in this state, please accept this testimony in vehement opposition of six eight seven one. I'm in my twenty-third year of practice here in Connecticut. I've served as the past, uh, the President for the Connecticut State Medical Society, as well as the Connecticut College of Emergency Physicians. I've also served on multiple government committees and task forces addressing issues on Connecticut's healthcare, starting back in two thousand and eight, when we had our first boarding, uh, task force. As a practicing emergency physician, I've been on the front lines. All of Connecticut's healthcare issues seem to be represented in the emergency department. And I can tell you, there's been an erosion of access to care here in Connecticut during my twenty-three years. The Office of Healthcare Strategy states, "A goal of this legislation is to promote patient access." If that truly is the goal, this bill's not the solution. Some of the more recent issues being discussed during this session, not today, but your whole session, is the public health crisis manifested as ED boarding. We've talked about Medicaid payments not, having not increased for the past eighteen years. Medicare payments have declined thirty-three percent relative to inflation since two thousand and one. And actually, over the past five years, there, there's been absolute cuts to Medicare. Connecticut ranks forty-seventh in the country in retaining our trained physicians. Relative to other states, doctors are not choosing to stay in Connecticut or come to Connecticut. This bill will have severe and lasting consequences on Connecticut's physicians, patients, and their overall healthcare system. This bill is a pure windfall for the insurance industry. It provides no additional protection to patients, which are already protected by both state and federal law. In fact, Medicare was excluded as a benchmark in the National, in the No Surprises Act nationally because it won't serve as a good benchmark. It shifts even more control to health insurers, making it even harder for physicians to continue practicing independently and sustainably. Does this committee really believe, even if there were savings, this would return in the form of premium reduction as suggested in the bill? In two thousand and twenty-four, the top four healthcare insurers combined for twenty-eight point four billion dollars in profits. Billion dollars in profits. I think we've heard from multiple hospital administrators, they're not having those sort of margins to support the care that we need. And we do not even need to guess what this bill will do. California implemented a similar bill in two thousand and eighteen and it showed that there was a reduction in access to care. Those, uh, stats are in my test, uh, my written testimony. At its core, this bill is not about physician reimbursement. It is about patients and their ability to access timely, high-quality care. If more physicians leave the state, if independent practices continue to disappear, if consolidation further reduces patient choice, then it's Connecticut's residents who will suffer. Patients will face longer wait times, fewer spec- specialists, and a greater difficulty accessing essential medical services. For these reasons, we strongly urge this committee to reject Governor's Bill six eight seven one. Connecticut's healthcare system is already under strain. Let's not make it worse. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor. Um, I'll, I'll start us off. I have a quick question. I was wondering if you could help us understand, we've heard a lot today about out-of-network versus in-network. From your view, what are some of the things or factors that go into deciding whether a provider is an out-of-network versus an in-network provider?
Well, thank you for the question. Uh, starting at, uh, when I listened to Deirdre Gifford quite some time ago, she was starting at that, well, two point four percent is reasonable, but you have to sort of work backwards. First of all, we need to hire doctors and bring them into the state and compete against on a national level. So once you know what that doctor's salary is, and we know we have all these fixed reimbursements, as people have said, for the most part, between seventy and seventy-five percent are, have no insurance, Medicaid or Medicaid. for the most part, between seventy and seventy-five percent are have no insurance, Medicaid or Medicare. All of those entities are lose money. So you have to make up the rest of the money, that cost shift, so that you can support the salaries of those doctors that produces the access. And so you can't start with two point four percent. You have to start at a higher number so that that number all averages out to get to the right salaries. And furthermore, I think it's been mentioned a few times today. Even when you say it's two point four percent, there are so many other bad behaviors by insurance companies that ultimately you don't end up with that revenue. So that's where you know, this is the money I need to get, and you start to have that negotiation. And that needs to be a level playing field. And so in two thousand fifteen, this body passed our out-of-network bill, and then two thousand twenty-two, the the federal government passed the No Surprises Act. Those already established these protections, you know, for out-of-network. So that already plays into the negotiations. This would just be a windfall to unlevel that playing field for the insurance industry. But when we get a take it or leave it contract that doesn't work for our business model, we have to say, look, we can't accept that contract. It doesn't support the care that we need to provide. And that's ultimately what goes into that decision, to not accept an in-network contract. We would prefer to be in-network, most doctors, because of issues like assignment of benefits. One-third of our patients, when we try to collect that from out-of-network, the the check from the insurance company goes to the patient, and then they don't send it to us. When you look at high deductible health plans, I served on Connecticut's High Deductible Health Plan Task Force. We found that these have been going up and up and up, and we don't collect that money. We, in general, it's about fifty to sixty percent of the patient responsibility goes to the doctors. And then what happens, I'm an emergency physician, if they don't pay their specialist out, then unfortunately, patients are embarrassed, and then they stop going to their follow-up care. They get sicker, their care deteriorates. Where do they end up? Sicker in the emergency department at a higher cost of care. So there's a lot of things that have happened deciding to go in-network and out-of-network. If we passed one of the recommendations in the High Deductible Health Plan Task Force, which was that insurers pay doctors directly, and then then they could collect the patient's share directly from the from the insurer. That, you know, would go into, if someone offered me that, I would know I was going to get that money. I'd be more apt to sign a contract. But right now, we don't even know we're going to get the money, even when you sign a contract because of these high deductible health plans.
Any questions in the committee? Just one more quick follow-up, just to make sure I understand what you just said. What you're saying is you're averaging about a fifty to sixty percent collection rate on services you've already rendered for out-of-network patients. Is that what you're saying or no?
No, what what the fifty to sixty was whatever the patient's share is. First of all, Connecticut law says there's only one deductible for in-network and out-of-network. There's not two deductibles. But when any cost goes to the patient, right, the insurance companies have been very successful of shifting risk, right, to the doctors and to the patients, right? They they collect the premium, and then they say, you have a twelve thousand dollar deductible. And so now we, as doctors, are now the bill collectors for those patients. You know, we've talked about surprise bills, but it's really they have surprise that they don't have insurance. They thought by paying the premium that they would have insurance, and then all of a sudden, they don't have it. Many patients can't fund the their HSAs, if they have one, to have the money available, and then that's what ends up going into healthcare debt. But when a a financial burden goes on to the patient, we, as the physicians, only collect about fifty to sixty percent of that. Because we have to see, in the emergency department, we have M T A L A. And what that law says is, we see everybody, regardless of their ability to pay, regardless of any insurance, and then we try to collect the money. It takes us, on average, five months to get the money. But even after that, but we owe people salaries. My group, we have ninety full-time doctors and APPs right now in this in the state. We pay their salaries. We didn't fire anyone during COVID, right? We we work through all that. We go into work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, doing all that. And then you try to collect the bill from the patient. Of that, it's only fifty to sixty percent of that money. So when they say it's two hundred and forty percent, we're not getting two hundred and forty percent. And if you get it of Medicare, again, Medicare's gone down thirty-three percent over the last twenty-four years. In the last five years, there's been a cut each year. This year, it was two point five percent, went down again. So if you say in two thousand twenty-seven, it could be five percent less than what it is now.
Gotcha. Thank you. Any questions, other questions in the committee? Seeing none. Thank you so much for coming today.
Thank you very much.
Up next, we have Dr. John Satterfield.
It's you, right? It is. It's me. Chairman Wood, Chairman Cabrera, members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee, thank you for the opportunity to testify on House Bill sixty-eight seventy-one. My name is John Satterfield. I'm a practicing anesthesiologist in Connecticut for the last thirty-four years, past president of the Connecticut State Society of Anesthesiologists. I'm the president, I'm sorry, I'm the current chairman of the C S S A Advocacy Task Force, and I'm a longtime resident of Southington. The Connecticut State Society of Anesthesiologists unequivocally opposes House Bill sixty-eight seventy-one. This bill will incentivize health insurers to firstly, not negotiate in good faith, and secondly, will allow insurers to drive Connecticut anesthesiologists out of network unless they accept unreasonable insurer rates. This bill will endanger patients and threaten the existing high-quality standard of anesthesia care that exists in our state. Connecticut anesthesiologists are extremely proud to say that every patient in a Connecticut hospital, regardless of their economic status, receives the care of a physician anesthesiologist when they are undergoing a surgical procedure. This point is very important now. In the process of developing the Medicare payment methodology almost forty years ago, a tragic error was made, and it is now well, well-recognized that anesthesia services are woefully underpaid. In two thousand twenty, the Federal Government Accounting Office, the G A O, found that anesthesia payment rates from Medicare were twenty-seven percent of commercial rates. In two thousand twenty-five, that number is closer to twenty-two percent of commercial rates. This represents a massive underpayment by Medicare to anesthesia departments nationwide, and one that does not begin to cover the cost of providing care. There are two infographics in the handout that I presented, the written handout that I presented to you that are are included in the C S A's written testimony, and they demonstrate this discrepancy. I use this information to highlight the fact that the Medicare system is broken for anesthesiologists, and to tie any form of compensation to that system is seriously flawed. Please review both those infographics. They provide very valuable and factual data, and I'd be happy to answer any future questions you might have on that. On behalf of the C S S A, I respectfully request that you oppose House Bill sixty-eight seventy-one. Connecticut health insurers are already seeing massive profits by putting their bottom line ahead of patients. A perfect example of this is the recent was the recent attempt by Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield to cap coverage for anesthesia care during surgery. House Bill sixty-eight seventy-one will actually exacerbate the problem of health insurers attempting to maximize their profits and not putting patients first. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony today. Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next is Linda Alderman.
Hello, esteemed members of the, hi. Esteemed members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee, my name is Linda Alderman, and I live in West Hartford. I am a former administrative attorney and a two-time survivor of breast cancer, as well as a survivor of a rare disease. I've been a legislative advocate on behalf of the interests of cancer and rare disease patients for over a decade. Today, I'm testifying in partial support of proposed Governor's Bill sixty-eight seventy regarding prescription drug costs, and I thank you for the opportunity. Nearly thirty percent of Americans haven't taken their medication as prescribed due to high drug prices, and more than one point one million Medicare patients could die over the next decade because they can't afford to pay for their prescribed medications. I'm grateful to the governor for proposing this bill to help lower prescription costs for residents of our state. I'm in support of sections one to ten of the bill as drafted regarding a feasibility study on importation of prescription medications on a wholesale basis, as well as section fifteen, which would give an insured credit towards their deductible for out-of-pocket expenses. However, I support in part and oppose in part sections eleven to fourteen, which address prescription drug price gouging. U.S. drug prices are between two point seven eight and four point two two times higher than in thirty-three other countries, and this is reprehensible. Therefore, I fully support the concept of giving our Commissioner of Revenue Services the authority to take action against a drug manufacturer or wholesale distributor for unconscionable drug price increases. I have concerns, however, that if pharmaceutical companies are forced to take a loss on a generic or off-patent drug, they will take that drug off the market, and this would detrimentally impact present or future Connecticut residents who need that drug. I agree that the price cap should be set at the defined reference price, but to protect access to critical generic and off-patent medications, there should be an opportunity for pharmaceutical companies to apply for an exemption or a waiver to that cap prior to sale due to price increases related to costs or events beyond the pharmaceutical company's control. These costs and events include, for example, tariffs, an increase in the price of ingredients, and unionization of workers increasing the cost of labor. Pharmaceutical companies are generally publicly traded and owe a fiduciary duty to their shareholders. If there's a price cap set, which can only increase to the Consumer Price Index, they may be forced to remove their products from the market. For Connecticut residents to be healthy, their prescriptions must be both affordable and available. I'm also opposed to the language in section fourteen stating that civil penalties collected for violations should be placed in the state's general fund. The state is under no legal obligation to use funds that get put into its general fund with a stated purpose for that purpose, and it generally doesn't. The funds collected from this bill should be put into their own legislatively created trust fund, which is managed by a state-appointed board that can allocate those funds for the public health benefit purposes stated in the bill. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Thank you so much for coming today.
Thank you.
Up next is Brooke Foley.
Hi. Representative Woods, Senator Cabrera, and Representative Pavlov Tomato, Representative Barry, and other distinguished members of the committee. My name is Brooke Foley, and I represent the Insurance Association of Connecticut. We represent property casualty, life, long-term care, and some short-term disability insurers and workers' comp and some dental insurance. So we do not represent health insurance. So thank you for the opportunity to testify in strong support today of House Bill sixty-nine, sixty-nine sixty-seven. This bill is a critical step towards protecting homeowners from predatory practices by certain home improvement contractors and roofing companies that exploit assignment of benefit contracts. These contracts allow third parties to take control of a policyholder's insurance claims, often leading to inflated costs and legal disputes that ultimately drive up the price of homeowner's insurance for everyone. Under an assignment of benefits contract, a homeowner unknowingly signs away their authority to file an insurance claim, make repair decisions, and collect payments to a contractor. This process occurs without the policyholder's continued involvement, leaving them vulnerable to potential fraud and financial exploitation. In many cases, unscrupulous roofing contractors lure homeowners into signing these contracts by promising a free repair or replacement covered by their insurance. Once the contract is signed, the contractor submits the inflated claim to the insurance company. If the insurer refuses to pay the excessive amount, the contractor may file a lawsuit against the insurer, place a lien on the homeowner's property, or even take legal action against the homeowner directly. These unnecessarily and costly lawsuits contribute to rising insurance premiums for all property owners. This bill would help prevent these abuses by prohibiting contractors from advertising or offering to waive a deductible to entice a homeowner into signing an assignment of benefits contract. It would ensure sure homeowners are informed of the right to cancel an assignment of benefits agreement, provide them with greater control over their insurance claims, preventing contractors who are not licensed public adjusters from negotiating with an insurance company for higher payouts, preserving the integrity of the claims process, requiring contractors to maintain up-to-date contact information and provide proof of insurance coverage, increasing accountability, establish clear and clear enforcement mechanisms through the Department of Consumer Protection to ensure compliance and deter these fraudulent practices. This bill is a common sense reform that safeguards homeowners from deceptive practices while ensuring a fair and transparent insurance claims process. We urge you to support this bill to protect consumers and help stabilize homeowners' insurance costs.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming and testifying today. Representative Wood has a question for you.
Hey, Brooke, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I'm wondering if you were here for some of the contractors and the home builders' testimony, because it's just so contrary to, you know, the intent of the bill. Do we have room for improvement here, or is there a gap in understanding the intent of this?
Well, we are happy to work with you on the language of the bill, but I would encourage everybody here and everybody in this room to look on the website for the Connecticut Judicial Branch and go to Superior Court Case lookup and type in Rising Star under party name. There's thirty-five cases here. So Rising Star is clearly one of the companies that includes this in their business model, because not only are they, do they have cases against insurance companies, there are cases here against homeowners, and you can all of the documents, the complaints that they file are available right here on the website, and you can open it and open up the complaint and see that they have put liens on homeowners' properties. They have sued insurance companies directly, and insurers who put a lot of money into defending against these this litigation, there's, you can see all the documents. It's public available information. And most of these cases, after going through sometimes years of litigation, end up with a settlement, and so it it it's needless money that drives up the rates of our insurance. So this is a real problem. And, you know, while I agree that these people that own these companies, not not all roofer roofers are trying to scam homeowners, but some of them are, and it's a real issue, and it drives up the insurance rates. So yes, we're willing to work with you on the language, and we want this done right. So yes, we would really appreciate if you would support this bill.
Okay, that's very helpful. So the company that testified here today is, has the thirty-nine
Thirty-five cases right now, and I didn't go through every single one to see the dates on it. I mean, if I could open it on my computer, I could see them all, and I would see the dates and which ones are settled and which ones are still pending, but Rising Star does have a lot, thirty-five cases right now that show up on this website.
Yeah, and we did speak to many homeowners who shared with us stories of being targeted as a neighborhood, putting up signs that said, "We will replace your roof for free," and other misleading advertising, and I think members of this committee even were attempted to be taken advantage of. So I just felt that the problem we were trying to solve, and then the testimony that we heard was very different. So let's definitely work together on trying to make sure, I mean, our intent on this committee is to protect the consumer. And we really want to make sure they have the best quality care of their contractors and also keep their insurance from having to go up. So if there are practices out there that are causing everyone to socialize those costs, we definitely want to nip that in the bud. So thank you for that, and I'm done.
Thank you, Representative Wood. Any other questions from the committee? Thank you very much for coming today. Well, last up is Stephen Wexler. Well, last up is Stephen Wexler.
Sorry. I have a unique perspective on emergency medicine in the state of Connecticut. I've been practicing here for 25 years, but the last eight years, I've served as the chief medical officer of a national company that oversaw about 45 contracts in the country, everywhere from Ketchikan, Alaska, down to Nakadish, Louisiana, and up to the northern borders of New York. And now I am running the emergency department at De Kimball Hospital. So I've gone from a big national company to running one of our smallest emergency departments. I'm here today to testify in strong opposition to HB 676871. Connecticut's emergency departments actively compete nationwide for physician talent, with most of our emergency physicians, myself included, having trained at institutions outside of our state. The proposed 240 cap would severely handicap our ability to recruit and retain quality emergency physicians by restricting both competitive salaries as well as signing bonuses for new graduates. Emergency medicine demands the highest level of medical expertise. Each year, thousands of patients die in emergency departments nationwide, with approximately 2 million more dying within a month of their ED visit. Given these stakes, the financial constraints imposed by 6871 would force hospitals to increasingly rely on advanced practice providers for critical care decisions. While I have great relationships with my advanced care providers, and we use them in all emergency departments, they should not be used in the most life-threatening emergencies, especially unsupervised. Conditions like heart attacks, strokes, and traumatic injuries. These complex cases require board-certified emergency physicians to handle these conditions. Under HB 6871, Connecticut's emergency departments would struggle to attract board-certified physicians, potentially leaving our patients in the hands of less qualified practitioners. As a former CMO, I've witnessed how staffing and resources decisions directly impact patient survival. The bill's rural hospital exemption from the 240 cap explicitly acknowledges how payment restrictions harm patient care. Yet, the same harm would impose on our other communities. This committee faces the gravity of this decision. I strongly urge you to vote against HB 6871 to protect the quality of emergency care for Connecticut residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the committee? Very lucky. Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else? Like to speak? Or who's up? Well, thank you all very much. It was a long, but I think, hearing, but I think we all learned a lot. And we'll have the announcement of our next meeting in the bulletin. Thank you, all. Call us, meeting adjourned.